I authored several motions to accelerate the digital equity and delete the digital divide, including but not limited to the following: looking into expanding our own contracts with Internet services providers to offer the same rates to our residents, developing a plan to determine the time and cost to provide wireless and fibers in our communities, and promoting the federal Affordable Connectivity Program, which provides $30 a monthly subsidy for qualified households to help pay for Internet service. This board has done what we can with the limited resources that we have to help each of our households get connected. In fact, this month alone, our Internal Services Department will release a solicitation pilot program to expand broadband services in targeted communities with the highest number of households that have not been connected yet. And however, these are only a handful of the communities in the first round of the pilot program. We have, and you know, many more communities throughout the county that also need to be connected. But the county, as you know, can't pay for everything alone. The state and the federal government have released their priority maps, which identifies those areas that are eligible to receive this broadband grant. The majority of L.A. County, as can be seen, will be excluded. That's the wrong direction to take. I was very deeply disappointed because we can't do this without state and federal dollars. L.A. County, as you know, is the largest in the country with over 400,000 households without Internet service. These households are in the most densely populated communities, and they're communities of color and are our lowest-income households. To me, this is appalling. We must advocate for our communities and request that the state and feds reconsider the priority areas they have identified to allow us to apply for our fair share of state and federal funding. I urge our residents to reach out to their respective state and federal representatives, the administration, including the California Public Utilities Commission and the Federal Communications Commission, the two agencies that are responsible for dispersment of these grants, and ask and demand for reconsideration of our priority areas in Los Angeles County. L.A. cannot be left out of this historic investments, and our residents deserve better. Colleagues, I respectfully ask for your I-vote. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also, Madam Chair, before I turn this over back to you, have a letter that was signed by 32 CBOs representing Los Angeles County that are urging us to please continue to support this effort to expand digital access to our underserved communities. So I submit that for the record. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I don't see any of our colleagues wanting to speak on this, so Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who signed up to speak on this item.
Well, Mike Greenspan, Norma Fernandez, Paulina Chavez, and Red Chief Hunt, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Hold on one second. We have a late entry into speaking.
I apologize. I know. I just want, I'll make this as short as I can. I want to thank you, Supervisor Solis, for reading in the motion or bringing in this motion. I'd also like to thank Selwyn Hollins and her staff, as well as the numerous advocates that have been supporting our efforts to expand broadband access across the county. I understand the concerns expressed by my colleagues with the proposed maps published by the Federal Communications Commission and the California Public Utilities Commission. The currently proposed maps indicate an inclination by the FCC and CPUC to focus the allocation of funding in the more rural, less densely populated areas that, unlike some of the underserved communities, are outright underserved. While our focus in the county has predominantly focused on the highly urbanized areas and the need to provide more broadband opportunities for underserved areas, these maps echo the sentiments that I have expressed to my colleagues and leadership at ISD. The underserved communities in this county are just as critical to helping achieve our goal of bridging the digital divide, and it should not be an either-or. We should look at it holistically, and that's why I understand why this motion is being brought forward. While these rural areas in the North County may appear as having a lesser need based on socioeconomics, a simple fact is that these communities simply do not have access to broadband services. Amongst the board, the overwhelming sentiment has been that we must focus our efforts on areas of higher density who are underserved, as opposed to the rural areas which some perceive to be too expensive or will not have enough people to connect. I support advocating for funding to be made available for the underserved areas of the county, as there are numerous cities and communities that I represent that have communities with low broadband adoption rates. However, the notion that the state and federal governments are bypassing L.A. County as it relates to broadband infrastructure funding is not entirely accurate. The fact is that the maps currently stand, the investment would be in areas with minimal or nonexistent broadband infrastructure, and unfortunately, it seems to be in only the 5th District up in the North County. I hope these maps also demonstrate that as we focus our efforts, we must understand that the less densely populated, more rural and underserved and unserved areas of this county are just as important as our most densely populated, highly urban, underserved areas. I am committed to working together to advocate for funding opportunities so that all of our communities can have the ability to pursue the necessary funding they need, and I will be supportive of this motion. But I just wanted to highlight, because that's been something that I really am going to continue to fight for, because the unserved should be a focus and priority for us as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. And again, thanks for bringing this forward, and it's true, I know even in my district, Catalina, you know, is considered a rural area, and it's in great need of broadband services, as well as a lot of other areas of my district as well. So thank you for bringing this forward. These maps seem to really overlook some key areas in L.A. County. So let's have the first person on the phone. Go ahead.
Our first participant is Lily Dorn. You may begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I am expressing support on behalf of the Community Clinic Association of Los Angeles County on Agenda Item 9, Concern of Broadband Infrastructure Grants Bypassing Los Angeles County. We thank Supervisor Solis for her leadership in authoring this motion and for recognizing the significant need for government investment in broadband infrastructure in order to provide fast and reliable Internet to our most under-resourced communities. VCLAC represents 66 nonprofit community health centers that operate more than 350 sites throughout the county and serve over 1.8 million patients each year. We're a proud member of the Digital Equity L.A. Coalition, and we recognize that universal access to fast, reliable, and affordable Internet is essential to equitable health and economic outcomes, and we share in the concern that the priority area maps released by the CPUC, which determine the areas eligible for publicly funded broadband infrastructure under the federal funding account program, exclude communities in San Fernando Valley, Southeast L.A. City, South L.A., and almost all of the San Gabriel Valley, all communities served by community.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments.
Thanks very much.
Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jorge Rivera. He may begin.
Hi, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jorge Rivera, Executive Co-Director of the People's Resource Center, DVA, the Healing and Justice Center. We are calling in support of Item 9, and we want to thank Supervisor Solis for her leadership and the rest of the supervisors in just advocating for closing the digital divide here in Los Angeles County. Our organization is a community-based group that services all of the San Gabriel Valley, and as you might imagine, we were highly disappointed and really concerned with the CPUC's priority area maps, especially since it's going to direct federal funding to the areas that need them the most. And so we definitely need your support in urging the CPUC and the federal government to be able to direct the funding where it is needed in those communities that are underserved and disconnected. And it's just, it was sad and neat to see that the majority of Los Angeles County was left out of those maps, especially when we know what's actually happening on the ground.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Ray Lopez Chang. You may begin.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, County Supervisors. It is great to be speaking with you again. My name is Ray with GPSN, where we convene and amplify the work of over 70 cross-sector organizations to uplift students and their families in L.A. Our group of orgs touch every supervisory district and represent sectors from education to health equity. For the last three years, we've been advocating on this issue area, and in the last six months, we've been asserting the need for broadband infrastructure improvements with the CPUC and advocating at the FCC. However, we are vehemently alarmed that despite our energy and movement building, we are witnessing again the persistence of digital redlining in Los Angeles. And where you see, hear, or experience pushback and organizing against that reality, please know there is deep disappointment and dismay in the character and value system of our humanity. Your supportive action on this motion is not just a message to the CPUC and FCC, it is also the validation to your families, community, orgs, and local leaders.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
So they can be seen as humans and not as others.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Gloria Cruz. You may begin.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Gloria Cruz. I am the Policy and Advocacy Director for the Coalition for Human immigrant Rights, CHIRLA. I'm calling in today to express our support for Supervisor Solis' motion raising concerns about broadband infrastructure grants bypassing Los Angeles County. We applaud her bold leadership and join other members of the Digital Equity Coalition in support. We are disappointed that none of the highest-needs, least-connected communities, which many of them include immigrants and undocumented residents of the county, are not included on the CPUC priority maps for funding. In addition, not a single community in the city of Los Angeles, Sela, Long Beach, or much of the San Fernando Valley are eligible for connectivity funding. Our communities deserve the ability to access equitable connectivity, and this funding can go a long way to bridge existing gaps. CHIRLA looks forward to working with you all in advancing equitable access to online services for our immigrant communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Sean Granger. You may begin.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all the supervisors for discussing digital inequality. My name is Sean Granger, and I serve as Information Security Officer for the city of Montebello. Recent Arizona State University research shows a correlation between broadband adoption and higher standardized test scores in math and RLA subjects. Kristin Funk's "The Last Mile" research recently showed lack of broadband means underserved community cannot receive same level of medical care as others. I've seen the damage to families during my years providing support in L.A. County from Pasadena, West Covina, Auburn, Montebello, and others. Recently, I assisted a resident in Montebello who pays almost $200 a month for satellite Internet because there is no other choice. I was told it would be $30,000 to get serviced if they wanted normal service. There are patches of unserved broadband in much of the county.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Emma Hernandez. You may begin.
Am I speaking for one or two minutes?
One minute.
Thank you. My name is Emma Hernandez, and I'm CEO of the Southeast Community Development Corporation that serves the Southeast L.A. region. And the CPUC's priority area maps, as they are now, leave out so many people in our community, and they're excluded from public and private investments for decades. And here we are today, using these maps, that we're willing to again do the same things. We need to make sure that this map is looking at our communities that have the highest needs, so that we can get a good enough access to government programs that will fund the Internet broadband infrastructure, so that our community is able to get government services, health services, academic resources. I do want to thank Supervisor Solis. I'm also a resident of Hacienda Heights, and she is my supervisor, and for partnering up with us so that we can move this forward. And I do urge all supervisors to vote A on this item number nine, and I thank everybody for joining us today and really supporting digital equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any further callers?
Our next participant is, yes, our next speaker, our next participant is Dick Hoag. You may begin.
I would like to comment on Item 9 and public comment. My name is Dick Hoag from Granada Hills. NTIA is prioritizing grants with fiber to the premises. L.A. County should apply for the infrastructure grant money with a very detailed fiber-to-the-premises plan, which is clearly prioritized by the NTIA and which can be implemented through contracts with outside vendors as the county contracts for other projects. Fiber to the premise is far superior in several ways. Number one, far superior in terms of speeds, providing speeds up to 10,000 times faster than wireless. Number two, far superior in terms of data throughput and capacity. Number three, far superior in bad weather and disaster. Number four, far superior in terms of privacy and cybersecurity. Plus, fiber is cheaper in the long run because fiber is easily upgraded over time and does not require expensive upgrades every year or two as wireless does. Fiber to the premise also has the benefit of eliminating.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Kevin Motis. You may begin. Apologize, Mr. Motis, we had trouble getting your line open. You may begin, sir. Go ahead.
Before I comment, Chair Hahn, can I combine this item with public comment for a total of two minutes, as allowed for unheld items?
Not at this time. You can do public comment at the end, when public comment is available, but right now you get one minute on this item only. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to comment on Item 9. My name is Kevin Motis. I'm with the California Brain Tumor Association. Our organization has been intimately involved in the federal initiatives surrounding broadband. Please ask me questions now so I can explain more, and we are happy to meet with your offices to share further what we know about the federal infrastructure grants, so that L.A. County can get its fair share of grant money, and so that L.A. County residents can get future-proof technology that protects residents and the environment. NTIA is responsible for implementing the federal broadband infrastructure program and distributing the grant money. NTIA is prioritizing grants with fiber to the premise, and we send an email to your offices with a link to the section referring to the preference for fiber to the premise. L.A. County should apply for the infrastructure grant money with a very detailed fiber-to-the-premise plan, which can be implemented through contracts with outside vendors as the county contracts with other projects. Fiber can now be run aerrally along telephone poles and run into homes, just like phone lines.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
Companies like Sonnet.net in northern California.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Providing at least one gig.
Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Shayna England. You may begin.
Thank you. Excuse me. My name is Shayna England, and I'm the Director of the California Community Foundation Digital Equity Initiative and help lead the Digital Equity L.A. Coalition, a coalition of more than 40 cross-sectoral organizations working in communities across L.A. County to deliver services and advance equity. We're here today to thank Supervisor Solis for putting forward this motion, and Supervisors Mitchell, Horvath, Hahn, and Barker for your I-votes and for your ongoing leadership. As we all agree, the pandemic laid bare the reality that many of us already knew. Fast, reliable, and affordable broadband is a utility absolutely necessary to participate in modern life. Grid is not universally available or accessible. If we hope to resolve this critical gap, we must make absolutely certain that once-in-a-generation investments of public dollars are properly spent where they're needed most. The CPUC's priority areas map not only leaves out many of the communities that most need support, rural, suburban, and urban alike, but short-changes everyone who lives and works in L.A. County, as the maps preclude the county and our many city and school districts, cause, and anchor institutions from accessing our fair share of public resources.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
So thank you for your I-vote on this item, and thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Yadi Yome. You may begin.
Hi, I'm Yadi, and I strongly support efforts to close the real and persistent digital divide in Los Angeles. I also ask you, please, get aware of the closely related unbanked and underbank issues based by this community that closely tied Internet access and strive to work around that barrier as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next participant is Rola Masri. You may begin.
Hi, I'm Rola Masri, and I'm with the California Brain Tumor Association. Supervisor Solis mentioned that L.A. County's ineligibility for broadband funding is due to FCC's faulty coverage maps. She is correct. Furthermore, FCC map speeds are no longer acceptable for today's technology needs. There are many gaps in the FCC coverage maps, showing coverage where there is not, and putting a strain on businesses and residents in L.A. County. It is important to know that it is the National Telecommunication and Information Administration, the NTIA, that has been charged with distributing the bulk of the $42 billion for broadband infrastructure, not the FCC. On the NTIA website, it states, and I quote, "Bipartisan infrastructure law funding should prioritize fiber to the home whenever practical to future-proof the infrastructure. The only way for county to gain broadband infrastructure funding is to truly delete the digital divide is to draft and implement a plan to bring fiber optics to every home, business, and anchor institution."
Thank you very much. Your time has expired. Thank you very much. We'll now turn to speakers in the boardroom. Go ahead, speaker.
Mike Greenspan. Now, we've got a society of what I call web snobs. Well, go online, or go to the web. In fact, I wanted to get one of these agendas mailed to me. I asked Kathy, and she said, "Go online." Well, some of us, I mean, emails and online, we're on EBT. I mean, these things are money pits. Maybe what you should do first with some of us who aren't tech savvy are have classes to teach us how to use some of these devices. Maybe we'd get interested in it. Instead, is say, "Throw it at me." I've turned down computer offer after computer offer because no one's taken the time to teach me how to operate it. They just want to throw it at me, and the stores just want to sell it to me. Well, folks, maybe you need to slow down and have people actually learn how to use them. Oh, it was politically correct for the L.A. USD to talk about people that don't have web access, and fuck the rest of the folks.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
My name is Paulina Chavez, a resident of District 2 and Senior Director of Programs and Special Projects that everyone on, a national nonprofit working to close the digital divide that has served L.A. County for more than nine years. We work with nonprofits, public agencies, schools, and many others to help people get connected to low-cost Internet service, donate computers, and deliver digital skills training. Our work has focused exclusively on the communities that have been and continue to be disproportionately impacted by the digital divide, including South L.A., Sela, East L.A., Pico Union, West Lake, and many others. We've observed firsthand and heard countless stories from diverse households about the effects of limited Internet access. This is why we share Supervisor Solis' deep concern over the CPUC draft priority maps, and we're so thankful for your leadership to request that the CPUC and FCC reconsider the maps. As they stand now, the maps exclude communities in Los Angeles that have limited access to robust Internet service, the same communities that have been deeply affected by unemployment, access to critical services, and health disparities. Without proper recognition, funding from the Last Mile Funding Account and other state and federal funding sources will completely bypass L.A. County. Thank you all to all the supervisors for your consideration of an I-vote and for your ongoing commitment to close the digital divide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moderator, we'll go back to our telephonic participants. Our next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Valerie Tuna. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. I'd like to add some commentary to the previous speakers about the value of the NTIA and bringing fiber to every home. People don't realize this, but fiber optics consumes 1/10 of the electricity that wireless consumes, according to many studies. This is a fact that cannot be ignored as L.A. County struggles to keep up with energy demands. And as we all have experienced and know about, wireless infrastructure is easily hacked, as we have seen with school systems being hijacked, banking industry being hijacked, putting all children at risk, businesses around the country losing billions of dollars through ransomware, and losing critical personal data. I have experienced that myself. Residents all over L.A. County have had their identities stolen, their bank accounts hacked, and their privacy invaded due to insecure wireless connections.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Next participant is Brenda Renshler. You may begin.
Yes, my name is Brenda Renshler. I'd like to comment on Item 9. The problem with the FCC maps are not just the coverage, but the fact that they only require a minimum speed of 25 megabytes upload and 3 megabytes download, which is not adequate for current technology, and especially not adequate with multiple users in the home, which became very apparent during COVID and continues to be a problem as people continue to work and go to school remotely. If you're going to attack the FCC maps, you could attack them on the basis of their inadequate minimum speeds, which are being attacked by other groups and industries other than the wireless industry, who continue to lobby for inclusion of their inferior technology. With adequate speeds required, much of L.A. County would be included. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next participant is Erica Cervantes. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Erica Cervantes, calling on behalf of Alliance for Better Community. We are an L.A.-based nonprofit working to advance social, economic, racial equity, and justice for the Latino community in the L.A. region. We work with families and hear testimony directly from community members on the impact the digital divide has had on their lives. We know that in L.A. County, 1 in 4 school-aged children lack adequate access to Internet, which represents approximately 250,000 families. Gaps are even more profound in historically underserved Latino-majority neighborhoods such as Southeast L.A. We all know inadequate or no access to Internet has huge implications for our communities and families. We were disappointed with the CPUC priority maps, which excludes almost all of the highest need communities in the county. The maps, as drafted, leave out the people and communities that most need support, those that have been excluded from public and private investments for decades. We'd like to thank Supervisor Solis for putting forth this motion, and also thank the board for their ongoing commitment to ending the digital divide. We respectfully urge an I-vote on Item 9 for today's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Crystal Mojica. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Crystal Mojica, the Digital Equity Program Manager at Michelson Center for Public Policy in L.A. We are here today in support of this motion because we share in the alarm of our digital equity community partners over the CPUC's priority areas map. The pandemic highlighted what many of us already knew via our lived experiences, that reliable and affordable broadband is critical to our community's full participation in society, practicing healthcare, education, job opportunities, and so much more, but it's not universally available or accessible as a modern utility. Currently, the priority areas maps, which direct public investment, exclude nearly all of the highest need communities in the county. As our partners have shared, we strongly echo the maps, as drafted, leave behind Angelenos who have been time and time again excluded from public and private investments. We must make absolutely certain that this once-in-a-generation state and federal investment of public dollars is spent equitably. We thank Supervisor Solis for her leadership and the Board of Supervisors for their ongoing commitment to ending the digital divide. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Genesis Coronado. Please go ahead. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon, Honorable Board of Supervisors. My name is Genesis Coronado. I am calling on behalf of the Los Angeles Unified School District. The district stands with Supervisor Solis' motion that expresses concern over the recent release California Public Utilities Commission's map of eligible priority areas for the Last Mile Federal Funding Account. In contrast with the CPUC's priority area public map, showing Los Angeles County has nearly universal serviceability, the district's All Families Connected Program has identified significant gaps in coverage throughout the district. The digital divide is especially harmful to public education in low-income communities and communities of color, which are disproportionately impacted, leaving the highest need families disconnected. Los Angeles Unified has sent a letter to President Alice Reynolds of the California Public Utilities Commission, asking the CPUC to reconsider the formulation of priority maps in favor of a map that better addresses the digital equity and inclusion needs of our unserved communities. Los Angeles Unified respectfully urges your support on this motion and looks forward to the participation with the county, for the partnership with the county on continuing to address the digital divide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Hector Ramirez. You may begin.
Yes, one of the others. My name is Hector Ramirez. I am a person with a disability and a resident in Chatsworth, and I really want to applaud Supervisor Solis for advancing this particular motion. Los Angeles County is home to approximately 10.1% people with disabilities, that is over 1 million people. We have known that during the pandemic, access to affordable and reliable Internet services has been a lifeline and one of the reasons that so many of us are not only surviving but are able to work independently and be in the community. Not only that, but also access services, including mental health services. So I really applaud and support this, in particular, the advancing it for all of the equity seeking population of L.A. County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jody Nelson. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Jody Nelson. First of all, I'm
First, Fiber LA shares the concern by Supervisors Solis and the board about the accuracy of broadband maps. We at Fiber First LA have understood this problem from the beginning. Unfortunately, you won't find accuracy help from the FCC or the wireless carriers. Fiber connections are the answer to this dilemma. The federal NTIA has prioritized funding for fiber. Consider the facts from the NTIA. Fiber is the only choice that fully answers the broadband dilemma, to include rural areas and affordability for residents. The saturation of wireless has not resolved the digital divide. Both Skype and Zoom require much higher speeds than the wireless being offered. Fiber to the premises has a minimum of 100 times higher speeds compared to wireless and is future-proofed. During the January 10th meeting, Solis relayed a need for a process that includes third-party oversight. I suggest you choose an independent source not funded by the industry and make this a priority. The experts at Fiber First LA can help to navigate the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other members of the public that are on the line or in the room that wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Item 9 is before us, moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Barger. To approve this item, Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 9 is before you. Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath.
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barger.
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Supervisor Hahn.
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Motion carries, 5 to 0.
And we will ask members of the public to refrain from speaking from their seats and those who are on our staff, if you can make sure that people are not yelling from their seats. Okay, now we're to item 12, establishing an independent external governance reform committee to review and improve the county board governance structure to strengthen equity, which was held by Supervisor Mitchell. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. You know, as an old poli sci student and a Coral Foundation fellow, I always found that the study of governance and how government structures operate is really a reflection of really our democratic principles and how a variety of communities, all communities, can understand, access, and benefit from the work of governing bodies. And it's in that spirit that I join with Supervisor Horvath and bring this motion forward today. We know that this board has consistently affirmed its commitment to advancing an equitable, inclusive, transparent LA County that starts with our own governance. This includes ensuring that we invite all members of our communities into the deliberative process, all, not just those who sometimes have the time and resources to access decision-makers. And as part of this effort, I think it's important that we take opportunity to look internally at our own board governance structures to identify opportunities for improvement. I think there are significant opportunities to really begin to look at, again, to advance transparency. This motion establishes an independent third party to engage expert stakeholders and report back on opportunities for improving the county's governance and policymaking process. It also directs three additional report backs to explore reforms on legislative opportunities to further amend the Brown Act. For one example, to potentially continue to allow remote public participation. I think every governing body had to respond in real time as a result of COVID, and I think the county did an amazing job to keep this body moving forward during that time. And there may be some things we learned during COVID that we want to continue to include in our governing process. We should take a pause, look at those things, and figure it out. Again, opportunity to better clarify roles and express the roles and responsibilities of the various critical entities that inform how we govern, from county council to the chair pro tem to the CEO. I know, again, during COVID, we used delegated authority to keep the trains running in LA County. This is an opportunity for us to figure out if those items should continue or just how we should, again, continue with our governance process. Coming on new to the board a couple of years ago, I took a pause and checked in with our colleagues at CSAC, and I'm the alternate to the UCC, the Urban Counties Caucus, and have even attended a NACO conference, and have been curious about how other counties govern themselves. For example, San Francisco County and Alameda County, some policies must be deliberated through committees before being voted on by the full board. In San Diego County, motions require county council, CAO, and board chair approval before they are even filed. So those are just a few examples of how governance differs across the 58 counties here in the state of California. Through this process, we can study governance structures of other counties and learn from best practices in other jurisdictions to enable, again, more deliberative, strategic policymaking. I've heard that there have been some concerns expressed that these potential reforms could limit the county's ability to move quickly. I don't believe that's the case. I believe that an equitable policymaking process doesn't need to be in conflict with an efficient and effective government. The motion asks us to look at the structure of a chief analyst and report back as to whether this structure would work for our county. I believe this office could function potentially as an independent review body. Instead of departments taking time away from actually delivering services to the public, a chief analyst could focus solely on the work of our motions and the report backs while departments move forward quickly with implementation. This motion also asks us to explore any legislative changes that might be needed to ensure that the public is able to access and provide comment at board meetings regardless of their ability or location. You know, several elements of the Brown Act were put on pause legislatively because of the pandemic. At some point, the state will roll us back, and so this is an opportunity for us to figure out what changes the Brown Act we should consider to continue to expand public access to our deliberations. I want to emphasize that this motion launches a thoughtful review process and directs several report backs. It does not implement any changes at this time. Again, just as I believe we should have a deliberative process in our overall policymaking, I wouldn't recommend anything of this significance go through without equal thoughtful deliberation. We do want, I'm not suggesting that we would want to prescribe any changes before a review. There will be opportunities later in this process to discuss the benefits and trade-offs of potential reform because it's a report back. We will only, I believe, achieve a truly equitable county governance infrastructure if we look at ways in which we govern, make decisions, and how the public can engage with us in a thoughtful, deliberative way, the public that we all have the privilege of representing. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I hope that my co-author would provide her perspective as well.
Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank Supervisor Mitchell for inviting me into the work of this motion, as well as our colleagues for hearing and discussing the item. Our motion is ultimately about looking at and studying ways that our county government can be more efficient, transparent, and responsive to our constituents. There are no final actions taken as a part of this item today, as Supervisor Mitchell indicated. Rather, this starts us on a path of reforms I've heard calls for from every district in the county. And just recently, having that conversation as a candidate, I wanted to focus both on the why and the how of the motion. But first, the why for me. I heard pretty consistently from the public calls for increased accessibility and transparency of the work of the board and people truly understanding what it is that is done at the county board of supervisors. Often, people don't understand our role as supervisors because they don't understand the work or have insight into the work that is done by this board and this body. And I had one community group specifically ask, how does a motion become a motion? How does the work of the body get considered? What is that process, and at what point can we join in that process? And so this opportunity to increase transparency and the ability of our public to engage in the process along the way, I think, will be helpful to all of us going forward. I've also heard calls for equitable representation and good governance overall. We know that there's a redistricting process that happens to consider that in part, but this effort will also increase our ability to understand other opportunities for more equitable representation. And I know that that's something that I've heard pretty consistently, and so that is another part of the why for me, as well as increasing efficiencies and clarity of communication for everyone inside the county family as we do our work together. So those are my whys, and now to focus on the hows. There are four requests of this motion. The first three actions all involve the same request. So the first request includes creation of a new independent, includes, let me clarify, the development of an independent third-party study, which would look at the following: creation of a new independent office of a chief analyst, similar to other jurisdictions such as the city of Los Angeles, to provide separate review of key items before they're voted on by the board; review of the current policy cluster system and budgeting processes; development of a procedure for routine evaluation of the county code and county charter; exploration of the implementation of priority recommendations from the county citizens' redistricting commission's final report; and review of potential changes to the structure of the board, including its expansion. This is something that I've heard pretty consistently discussed, and I think that an evaluation of that possibility is worthy of our exploration and discussion. The second request involves enhancing public participation by examining legislative opportunities to make remote public comment permanent, as well as virtual advisory board and commission meetings accessible to the public. The third request asks county council to report back in 90 days with recommendations on various campaign finance reforms, including adjusting campaign contribution limits, creating a matching funds program at the county, and establishing fully publicly financed elections. Once again, these are not changes that would be implemented in 90 days, but rather explored and reported back, and I know, once again, these are calls that we have heard pretty consistently from the public. The final request of this item today is for county council and the executive officer to report back in writing in 60 days with review, analysis, and recommendations to clarify the express roles and responsibilities of our county leadership, including during a declared local emergency. These items are designed to look at the way we do the business of the county, if there are more efficient, transparent, and responsive ways of doing so. And I invite my colleagues to consider any and all of these suggested requests, as well as those they each believe will help improve our work together, the accessibility of our work to the public, and the equitable representation in leadership I know we all strive for as board members. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other of my colleagues who want to discuss this. Are there members of the public that have signed in on this?
Yes, there are.
Donald Harlan, Fred Sutton, Mike Greenspan, Patricia McAllister, and Red Chief, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Filberto Gonzalez. You may begin.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the time, and thank you to Supervisors Mitchell and Horvath for introducing this motion. As you all know, the eyes of the world were on Los Angeles and the tragic and senseless killing in the Asian community in Monterey Park in particular. We know folks from around Southern California and throughout the US know the diversity in Los Angeles County, but oftentimes, other communities that may not have the numbers of the Mexican or Latino community or Chinese-American community are often overlooked. So as you proceed with this motion and this initiative, we urge you, and by the way, I should mention, I am the board chair of FACE, an organization led by Abe Panem. I have a CEO, as many of you know her personally, and so I am submitting my comment in this capacity, and urge you all to look more carefully at communities that are often overlooked as you proceed with this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
That concludes my, thank you.
Our next participant is David Levitas. You may begin.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is David Levitas, Executive Director of LA Forward. Speaking in favor of the motion, item 12, I appreciate the deduction of it by Supervisors Mitchell and Horvath. LA Forward is an organization that reaches over hundreds of thousands of people a year with our guide civic engagement and education, and we consistently hear as we engage people across the county that they want more transparency and understanding how local government works. And we feel like this particular motion, while not implementing any changes right away, would be a really solid step forward in studying potential changes that you've heard Supervisor Mitchell and Supervisor Horvath speak to. And so we are wholeheartedly in support of this motion, and it's very close in line with our goal of increasing the accessibility and accountability of local government, and would urge you all to support it, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Efren Escobedo. You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak on item 12. Again, my name is Efren Escobedo. I'm with the California Community Foundation, where I serve as Vice President of Public Policy and Civic Engagement. And I want to applaud Supervisors Mitchell and Horvath for bringing this much-needed motion before you and ask that you all consider support for this motion. Looking at the type of reforms and different processes that are being proposed in this motion would strongly increase not just the transparency with which the county operates, but also the accountability that it has to its voters and its residents, but most importantly, the greater opportunity for engagement. The county offers so much and has been such a tremendous leader during the pandemic and prior to that, in meeting the needs of high-need communities. This motion helps us now explore how...
Thank you, next speaker, please. Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Cindy Soto. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Cindy Soto. I'm a quadriplegic, and I live in District 4. I am also the Chair of the Personal Assistance Service Council for LA County, which is made up of over 50% people with disabilities and are recipients of IHSS. I feel hopeful that the CEO can consider the importance of a decision such as AD 2449 and ask that you seek an amendment that would allow for more flexibility for commissions, boards, and the public to hold public meetings and to make public comments remotely. This is extremely important for those of us with disabilities and other underserved populations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Prince Hassan Wegi. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Prince Hassan Wegi. I reside as Supervisor District 1. I'm calling to speak in support of item number 12. As a senior policy associate at Inclusive Action for the City, a Los Angeles-based CFI and policy research advocacy organization, our organization has learned from in-field experience in directly servicing thousands of local small businesses, BIPOC, micro entrepreneurs, that it's important to take input from the community to drive our organizational practices. That being said, I support this motion because, like, inclusive feedback and implementation is essential to making sure that the LA County government could be more transparent, inclusive, and equitable in its processes. I'm confident this motion can pave a way to formalize and integrate more internal and external stakeholders to input policy development, budget prioritization, and internal department coordination.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next participant is Roy, last name not provided. You may begin.
Hello, this is Roy Kempers out here in Roland Heights, and this is an exercise in abject absurdity in that currently, you change to this new format... in abject absurdity in that currently you changed to this new format of public input, which essentially eliminates a huge portion of the population, because how many can sit around for the entirety of your meetings here for an opportunity to comment on something? This is the abject absurdity in a slap in the face to the constituents.
Please, in the audience, don't speak out. Go ahead, Speaker, on the phone.
Okay, and please, take that hideous clock off of the screen there. It has no relationship to anything. You haven't got anybody competent to handle the darn thing. So again, this is smoke and mirrors and absurdity, and you've eliminated with your passive-aggressive change to this new format. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Hae Pen Em. You may begin.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon again. My name is Hae Pen Em, President of FACE and Community Empowerment. I just want to speak on Agenda 12 in favor that I think any place of review of transparency and for equity, I think is a great idea, as the recent Monterey Park killings have shown that there is a great need, even in the API community, contrary to the modern, annoying myth, that our communities need the same kind of resources and expertise. And I know that, for example, on mental health, Asians have the lowest use of mental health services. So as you are going about implementing this agenda item, that you will be intentional in looking at the API community, and also particularly disaggregated API data. Thank you to Supervisor Mitchell and to Supervisor Horvath for looking at this, because it is greatly needed, particularly, again, I believe that the API community is greatly underserved, even when many of the data points show that they are--
Thank you.
--suffering on many of the issues. Thank you.
Next speaker, in person.
Hello, county supervisors. This is about the independent external governance reform with a focus on equity. I noticed these, L.A. County is not a member of any of the county agency governance groups that was mentioned by Holly Mitchell. I noticed that they're giving away information of how the local governance works and the local government works to people in other states. The wording of this agenda item was modified to transfer the power of the L.A. County Supervisors to another county. Also, this is the attempt to gain control of corrupt county board of supervisors, but what's happening is they're creating legal loopholes, and they're doing a power grab with this. You know, they need to be watched over, you guys, but to transfer your power to another county--
Thank you.
--doesn't seem like a wise idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, here in person.
Hello, Honorable Supervisors. Fred Sutton with the California Apartment Association. We appreciate everything you do, and we appreciate your offices hearing our concerns and on major items when you direct for stakeholder feedback. For years, we have asked for the county to create a more transparent process as it vets items before it comes to the board. It gives people the time to provide input, look at data, allows for vigorous debate, and ultimately leads to a well-deliberated decision. Proposals with sweeping consequences and no formal input or feedback is bad policymaking. A transparent and organized process does not guarantee agreement, but does ensure voices are heard and issues can be analyzed. The board should review better processes on how it vets items before it comes to the board. Thank you very much for hearing our concerns.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Patricia McAllister. Someone sent me an email saying that you have hired some firm to give, so that we can give suggestions of how we can cut down fraud with the Board of Supervisors, and I did respond, and my response was to waive the county sole-source policy. The sole-source policy means you pick certain companies or firms to do the contracts, and they've been doing these contracts for years, and that's how you get money under the table. See, I was a business owner in Chicago. I got contracts. I either had to sleep with them or give some of the money back, and I did neither. Okay, so I know what that is about contracts, so that's what I submitted, and I see it up there, and I'm happy to see that. Now, establishing this external governance reform committee, that could be your friends, so nothing's going to change. You need somebody like me. So if I see some crap on there, I'm going to do something about it. So you need a real independent governance committee, and that would be me and a couple of these guys here, who I would keep them on the straight and narrow. You don't need any more yes men and yes women, because that's what you are. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Yeah, the Honorable Red Chief Hunt. I don't know if the will was broken, but the old stout meetings came down to the department heads being here, so we can get down to the issues. They're not here no more. The Brown Act, yeah, it's kind of been bounced around, but anyways, I like to see all the department heads down here, and I like to see the chief of staffs dealing with the people. If there's a chair and stuff like that, Nick Pletter was a great guy. We just don't have that kind of mentality of supervising back here anymore. So anyways, I would say, let's go back to the grassroots and bring all the heads of departments down here, so we can get down to the bottom line. I'm still looking for Sarah Meham. She hasn't showed up yet, so the Brown Act is very important. I stick to grassroots. Thank you, Mitchell.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Anna Williams. I wanted to say that I thank you guys for trying to be more transparent, but I did hear a lot about, you know, in the Asian community, that there's a lot going down there, but what about in the mental health community? I didn't know anything about this board meeting until I had to advocate for myself and figure out things for myself. That's upsetting, because I don't lose my voting rights. I don't lose that. Who's going to make sure that you guys are doing right for the mental community or any other community that's here? Like she said, you don't need any more yes people. We need to be understanding what's going on before you make any decisions, because I'm coming from the down, the bottom, the bottom of the bottom. We don't know anything until it's here, being voted on, and that's not right.
Thank you. Anybody else on the phone? No, and no one here? Okay. Seeing no other members of the public that want to speak up on this item. Executive Officer, please call, the item 12 is now before us. Moved by Supervisor Mitchell, seconded by Supervisor Horvath to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 12 is before you. Supervisor Celeste.
Respectfully, no.
Supervisor Celeste, no. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Uh, no.
Supervisor Barker, no. Supervisor Haun?
Respectfully, no.
Supervisor Haun, no. Motion fails, two to three.
Okay, now we're going to move on to item 27, the report on the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, and item 41D, establishing a roadmap to address the mental health bed shortage held by Supervisor Barker. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one, then zero now, to comment on this item. I believe we have a presentation by Dr. Wong, our interim Director of Mental Health. Is she here? Celia, do we know? Dr. Wong?
She should be in the back. Let me see if I can get her.
Okay, well, you want to, Supervisor Barker, would you like to lead off with the remarks?
Yeah, give me one second.
Okay.
I'm getting, trying to get organized, which coming on the heels of the last item.
Oh, here comes Dr. Wong.
Yeah, let's have a staff report while I get my act together.
Okay, Dr. Wong, would you like to? Welcome, Dr. Wong, our interim Director of Mental Health, and I understand you're going to have something to say to us.
Thank you, Supervisor. Yes, we're going to talk a little bit today about our 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline rollout, just an update on it. And I think we have a PowerPoint, which Supervisor, I tried to minimize.
That's good. Good.
But we just had a lot of data to capture, so we knew we were going to need that. Let's go and get started. This is a little bit of a timeline. So in October 17, 2020, the National Suicide Hotline Designation Act 2020 was enacted. And then in June, we really started planning with DeeDee Hirsch and closely working to roll out 988 services in L.A. County. July 16, 2022, we actually fully opened the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. And we also began simultaneously expanding our field intervention teams, called our FITs, to accommodate the increase in service requests. So our FITs include our PMRTs, psychiatric mobile response teams, and our MCOTs, the mobile crisis outreach teams. These teams are really identical, except that one is directly operated and one is contracted. We had an expansion of our PMRT by hiring peers, and we contracted for new MCOTs throughout the county with a focus on evenings and weekends. So here is a lot of data, and some tables for you, but one of the very interesting things I'd like to point out, though, is that for 988, third-party callers were only 9% and 10% in October and November, and when you compare that to the calls to our access line, it's just polar opposite. Our access lines are actually over 90% third-party callers, meaning somebody is calling in about someone else, someone else they think needs help, often a loved one. So here's some data that you could look through at your convenience. Then here are some more data metrics about our FITs in terms of dispatch and our average time to dispatch and the percentage of folks that are actually placed on a hold as a result. And, you know, dispatch, the length of time to dispatch has been a real challenge for us because of our staffing and just the size of L.A. County, as well as operating hours. So we're happy that there has been a little bit of a decrease, you know, over the last month, or the last month on this chart, in terms of dispatch time, and we've had further decreases now, but we're still, I have to say, not where we would like to be. So in terms of crisis call routing and triaging, DMH and DeeDee Hirsch, there are protocols developed to efficiently route appropriate calls to DMH Helpline Access Center, and then there's a FIT dispatch board anticipated in February 2023. And also, we're rolling out a training for all of the 988 folks who man the line, so they know when it's appropriate to refer over to access. Then in terms of LAPD and DeeDee Hirsch Mental Health Services, protocols were developed to triage and divert appropriate 911 calls to 988, and we think that was something very, very important to the success of 988. It's one of the major goals we wanted to accomplish. November 22nd, I mean, November 2022 to January 2023, we had 1,253 calls diverted from 911 to 988. So it saved significant resources, I think. About 85% were resolved just on the phone. 6% were redirected back to 911, so a fairly small percentage, and then 8% were transferred to the DMH's Helpline Access Center. So about expansion of our FITs, our field intervention teams. For PMRT, we really were working with, you know, what we were going to do during our fairly regular business hours. We added peers as community health workers to each of the teams, and there are currently 33 PMRTs during business hours, and 14 out of 30 new community health worker positions have been filled, but we do have existing hiring challenges that have been very significant. So our MCOTs, again, these are contracted crisis teams. They operate mostly on nights and weekends, and in April 2022, we had a solicitation that was issued, a competitive solicitation. We completed contracts for coverage so far in service areas 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6, and then service area 5 just came on in January, this month. And one MCOT is in operation, and remaining teams are pending hiring. Discussion pending for coverage in service areas 7 and 8. We have a provider that we're already talking to, and they are in the final processes before they go into contracting. Here's a look at the expansion of our FITs, our field intervention teams. You'll see here that we have an increase in teams of 15, so total of 15 additional teams. However, when you look at the number of vacancies, this means functionally, we still only have 33 available teams. We will be up to 50.5 teams once we complete the hiring on all vacancies. But, you know, for both directly operated and our contract providers, there have been significant challenges in hiring the appropriate staff. So let's talk about some of the challenges and opportunities in terms of, you know, the staffing. Of course, the biggest challenge we have with the staffing is the hiring and retention of staff. This is a very high-intensity, high-acuity population that people will be working with, and especially for those who are working weekend or overnight hours, you know, there are very specific challenges. I think another challenge, though, with our legal entities is also the way that claiming is done. For the county, you know, we are able to kind of absorb some of that, or we find other alternate kinds of duties for people when they're waiting for a call, but for our legal entities, it's much more challenging because their reimbursement is based on claiming. They can only claim when they see a client. So where the opportunities are, we're exploring ways to integrate telehealth wherever it's appropriate, and we want to take a moderate approach to this. It's definitely a tool that I think will help us be a little bit more efficient and help teams to get off the ground, but there are a lot of things that telehealth won't be able to accomplish with a high-acuity population. We are reopening countywide exams and exploring job fairs, other recruitment techniques, and we're exploring alternative activity codes and funding sources so that there's the possibility some of our legal entity providers will be able to capture some of that time where they're not claiming directly for clients, so it'll help kind of mitigate some of the financial risk for them. And that brings us to questions.
Thank you. Supervisor Barker.
Thank you. You know, Lisa, the report is incredibly helpful in educating our constituents on how different crisis lines work together, and I think it is important to recognize that. I mean, the fact that some of them were diverted back to 911, you know, it's a work in progress as it relates to 988. What is the backend triaging of calls between 988 and the DMH helpline look like? How does that work?
Well, the first step is that the nine, people who man the 988 line, they first really try their best to stabilize and resolve whatever issue there is, and they're largely successful with that. The overwhelming majority of calls are successfully resolved just at that point. In the rare cases when they're unable to, then the option has been to refer them to 911, or DMH for PMRT, MCOT, or direct to a hospital. There are some times when people will, what we call self-rescue, meaning that after talking to a 988 person on the line, they decide that they feel well enough to drive themselves to the urgent care because it's only a medication refill, or, you know, a fairly simple kind of intervention needed. And in situations when it's determined it's not an emergency and there are no immediate safety threats, then 988 agents transfer the call over to a priority number at access, at the DMH Access Center. The agent then stays on the line with the caller to make sure there's a warm handoff until they actually get to speak to somebody at access, and then they, you know, begin to resolve the person's issues. Most of the time, when it has to be transferred over to access, it actually results in a PMRT or MCOT dispatch, because these are the cases that are a little too high-acuity to be resolved on 988. be resolved on 988.
So going to the MCOTs, is there any way, anything or any ways that we could remove barriers or create opportunities for them to increase their hiring? I know that we're having that issue, and I know it's an issue across the board.
Yeah. Well, you know, we've kind of worked on a lot of, a lot of ways for DMH to be able to increase hiring, and when we talk about DMH at this time, we talk about both directly-operated and our contracted legal entities because we really see them as partners in all of this. So the vast majority of the things that we've rolled out as incentives, we've also made available to our legal entities, meaning stipends, loan forgiveness, things like that. What we're looking into is the possible addition of things like, you know, retention bonuses or assignment bonuses, things of that nature. But we do include, we do intend to include our legal entity contractors in those incentives.
Great. Well, I just want to thank you and the entire DMH and county team that we know have been working intently to ensure we have a system in place to integrate the new 988 system. I know that this is something that Supervisor Han, you really pushed quite a bit for good reason. Behavioral health crisis response has been a priority of this board's and a priority of mine as well, that traces back over the 30 years to when I worked to launch the first mental evaluation teams. And having adequate mental health crisis response is rooted in mental health parity. And I say that because parity is still missing when it comes to mental health services. It's our obligation to care for and respond to mental health crises in the same manner we would respond to a clinical health emergencies. Crisis response is critical to that, and that is why the county has scaled up and diversified our abilities to meet people in their community, to ensure that they stay in the community. Dr. Wong and the DMH team have highlighted the intricacies in rolling out 988 in this county and the significant resources needed to implement it efficiently. I think it's important that we continue to advocate for 988 resources to be placed as a policy priority with the National Association of Counties. We have seen that counties across the country are experiencing challenges implementing 988, but I am impressed by the work we've done here in LA County under your leadership. I want to quickly highlight some of the significant data points that you mentioned. 95%, 95% of 988 calls in LA County are safely responded to over the phone. Of the over 1,200 calls reverted from 911 to 988, only 6% were transferred back to 911. This really is a testament to the many years of work this county has dedicated toward ensuring all of our communities get the most humane and holistic response when they are experiencing a mental health emergency. And I also want to recognize our contracted providers, especially sycamores who's performing our mobile crisis outreach, and our city-based responders who are integrated parts of our care network. And I would just, in closing, say, Lisa, I hope that we are monitoring 988 outside of just getting the stats, doing like a secret shopper type of thing to make sure that it is, it is remaining that high standard that we all expect, and that if additional resources are needed, that you do come to this board sooner rather than later to let us know what the deficiencies are so that we can act in a meaningful way. I mean, I think that, that what's happening today is definitely going to have an impact on individuals who are going to be reaching out, and I think it's more important now than ever for us to make sure that we stand ready to serve them. But I just commend you and your staff.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. And I think that your point about, you know, the recent events really, you know, increasing our demand, it's so true. And I think 988 is a wonderful resource for that because of the high volume of people calling in for themselves, and they're able to do it anonymously.
Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got two questions, and just clarification, I know Item 27 and 41D were held together, but one's just a report back. So will we be able to raise questions in 41D or make statements separately? How would you like us to do that?
I just, I thought it'd be good to combine them, but I was going to let us speak on, but I don't.
That's fine.
I think we held them together, but I think it'll be better if we.
Separate it?
Separate them.
Easy, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wong. I appreciate you. And following up on your last statement about being mindful of this past weekend's tragedies, how can we make sure that we're reaching out to diverse communities, particularly in languages, that they are comfortable in communicating, so no one ever has to hesitate in using 988 to make these calls? What's that outreach look like?
I think that one very important aspect of that outreach, Supervisor, is to have language capacity so that people can feel comfortable speaking the language that they're most comfortable with. And I think, you know, some of the data that was interesting with the 988 calls, you know, looking at the ethnic breakdown of the callers, we have, when you compare to the general ethnic breakdown in the county of Los Angeles, the 988 callers have a little bit higher percentage of white and black callers and lower percentages of Latino and Asian callers. And I wonder really, you know, part of that, I think, is cultural, but part of it, too, I wonder if, you know, language plays into that. We have the language capacity on 988, but it may take more outreach to get that information into those communities and to emphasize the fact that this is somebody you can talk to anonymously.
And to lead with the language capacity of 988 so people understand that. So that's the first barrier that we can overcome, so I would strongly encourage us to make sure we do that. And so speaking of the data you shared and the ethnic breakdown, can you provide a breakdown by SPA and ethnicity so we're clear about?
I think we.
What ethnic groups per SPA? Can you do that?
We can definitely have that for you. I don't have it today.
Yes.
But I can get that for you.
I'd love that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you. I first want to say how great it is to see how much progress has been made with 988, DMH, and our partner agencies to get this system up and running. Thank you very much. It's wonderful to see calls being answered so quickly. I think the average was something like 13 seconds, and that so many people are getting the help that they're seeking when they call in. So thank you for that progress, too. We know that every additional call we can appropriately route from 911 to 988 means there is one more person who's getting the mental health care that they need without anyone needing to bring in armed response. That's a critical piece of making our communities safer while we respond with the most appropriate of mental health services. But I want to address one concern, one big area of concern that I have as it relates to staffing up, especially our mobile response teams. It's something I've been hearing a lot about, especially with recent headlines and interventions that ultimately ended someone's life. We want to see interventions that are helping affirm people's lives and their safety. And so instead of increasing the overall number of mobile response teams, it appears like we've actually lost some of our capacity in the past year or so. I know hiring has been a challenge, and we've talked about that in the context of our homelessness state of emergency as well as the entire area of mental health overall. So I want to hear a little bit more about how we can help you speed up the hiring process, what we can do to bring mobile response teams online more quickly, and what we can do to bring more of the contracted providers online so we can guarantee mobile response services are available at night and on weekends, which I know is a gap in service that I've heard talked about even before I was on this board. So if you can address those three areas, that'd be great.
Sure. Happy to, Supervisor. So, you know, just to clarify, you hit on an important point, and that is that we have increased theoretical capacity. You know, we have the funding, the budgeting in place for more teams. We have the items assigned, but we need to get the bodies in place. Now, from what this chart doesn't show is that we actually have more people in position than we did in '21, '22, but it still is less than what our capacity is to hire. I think that one thing that has been very helpful is, you know, our CEO and our DHR has really been trying to lend a hand to us and assist in any way possible to help streamline things. I think what's going to really make a difference for us is to reach out to our potential candidates and show them what it's really like to work in public mental health, all the rewards there are, the kind of salaries they can make, the kind of incentives they have available to them, like, you know, loan repayments, stipends, all these things. I think also we are going to broaden our campaigns to go out to schools, all the way down to high schools. We have, I know it doesn't seem like this sometimes from the media, but we actually have a lot of staff who are very excited about what they do and very dedicated and have found it to be very rewarding. And we want to take that excitement, you know, on the road so that people can really learn firsthand, like, what it's like to work in public mental health. We also, though, want to give people the financial supports that make it a reality or a possibility. I think one of the very exciting things we're looking at now is the potential to bring on more psych techs. And, you know, this is a position that we really don't have a lot of candidates at all, and if we can increase the number of candidates there, it would help tremendously with our teams, whether they're directly operated or legal entity. Now, one of the things we did do for our legal entity providers, which we haven't done as much for directly operated, is we opened up for them the types of positions that can go on these teams, and I think that's helped them to hire up a bit. But, you know, to have full teams, to be able to do full coverage across this huge county, I think it's going to take us looking at increasing our directly operated even more and maybe reaching into that nighttime and weekend staffing. I don't think that we're going to be able to cover all of that with only contracting.
Do you have a plan, those techs, those tech candidates that we need to increase, do you have an idea of how we can increase that?
Yes, I'm very excited about it. I looked into, like, how long it takes to get a certification and what the kinds of costs are, you know, associated with that. And you know, to be a psych tech, it's only a one-year certification program, and the cost of it, tuition, books, supplies, everything altogether, about $4,000. So we have the one-time dollars to be able to potentially cover that kind of cost as a stipend. We have to look into how we can do that at first. But what's exciting, especially going into some of our underserved and underrepresented communities, is we can show people, you can come into public mental health with a one-year certification, we can help you with a stipend, and the salary is within the range of some of our items that require a bachelor's degree. And I think it'd be a wonderful way to at least get people in the door with mental health. And, you know, I know a lot of psych techs myself who went on to, you know, become LCSWs because once they got into public mental health, they decided they really wanted to invest in it, and we have a lot of programs that support people getting their higher degrees.
Great. Well, call on us in any way we can support you in that effort. Thank you very much.
Will do. Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Solis.
Thank you. Thank you, members, for bringing this forward as a report back to us. This is something that is uniquely right now, just so timely with everything that's happening. And, you know, I feel for the department and the staff, and I just want to commend the staff that I saw out in the field at Langley Center that I met with the other day and just was really pleased to see the variety of staff that could speak Cantonese, Mandarin, Spanish, whatever Vietnamese available, because that was one of the first questions that many of us had. Did we have enough staff that could adequately address this one population? And definitely, you're there. Now, we just need to ramp up the numbers. So I totally agree, if we can set up programs where we can onboard people, maybe on-the-job training six months as we do in other positions, get them in the field and then bring them on, that's the best, that's the best secret, I think, that the county has. We don't talk enough about that. I think you should do a PSA on that, frankly. But I wanted to go to some of your slides because I think there's some interesting data. When you look at the breakdown of callers, it struck me that about 50% skew to a younger population, 15 to 34. So can you talk a little bit about what that's about? I mean, who's calling? You said that some third, how could I say, this is the individual that's going through the stress, but someone else is calling. Describe what's happening there.
Sure. For our 988 line, the vast majority are people who are calling for themselves, and I think that's a really wonderful thing because that means that we've got out the information so that people feel comfortable making calls when they feel they need to, rather than, like, our access line, which is also very important, but having over 90% somebody calling about somebody else. And I think what's happening with this is in that 15 to 24 age range, you know, we've had a lot of people throughout our county struggle with COVID, but we've had a very significant impact with people who are school age and even up to college age, where, you know, the social isolation, the different kinds of fears, the sense of loss, online classes, all of that has really taken a toll. And we've seen this in the really significantly increased numbers in anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation amongst those age groups. So I think that this kind of intervention, where they can have a number to call, it can be anonymous, they can have somebody to talk to about a crisis, has been very appealing. Like, you know, I have, my youngest is 14, and, you know, very early on, when we launched this in July, he made note of the number. He started telling his friends about the number because even at 14, he had numerous friends who had experienced hospitalization during the pandemic, hospitalization for mental health reasons. So I think that's, that's part of why the age group skew looks like that.
And then I just noticed, this is the last comment, that between October and November, nearly 250 residents utilize the service were unhoused. So can you describe what that looks like?
We were a little surprised by this as well, but, you know, I guess the information's gone out to people, and we have a lot of people who are unhoused but not uneducated and unaware of, you know, having mental health needs. A lot of our unhoused population were recently housed. I think one of the more recent homeless counts, I think about 25% were first-time homeless. So these are people for whom the stressor of being housed is very, very great, and they're used to having resources. And I think 988 has been such an important helpline for them to be able to reach out for. It's like a resource they can still access.
Thank you very much for the report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Wong, for the report back on 988. And let me just start my remarks by also thanking you and your department and your staff who responded so quickly to the tragedy in Monterey Park and giving all the resources to Supervisor Solis's community that they will be needing, I'm sure, for a long time. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you. I won't repeat what everybody said. It looks like hiring's a big deal, and we're, I think we are all in in trying to help you figure that out. First time I've heard retention, so I think before we were kind of just focusing on hiring, so it sounds like we're having a tough time keeping them, too. But I'm, hopefully, between our CEO and your department and the board, we can figure out how to really beef that up for you because I think that's really important. One of the things I'll, I'll touch on is the average time to dispatch a field intervention team. It's gone down, but it seemed like it's still too high. Report says that 36% of the calls took more than four hours to dispatch. Maybe you can talk a little bit about why it takes so long and what your plan would be to bring that down.
Sure. I'm happy to do that, Supervisor. It's complicated. There are a lot of factors that go into what the dispatch time ends up being. One thing right off the top we found out was how our data is being captured. For instance, if we have a delay getting out to somebody and it gets to be like 9:00, then the person referring might say, "Well, you know, I just want them to go to sleep now. Can you come back in the morning?" That's captured as one call, so that response time gets averaged in, and it gets averaged in as responding from the time of the call to the next morning when they wanted us to come back. So we're trying to work with our electronic systems to capture information more accurately and not in a misleading way. So I think that's, that's one small factor. I think the larger factor is just the number of teams that we have on the ground and the kind of coverage that we have. If we could have 20, true 24/7 coverage across our county, that would definitely help with the delayed times. Because what happens is if somebody, like, let's say they had a very busy day in a service area. I know recently, Service Area 3 had a very busy day. We were called out to schools in different places. There were 15 calls in the queue while they were responding, and it's about three teams at a time. So you can imagine that's quite a backup. And what happens then is some of those calls roll into the evening. And what happens then is some of those calls roll into the evening and that pushes back some of the calls that they get in the evening. Now, mind you, during this whole time, they're triaging for acuity. So the more urgent crises they act on first. But then when they stop at a certain point at the night, typically at 2:00 AM, from 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM, there's not much activity going on so that everything gets pushed to the morning. And then there are a line of calls to answer to even before the new day's calls come in. So I think when we have that many calls in the queue and only so many teams, we are going to be struggling, I think, with dispatch times for a while. But we have been chipping away at it. We have other kinds of um alternate solutions we're looking at. We also think a lot of training will help too, whether it's 988, law enforcement, as to what are the appropriate calls to have PMRT respond to.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I mean, one of the major goals of 988 um is to divert uh law enforcement uh calls and responses so that we can have uh an alternative crisis response to those who really um are having a mental health challenge. And we know many times a law enforcement response has not had the result or the outcome that we all had hoped for. Um, and even, you know, having the fire department respond, paramedic respond. Many times then they're taken to the ER, which is probably the worst place for somebody to be when they're experiencing a severe mental health crisis. Uh, so I was, uh, what I picked up in in your report was that LAPD is really working to divert calls from 911 to 988. Um, but it seemed like that was the only law enforcement agency that you gave a shout out to. How are we working with all the other law enforcement agencies in the county, as well as our own county sheriff's department, to begin diverting these 911 calls when they're specifically about someone having a mental health crisis?
Well, LAPD is the only law enforcement uh organization that we started with and we've implemented with them. We have a lot of lessons learned, which other law enforcement agencies will benefit from. But we really think that uh working with the CCJCC, the Countywide Criminal Justice Coordination Committee, which you are chairing right now, um, working with them, we're going to be able to reach a lot more of the other law enforcement agencies and get them on board. We have a structure now, we have protocols in place. So we think it's just a matter then of working with our law enforcement partners to roll this out to other agencies countywide.
Great, and yeah, and we're all here to 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 work with that. Many of us represent cities that have other law enforcement agencies um um that facilitate their 911 calls.
The law enforcement expansion as well as our hiring, those are our big focuses for 2023.
Great, yeah, great. We're we're all in. And thanks again, Dr. Wong, for for really working so hard to really ramp up this 988. I know it's my goal to have, you know, 24/7 PMRT teams out there. But that is all about staffing and resources. But I think ultimately that's where we want to get as a county so that we really can anytime of the day or night respond in the appropriate way to someone uh who's having a crisis, a loved one uh who before this had no one, nowhere else to call except 911. Um, so this is really putting us in a in a new direction. It's really um uh amplifies this board's priorities of of care first. So thank you.
Can I follow up on something you said that triggered me? Where are we with the urgent care and the hours? Because I would think that we should really highlight that for those that don't want to call 988, that we have an urgent care at different, at MLK, at all of you.
A mental health urgent care.
I'm sorry, mental, excuse me.
I think we're not calling it that anymore. What are we calling it?
Crisis stabilization units.
I like mental health urgent care, but okay.
But but I mean, the point being, for those, when we do 988, do we? I've never called it, but is it recording that? I mean, they've got, they've got options available if, or does a live person immediately pick up when they call 988?
A live person almost immediately picks up when they do 988.
I just want to make sure that the hours reflect when there's a need. And and I find that at least in our office, the need usually is in the evenings and on the weekends. Um, and so I hope that that we take opportunity to look at that as well.
Our urgent cares, all of our urgent cares right now are contracted and they are all open 24/7.
And currently, law enforcement can transport someone to a mental health.
And they do, LAPD does quite a bit.
That's another point of training we're really working with our law enforcement partners on, to really have them take people to urgent cares rather than ERs and overwhelm the ERs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
Yes, there are.
Please call them.
Well, Anna Williams, Donald Harlan, Mike Greenspan, Red Chief Hunt, please come forward and staff will assist you.
And then we'll take 41D after we hear the public comment? Or do we vote on it?
Can we take 41D together and then vote on, have members of the public vote?
Yes, um, and but who, the the members of the public that we just called up are, do they think they're they're speaking on?
They can speak on both items.
Both items, okay. You can speak on item 27, the 988 line, or 41D establishing a roadmap to address the mental health bed shortage. Okay.
Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Ambrose Brooks. You may begin.
Hi, yes, uh, my name is Ambrose Brooks. I'm the Coalition Coordinator for the Justice LA Coalition. And I'm also calling to speak uh in favor of um agenda item 14 that was continued. So MIST has been an incredibly successful program since inception.
Oh, wait a second, wait a second.
Related to 41D.
Uh, no, item 14 is not what we're on right now. We're on 27 and 41D. So we're not on 14.
Right, yes, and um my 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 comments are that the expansion of the MIST program is critical to also expanding the availability of mental health beds across the county. So expanding MIST is related to 41D.
Go ahead.
Um, and so I, yeah, I just, I just wanted to speak that, you know, the county has not provided enough funding or resources to serve the entire MIST population. Um, and that I think it is necessary that they expand MIST in order to also online more mental health beds. Um, and I want to send appreciation to Supervisor Berger and Mitchell for recognizing the dire need for mental health beds to serve everyone with mental health issues who need care across all levels of the acuity spectrum. I'm concerned, though, that the timeline for this motion is too long. We need the mental health beds now, not in two years, but as soon as possible. And a question about some wording in the motion, just wondering, how is there not already a gap analysis done of mental health beds? The lack of mental health beds has been an issue for years and the county should, yeah.
Thank you very much. I was giving her a little extra time because I interrupted her. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Janet Afante. You may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
So I just want to first start off that I think the fact that this board is continuing to prioritize mental health is um especially great for our communities right now. As you know, um, there's a very large population that is in need for immediate care and excellent care and available care. And I don't think that any number of report backs or any number of consultants or any number of logistical bureaucracy things are going to actually help the population that's hurting right now. The population that is being directed to things that hurt not only themselves, but our community at large. It's critical that the county take actual steps to provide care for the closure of Men's Central Jail, to provide care for the communities that have been waiting for years to have something be done. There has already been a Men's Central Jail closure report. There's already been an alternative to incarceration.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Hector Ramirez. You may begin.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Hector Ramirez. I'm an LA County image consumer and one of the co-chairs for one of our consumer stakeholder groups. And so I really thank the board for really prioritizing the 988 initiative. Uh, we know firsthand uh the need that our community has, uh, the fact that right now Los Angeles County leads the nation uh by having the largest number of people with disabilities, particularly Black and Latino people, who are seeking mental health services and die uh trying to get that and not being able to have that. We also recognize the shortage shift staff. So we we've made some recommendations and welcome the interim director to really uh meet and talk with our communities uh to base the actual recommendations for retention and services strategies that we have. We know that our consumers are having trouble applying for those positions. Um, and we definitely have some ideas and suggestions on how to solve that. Thank you very much and we look forward to supporting your work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Carlos Leon. You may begin.
Carlos Leon, uh, organizer with Community Coalition. Um, here just to make sure that we are in, you know, that uh what gets voted on is 41A. Um, we get daily uh members in our community who are becoming houseless every day uh and in desperate need of an extension of protection rights in the county.
This is not the item we're on. What I'm, uh, 41A, no, we're on 41D and 27.
My own comments on 41A, they get approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Diego Rodriguez. You may begin.
Good afternoon, I'm set to speak on item 25 in general public comment. Should I be speaking now or?
Yeah, no, that's not, uh, we're on 27 and 41D. I mean, I know what they are, but the, that seems like the speakers are not. So I don't know what we're, what's going on with the um our telecommunication folks when when they're signing in. Because I don't want them to stay on all this time and then not be on the right item. Okay. Next speaker on 41D or 27?
So Madam Chair, I do see speakers that are signed up on other items. So those individuals can press 1-0 to take you out of the queue and we'll be on public comment and um you can, you know, press 1-0 when we're on that item. So can we have the next speaker on only 27 and 41D, please?
The next participant in queue is Maya Williams. You may begin.
Oh, hi, how you doing? Um, I just wanted to say thank you guys for 988 so that people can be able to reach um the mental health services. I appreciate that. And I just wanted to know, did you guys pass over item 23? That's what I'm missing.
Thank you. Oh, uh, item 23 uh is on consent. Would she be able to speak on that on um during general public comment? Yes, so you'll be able to speak on that item on general public comment? Items that were not held by, or, yes, okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next participant is Anthony Arenas. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Anthony Arenas. Um, I'm from Supervisory District 3. I wanted to first thank the board for all their work on 988. I think we need to add some more alternatives. Um, and specifically on 41D, I wanted to speak in favor. I think that it's critical that county recognize the dire need for mental health beds to serve everyone who needs care. And I worry that the timeline for this motion is too long. The lack of mental health beds has been an issue for years and the county must consistently be tracking needs and availability. There has to be a continuous tracking of gaps and processes to start filling them while tracking ongoing progress. Thank you Supervisor Mitchell and Barker for recognizing the urgent need for mental health beds. I only question why there needs to be more report backs. There are many different analysis done by the precise numbers of mental health beds needed to close Men's Central Jail. So why can't the county vote upon the analysis already completed? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next participant is Zeke Sandoval. You may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Uh, hi, this is Zeke Sandoval with PATH. People assisting the homeless. PATH staff and our colleagues at DMH do heroic work confronting the county's toughest mental health crises. But the fact remains that no one gets better on the street. Our biggest obstacle isn't people refusing to accept resources. It's the lack of resources to begin with. So we need more beds for people to stay and receive treatment. Uh, we're very grateful for this item. With several policy changes on the horizon that will increase the region's demand for mental health treatment, it's critical that the county take advantage of the state of emergency and prepare now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next participant is Diego Rodriguez. You may begin.
Go ahead.
Diego Rodriguez.
Good afternoon. Once, once again, I'm 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 waiting for item 25. So I believe this is not the item that is being addressed at this time.
No, yeah, okay. Uh, next speaker who's on.
Please don't queue up again until we take comments for 25.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, next participant is Trent Rosenleeb. You may begin.
Uh, thank you. I believe I, as a previous caller, I'm on the wrong session. I was wanting to comment on item 37.
Oh, yeah, okay, we're on 27 and 41D. Let's go to in-person. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anna Williams again. And on 41D, I think we are very, very, I understand LA County is trying to do uh better things when it comes to those beds and getting more beds. But I'm really going to talk about 27. 27, I did call 988 for my friend and he was there and he was present on January 19th of 2022. And we asked for respondents to come out and they never did. And also on February of 2022, when I got shot by the same individual that was asking for help because he wasn't sleeping correctly. And unfortunately, I had to use myself as a bodyguard between children because he was walking in the middle of my my line and making sure that, you know, to make sure he didn't shoot children, I had waved my hands. And I think it's wrong for us to just constantly incarcerate people that have mental illnesses that they can actually address by not just incarceration. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Next speaker, please.
Uh, 41D, the, you guys are trying to get more beds for mental health, uh, you know, and also you're trying to hire more people to patrol the communities for mental health. It's bad enough when you call the sheriffs or you call law enforcement and they don't want to do their job. They say, here, call the mental health, or they call the mental health team and then you get the county looking at your family and stuff. They don't need more money for that. That's a real bad thing those guys do cruising around the community looking for people to put in mental health. I know they need service, but seriously. Also, um, you don't need to develop more properties for more mental health beds. There should be no development of real estate for new mental health facilities. You guys have facilities all over the place like that. Uh, you guys don't need to be feeding more money into that. That's a really bad system they have there. Uh, you should use the buildings you already abused instead of building more of them for mental health beds.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Azazel Robledo. Yo vengo a hablar por las enfermedades mentales. In mi caso personal, yo he llamado al SMART team. A veces no están disponibles ese grupo que está encargado de tratar con personas con enfermedades mentales.
Good afternoon, my name is Azazel Robledo and I'm here to speak on mental health. And on a personal note and experience, I've called to speak to the SMART team and sometimes they're not available, those teams that treat the mental, that help with the mental illnesses.
En el caso opuesto llega la policía regular pero ellos llegan con una actitud más agresiva. No saben a lidiar con personas con enfermedades mentales. La respuesta para ellos es es echarlos a la calle. Yo pienso que esa no la respuesta para un enfermo mental.
And on the other hand, and we get, if I call, we get a regular police officer who then comes in with an aggressive attitude and they're not trained to deal with anyone with uh mental health. And their answers are to throw those people out on the streets. Those aren't the answers to throw them out on the streets.
Entonces mi pregunta es cómo vamos a lidiar con la indigencia cuando la mayoría de la indigencia tiene enfermedades mentales. Yo lo que necesitan es un mejor trato, mejor servicios. Algo que yo he notado que los recursos que están ahorita no están funcionando.
And so my question is, what are we going to do to deal with the homelessness? They deserve better treatment, better options, better resources?
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, good afternoon. My name is Annabella Masariegos. I'm disabled because workers come from the county of Los Angeles. Incompetent administrators make me sick from health services. One time I had experienced, I have PTSD. I was experiencing a crisis. I went to the county facility, the ER of psychiatry. They did not see me because I was not cuckoo enough for them. And they told me go up front and go and see somebody who can help. I was seeking medication because I did not have no medication. I was seeking antidepressant. So they refused to see me because I was not cuckoo enough. They sent me across the streets, a private contact from the county. Again, I couldn't get no help, nothing at all. I was so frustrated. So with the help of God and my friends, I was able to overpass that crisis. But right now, it's happening to many people, too many people. We need to start in the school, in the children, in the primaries. We need somebody there to start helping kids because there are so many mental health everywhere. Children are having guns and shooting people, and nobody sees that. We need a better control. Please do something. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that you said you got through the other crisis where you felt like no one was helping you, but if you would like to talk to somebody today, we have somebody that.
For mental health, no. Well, I do need to ask the county to send me to vocational rehabilitation.
See the corner, can you help her?
Because it's a mess what they have created on my life.
Thank you.
And you should need to know, miss.
Thank you. Okay, someone will help you. Okay, do we have any other speakers? Oh, are there any more on the phone? Okay, hearing no other comments. Do we want to talk about 41D now?
Yeah.
Supervisor Barker, please.
Essential to having an effective crisis outreach network is ensuring that you have the beds in place. And one pain point experienced by all providers in our county and really across the state is having beds for individuals suffering from severe mental illness. Despite exhaustive work to construct, contract, and more efficiently utilize beds in our system, we remain thousands of mental health beds short of our current need. This county has worked within the strict funding limitations to get every bed online, and I commend you and your staff for doing that. I want to give credit to the state for recognizing this problem and investing in the Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Project. This capital has been critical in jumpstarting capital projects across our county, but even with this capital, we have not addressed the long-term operational funding challenges. We have lobbied the state and federal government for relief from the IMD exclusion, which caps our ability to be reimbursed for mental health beds at 16 beds per facility. This significantly inhibits our ability to build up to the scale necessary. Our goal is to work with DMH to perform a robust gap analysis that takes into consideration all the changes our mental health system has gone through and project forward with expected need. In developing this roadmap, it's essential to remember that these beds are not a one-size-fits-all, and I think that's what the whole discussion on the Care Court rollout really identified. It means that we have to provide the beds where the individual needs them, and it's not always in a locked mental health facility. In light of the county's plans to start the Care Court, as well as last week's development in the LA Alliance lawsuit, it is imperative on the county that we have a real-time analysis and plan for how we are addressing the bed need in the county. I would also like to request that the executive office include annual status updates from the departments so that this becomes a living and breathing plan moving forward. But having said that, we put 180 day. I think when Supervisor Mitchell and I talked, we won it yesterday. You know, this is something that we need, especially when you talk about the Care Court. Once we stabilize, some of these individuals are not going to be capable of living in what we'd call traditional, long-term housing. The whole board and care model, which served a purpose because it allowed them to have their own room, live on their own, but have the services onsite to support them so they don't end up back on the street. We continue to have a shortage of those beds, and the state's reimbursement rate is making it to the point where the land is being sold and developed for other things, because they just can't make ends meet. And with that amount of money, those that, and I'm not saying all, that are in it, I want to make sure that we're not providing substandard care and taking advantage of individuals that can't really understand what their rights are. So I think it's important, and I really thank you Supervisor Mitchell for co-authoring this with me. I think, again, this needs to be a living, breathing document moving forward. We brought 500 beds on, that was your goal, but we found that's not enough. And I think that speaks volumes to what we need to do, and then COVID just completely complicated things even more. So thank you for the co-author, and I really look forward to moving this forward.
Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Barker. You know, I couldn't agree more with two of the members of the public who said, I can't believe we don't already have a gap analysis. I agree. Thank you for the motion. And, you know, a bed, all beds aren't created equal. And, you know, I've started kind of creating a laundry list, Dr. Wong, of all the different categories of beds we've talked about, from mist and fist to ODR to now with LA County expediting our role into Care Court. And so, and while we are hemorrhaging, as Supervisor Barker said, in terms of some of our old-school, if you will, traditional models like board and care. And so, we're clear, we see it in our own communities every day, we hear it from the public, we need beds. We're clear, you mentioned urgent care, you know, the urgent care in my communities don't have beds, and what happens is, they're seen in urgent care, but a bed has to be in OR, and every OR doc across this county will tell you, we can't transfer them, and so they languish in OR, which is not a place to be if you're in the middle of a mental health crisis. And so we know we've got to expand beds. And I think it's important, as we talk about that, that the community understand that, because while we're fighting the federal limit on the number of beds a facility could have, something called the IMD, we're trying to get a waiver, you know, licensing in community is not an easy thing. And so as we talk about the transfer in culture, in terms of caring for people in community, community needs to understand what that means. And so it's CBOs needing to step up. You know, I worry every day about our ability as a county to ramp up at the speed with which the need would suggest. We've now added Care Court to that list of beds we have to make available. So I think the gap analysis is an important first step. So before we bring more motions asking for more beds, we understand where we are, what we've supplied, and where we need to get to before we do take other actions that will impact the already overboard and under-resourced system of beds appropriate for people suffering from mental illness. So I look forward to the report back, so we have a roadmap in terms of where we are and where we need to get to and by when. Thank you, Ms. Barker.
Thank you. Supervisor Salis, are you on this one, or are you still on there from before? Okay, Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the authors for bringing this motion forward. Obviously, this is a more than perfect time to reassess our mental health system's capacity, and I think, and think through how we can expand it to meet our county's growing needs. I understand this isn't the first time the board has asked for expert advice on how many mental health beds we need in our public system, but now we have fellow elected officials at all levels of government, community advocacy groups, leaders across the state and nation focused on addressing these same issues. So hopefully, we can take this moment of alignment on the issue and focus on the issue into actual implementation of beds on a quicker timeline. We all want to get more people into the care and treatment they need, and we're looking forward to receiving the report back, as we've all said, so we can get a better sense of what we need and how we need to build it. But I also think that included in this motion request for proposed recommendations about potential funding sources and bed procurement opportunities are being proposed on a timeline that we can accelerate as beds become available, as we help you through joint efforts through our declared state of emergency. There will be overlap in the populations that we're serving who are experiencing homelessness as well as mental health issues. And so making sure that we can move these, move these beds, making these beds available more quickly, moving in that direction is exactly what we need. I'm very interested in hearing more ideas about how we can tackle both the funding challenge and creative solutions for us to bring more beds into the county's system. And in my short time here, we've heard a lot about this, so the roadmap on how we get there is essential to making sure that we actually realize these beds out in our communities.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Barker and Mitchell for this motion. We know that the three ingredients needed for our alternative crisis response are having someone to call, having someone to respond, and then having somewhere to go. And the somewhere to go has been the piece that has been very difficult, and we know we need to increase the number of mental health beds which we have available. And I know they're not all created equally, and we know a bed is not a bed unless there's staffing to make it a mental health bed. So there's a lot that goes into it, but I think, listening to your recent, just your presentation, Dr. Wong, on 988, it's clear we're going to ramp that up. More and more people are going to be coming familiar with 988, and we have a real opportunity then to get them the help they need. And, you know, obviously, a part of that is a mental health bed. I think it will be helpful to get into the specifics of the types of beds we need and how do we get there. And when the Department of Mental Health puts together this analysis and this report back, they should keep in mind all the other moving parts in the county, like our alternative crisis response system, the pending LA Alliance settlement, the commitment to close men's central jail, and the beginning of Care Court at the end of this year. In fact, when I was in the courtroom last week with Judge Carter, he displayed the 2019 mental health bed report written by Dr. Sharon that was referenced in this motion today. So again, I think a lot of times we operate under lawsuits that are trying to get us where we need to get. I think we all know we need to do better, and we need to get there, and mental health beds is a key part of that. So, and I also think we've brought up many times the restrictions that we have on the dollars. We've been accused of sort of sitting on money, but the response would be, a lot of that money we cannot use currently because of the restrictions that the state has placed on how we spend those dollars. So I would hope that in the report back, you would also highlight that and any legislative effort we need to make to loosen the strings on the dollars that will help us, I think, get these mental health beds sooner. So looking forward to this roadmap, and I think then we're all ready to go and help you get where we need to get. So, thank you. Any other supervisors want to comment on this? We've already had public comment on this. So item 27, colleagues, is a receive and file. That was a 988 report back. And hearing no objections, that will be the order. And now we will vote on 41D. Moved by Supervisor Barker, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 41D is before you. Supervisor Salis.
Aye.
Supervisor Salis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath.
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Hahn.
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, I'm trying to look at, before we move to item 41A, I would like to note that item A1 is also being held by Supervisor Barker and will be taken up after 41A. Okay, so A1, I'm putting over there. And now we're on 41A, affirming the rights of tenants and property owners, and extending protections and assistance to prevent an increase in homelessness, which was held by Supervisor Horvath. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1, then 0 now to comment on this item. Supervisor Salis. Who, wait, who held this?
I did.
Okay, so, oh, she's the, you're the co-author. Right, okay, Supervisor Horvath, would you like to make remarks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Three years after the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, we are still seeing the impacts of the pandemic on our community. COVID is not over. People are still getting sick, they're still out of work, they're still losing jobs, and unfortunately, still dying from COVID. The protections before us today will keep residents of LA County safer and healthier. They keep our communities functioning and thriving and stable. This item, to extend COVID-19 rental protections, is an important final step in making sure that the COVID-19 recovery embraces everyone in the county and provides all of our constituents with the ability to thrive in the years to come. Despite being three years into the COVID-19 pandemic, there are still many families and individuals in the county who are struggling to recover from the financial impacts of COVID-19. And we know that we're not just recovering from the compounded impacts of COVID-19, we're recovering from an unjust system that existed long before COVID-19 and risked people's housing, which has contributed to the growing homelessness crisis. Whether that be the impacts from losing a job completely, reduced wages, or the need to care for sick family members, many of these impacts are still here with us. And for many individuals who are still struggling, homelessness is unfortunately a next potential step if we don't take further action to help those who are most at risk. The motion before us today is meaningful because it provides an effort, an additional effort to provide individuals who are impacted by COVID-19 with assistance to pay off their back due rent, allowing them to stay in their homes, and at the same time prevents individuals from becoming unhoused. And I know that there are some proposed changes that have been brought forward, and I will address some of those, and I know that there are authors of other motions, so I want to make sure we are all clear on what we're voting on before we ultimately vote. But the intention of this item is to continue eviction protections for renters that added additional occupants or pets during COVID-19, and require that landlords provide a 30-day notice to cure. Continue eviction protections for low-income tenants that owe back rent that was accrued during COVID-19. Direct our CEO to utilize additional funding to provide rental assistance to tenants and landlords. Some of that funding would be provided to Stay Housed LA, which has already helped so many tenants at risk of eviction, and an additional amount would go to a new program for small landlords without a mortgage. Any property owner who, and this is very important for me, any property owner who accepts these public dollars cannot evict their tenants. The point of a rental assistance program is to keep people in housing. We need to make sure that our public dollars are being used for that purpose. These assistance dollars are offered in support of property owners with an understanding funds will mitigate the impact of lost rental income and ensure ongoing tenancy for their building's occupants. Lastly, this item would consider a report back on the development of a rent relief program, which would prioritize serving tenants most at risk of evictions once tenant protections expire. This item makes an initial investment in rental assistance, and we know that we will need to build upon that investment in order to ensure that renters who are at risk are fully supported. We know that the item proposed, proposal today is not enough long-term, but it will allow us to start supporting both impacted tenants and property owners while we work to build out a larger rental assistance program for greater impact. And I want to give a special shout out to DCBA for their willingness to step up and help us take this on and work with us in the planning of this item. I want to thank our staff who provided us with the report on Friday. That was the direct result of a previous request of this board as we look at what we can do going forward. The expanded rental protections are critical for both renters and for property owners. We know this delicate relationship has been greatly damaged by the COVID pandemic. The rental assistance and tenant protections seek to repair the balance and stability reflected in vibrant, occupied, healthy housing communities. The consequences of doing nothing could be dire. Nobody should be made unhoused by this crisis. We just declared a homelessness crisis state of emergency in our county, and so we must continue using the tools at our disposal to keep people in their housing and curb the inflow into homelessness. inflow into homelessness. We can't allow this public health emergency to throw our communities and our streets further into crisis. And to address proposed changes from county council, some that were proposed coming into this meeting, I would read in Item Section 1A, we would prohibit landlords through January 31st, 2024, from seeking an eviction action against tenants for the presence of unauthorized occupants and/or pets necessitated by COVID-19 who began residing in the unit between March 1st, 2020 and January 20th, 2023, and we would strike through January 31st, 2024. It continues, "Once the protections expire, require landlords," we add in, "through January 31st, 2025, to provide tenants with a 30-day notice to cure or quit prior to filing an eviction based on the continuing presence of such unauthorized occupants and/or pets," and strike the remainder of that paragraph. In Section B, we would extend the remaining protections in the resolution through June 30th, 2023, including protecting tenants whose household income is at 80% area median income or below and who cannot pay rent due to financial impacts related to COVID-19, and adding at the end of that section, "Once the protections expire, require landlords to provide tenants with a 30-day notice to cure or quit prior to filing an eviction based on back due rental payments accrued prior to February 28th, 2023." And like I said, I understand there may be other amendments, and I want to make sure my co-author is amenable to those amendments. And if it's all right with you, Madam Chair, I'll turn to her.
Supervisor Solis.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Supervisor Horvath. I want to thank also all the advocates and people that have been working with us through this for a long, long time. I want to thank our staff, DCBA, and also CEO, and the board, because I know we've had discussions about this, and we go sometimes back and forth, but it doesn't erase the need that's out there, in my belief. So everything that you put forward in terms of amendments, changing, changing things, I think makes it easier and strengthens more protections that the county has already put forward. In fact, I think it's, it's a, the city of L.A. is taking, you know, kind of a page out of what we've done by making things better. So we have been leading, and we need to continue to lead. I'm happy that Supervisor Mitchell has amendments also that she'll be presenting, I believe, later, and I'm open to those as well. I also know that, well, that also includes Supervisor Barker and Mitchell, who have other ideas and a motion for relief programs, which I think is amenable as well. And I think, just to underscore, we know that evictions are averaging about 3,000 unlawful detainers per month, higher than the pre-pandemic period. That's what alarms me, that's what keeps me up at night. The tenant protections in Los Angeles County have kept families housed throughout the pandemic and are set to end, as we all know, in a matter of days, meaning that more than 30,000 households could face eviction by the end of the year. And we saw this clearly reported by UCLA researchers that estimate, that estimate is based on county superior court records, so it's factual. So we know what works, but we need to do more. And this board needs to focus on what needs to be done and do the right thing and address this crisis. We heard all day today just about people that are unhoused not feeling good about their mental state because some people, quite frankly, are going to be out on the street unless we do something. That also is a stressor, and I get it, there's also landlords that also need to be repaid. I think we're going to be able to do this, and I hope that today we do the right thing to extend the tenant protections for six months. That was the original motion. I hope that there'll be some consideration for that, given that now we're looking at coupling how we can pay for this. And the CEO helped us identify $5 million in ARP and COVID emergency funding, and with Barker and Mitchell motion, we're talking about another $45 million that potentially could come to bear, that could help us provide with funding resources to address the issue. Additionally, the county, I know, has identified other critical programs that will soon be rolled out that help us address the unhoused and people that may become homeless. The Land Bank program and the Community Land Trust program are other tools that currently, right now, are helping us address housing affordability, because that, in many ways, is what we're also faced with. These programs collectively have been greatly supported by our community groups like Public Council, Sage, and Eastside Leads, just to name a few. And we should invest in these programs, as well as the Stay Housed L.A., Small Mom and Pop Landlord Assistance Program, which I wholeheartedly support, and Mortgage Assistance Programs. We all recognize that COVID drastically changed and disrupted both our families and our economy, and had a disproportionate impact on most of our vulnerable families, and we know who they are. We need to do all that we can to reduce their displacement, to prevent more people falling into homelessness. And this is a reminder that the county needs to continue with our tenant protections and relief programs to prevent more homelessness and housing insecurity. Colleagues, I am hopeful for a six-month extension on the emergency eviction protections, given that we may be identifying additional funds with the motions that are going to be presented through amendments by these board members here that I serve with. I think we can get through this. So I would also ask for your aye vote and support this, but the discussion is on the table. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there any of the colleagues that wants to speak on this? Oh, there you are.
I want to ask the authors a question. I mean, there's no question, we talked about the unlawful detainers. I met with Door of Hope in Pasadena that provides resources and support for people that are either experiencing homelessness or on the verge of becoming homeless. And one of the things pointed out to me was that this five-day unlawful order, landlords will serve it on a Friday, and the five days are Saturday and Sunday included, and individuals don't have the time to rectify or correct. Then Door of Hope can only help so many, and they do. But have we thought about fixes, or talking to the judges, because you mentioned that in your remarks, about what they are seeing taking place? Because I know that, that, I understand where you're coming from, and you're right, it was long before COVID, and I think COVID is what kind of highlighted it. But there are issues that I even think the industry would want to sit at the table and look at as it relates to changes, both state, as well as even in the county. And I guess my question is, we keep talking about a moratorium under the guise of COVID, and I think the next one's going to be under the guise of emergency order for the homeless crisis. But have you, in your motion, talked to the industry to find out what their thoughts are or unintended consequences of doing some of the recommendations here?
You know, I personally have not spoken to them. They have spoken to my office, and I know that they were very reluctant in supporting an extension. But I think that one thing that is new is that we're looking at how we can seek other funding sources for those landlords, right, to help them out. And certainly, I think, maybe our, my, the principal mover or the motion, we could consider talking and having that as part of our discussion with the courts and a legislative fix, because I do think it's unfair. I mean, how many times has that happened to us when you get notice on something, and it's a Friday, or you can't even contact your bank, because nobody, no real person is there, or you're calling Social Security or DMV? So I do think this is a problem. I don't think it should delay this, though, but I, we could possibly add that as an amendment, that that be a part of what we can certainly entertain. CEO, do you have a comment on that?
Not on the substance, Supervisor, but if the request is for us to engage with stakeholders to identify unintended consequences, we can certainly do that and work with DCBA and include it in our report back.
I'm open to that discussion. I haven't had a discussion with property owner associations on this specific item, but in the past, on those issues, we have had conversations where they've opposed those kinds of changes. So I'm not hopeful, but I remain open that there will be a willingness to try and make some changes that will help keep people into housing, since we are all in this region recognizing that, recognize that tenants are in trouble, and that this homelessness crisis largely is contributed to by the inflow of residents, residents who are tenants falling into homelessness.
And I agree, and I, and I think that, well, I know, that to vilify the industry based on a few bad actors, I think is unfair. And there, and there are bad actors, believe me. And just like, you know, there are bad tenants. I mean, it goes both ways, it strikes both ways, and I think it's important for us to look at this holistically, because, again, I don't want the unintended consequences to be that the, that the landlords either stop renting, which, for the most part, if they've got a duplex, they might, and then we exacerbate the supply and demand chain that really is what got us into this mess. You've got, you know, 10 people trying to get into three apartments, and so what happens? The prices go up, and it, this is what we get. So I think we need to, we need to look at that as a balance as well. But I would just say, the industry needs to be at the table. And, you know, I talked to someone about this five-day unlawful detainer, and they said, absolutely don't change it. Well, I can just tell you that I've talked to individuals that have experienced it, and they are trying in good faith. This, this woman wanted to pay her rent, and the landlord wouldn't cash the check. So she was trying to pay it. He wanted her out so that he could fix it up and then rent it at a higher rent to someone else. And she had nowhere to go, she has a disabled child, and she was desperate. And when they did the five-day unlawful detainer, she, she didn't know what to do. And if not for Door of Hope, she would have been on the street. So I know there are stories out there, but I just feel like when I hear eviction moratorium extending, I, it causes me a great concern, because those that are not paying their rent are going to go, and I think, Supervisor Mitchell, I'm taking, stealing your thunder, but they're going to go into deeper debt. So rather than, you know, correct it, and that's why I am going to be bringing a motion with Supervisor Mitchell to address that, because I think it's important for us to recognize that this is very, this has got to be a balanced approach, because we've got to be, recognize that the landlords serve a purpose too. They're housing individuals right now, but they deserve to be paid. And when you enter into a contract, you know what your, you know what your obligation is. So they went in with their eyes wide open. I've talked to people who now are saying that in some cities where it's 7% increase, their rate, their rents being increased right now, as we speak, and they're nervous about what comes next. So, you know, and that concerns me as well. I think that there are things taking place that go beyond what we even understand, but that are a direct result of the eviction moratorium and the anxiety that mom and pops especially have, because this is their retirement, for some of them, they live off of this. And so, you know, I will listen to the testimony today. I have serious, serious reservations about this, but we'll see what your amendments are as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I believe Supervisor Mitchell is not introducing her amendments, and, yeah, you know, there are so many issues that were, happened long before COVID, and hopefully, those are the ones we can address moving forward in terms of protecting tenants. I think the issue I have, colleagues, is that, you know, the last extension we did, we said it would be the last. And I think there's a sense, particularly from our landlords, that they're looking for, you know, honesty and transparency from us, and when we said the last one was the last, and then we're extending it another six months, I think that's what I have an issue with. I was hoping that someone was going to bring in something, I would be willing to support it for maybe one or two months, while we work to, you know, work on tenant protection, because I think there's, tenant protections are something we need to continue to keep working on. And I would say, too, this, what we have authority for is to put in these protections in our unincorporated areas, which we have done. We have put in strong tenant protections in our unincorporated area. It's under this COVID emergency that we were allowed to supersede all 88 cities and demand that they follow what we have the authority to do in unincorporated. And what's happening is the state will be ending their COVID emergency, I believe at the end of February. We will probably be looking to end our COVID emergency, because while COVID is still here, the crisis that we experienced two years ago, I mean, it's very different now than it was then. And I would say to my cities, and I would say to all of you who are here today, you know, your cities that you reside in have an obligation as well to put in the same tenant protections that we have done in our unincorporated area. And I know I got letters from some of my cities asking us to continue this while they worked to put in tenant protections in their own cities, but I would say, at your very next council meeting, you should also put in strong tenant protections for your residents, just like we have done in unincorporated. And I will say, Supervisor Barker, I have heard loud and clear as well from our landlords, and it has not been a fair process so far, and a lot of that money that has been there for mortgage relief or landlord relief just has not gotten to them. And I know I hear that a lot, that so far, because they would be fine if they were made whole, right? I don't think they would care where the money was coming from if they were made whole. But to have their tenants not paying rent, which we have sanctioned, but them not getting the relief that they need to continue to make the repairs that they're doing, the mortgages that they need to prepare, pay, I think has been unfair. So I have concerns as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I, I want to make sure I heard you correctly, because I want to see if we can actually help protect renters here. Were you suggesting you would be supportive if it were limited to the end of March?
Well, I think it should, yeah, I would, I would go to the end of the March. I was thinking to the end of when the state ended their moratorium. I mean, their COVID emergency, which would be February, which would be the end of February.
I think the goal is to get to a majority so we can move some protections. So if we, if it's, if we don't hear agreement on June 30, you're saying, what would you agree to?
I would, I would agree to two months.
Okay, so end of March? Is that March 31?
I would take March 31.
Okay.
But then, but again, then, you know, we need to really work on, I believe Supervisor Barker, you have a motion about getting resources to our landlords, which is coming up. So I would, I would agree with that, but, you know, that, we've tried to have an off-ramp of this at every meeting, and we can't seem to get on that off-ramp.
Well, I think that's part of what the substance of this motion is trying to do in the later parts of the motion, but I just want to make sure, if we, if we can't get June 30 to be the date, if you're willing to move March 31, if there's agreement around that, I, you know, I think what we're trying to find are ways to continue to protect renters, to stand up the programs that we're looking at in this item, that, to get the reports back on the particulars that people are asking for. It sounds like there's another motion coming forward, either today or at some point in the future, to take a look at how we would implement funding for landlords.
And hopefully, that's enough time for our cities. Again, if all of you are from a city other than unincorporated county, you need to be showing up at their city council meetings and urging them to put in tenant protections for you if you live in their city. And so maybe two months will be enough time for you to begin lobbying the cities where you live.
Madam Chair, if I could just chime in, I, I think that would, for me, it's acceptable if we could go to March, and I think that the public needs to also be aware, and I know the advocates are aware of this, that there is funding that will be made available through the state. People have applied for it, but like anything else, like DMV and EDD, sometimes the wheels turn slow in Sacramento, but this is an urgent, there's an urgency here. So we also have to let our folks in Sacramento know that this is important. We have over 144, 140,000. We have over 144, 140,000 applications in the state. 40,000 to 50,000, we know, are from people in LA County. So if we could get them to get that funding out to them, they're going to pay. That's what this is intended for, and I, that, to me, is the right thing to do. And at least going to March is, I think, a good compromise. Thank you, Madam Chair.
But again, when the state ends their COVID emergency, am I correct that it's February 28th? We face, and we know this, we face a bit of risk. But I'm willing to do that if, as a compromise.
Madam Chair, do you need me to read that date into the record? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, Holly doesn't have, right? She doesn't have an amendment. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. You were amending it.
No, I'm not sure where that came from. I am not. I am on the other, other motion because it didn't stop, you know, everybody else certainly if they had. So I just wanted to say, I had, there are other elements of the current motion before us that gives me cause for concern. Supervisor Solis mentioned earlier, just now, the state program with their backlog. I think we should be clear about that program. That program took applications up to April of 2022. So that's how far back that reimbursement goes. So we still have landlords who have not received any relief because the state stopped their program from April 2022 to today, almost a full year. So if we're extending, that adds additional time of unpaid rent. I hope the state does get with the program and pay it, but let's be clear, that's back rent of over a year ago. And so my perspective has been that, you know, I was, carried the motion a month ago to get us to January 31st. I don't believe any cities have made any move in the last month, not one. And if we all continue to say our concern is people being forced into homelessness, let's be clear, the one element that tenants and landlords agree to, it's because of a lack of resources. The current motion before us, I think, has $5 million. If an average back rent is $20,000, based on the way it's outlined in the current motion, that would be about 100 people. Out of a county of 10 million, I think we must do more. If we have the shared concern about people being thrust into homelessness, the issue is providing support to cover their rent. You know, to carry a $20,000 judgment means, for, you know, poor people, quite frankly, working-class people, if you have a judgment against you, no school loan, no home loan, an auto loan with interest rate that you can't imagine, the way in which you would be restricted for a living, even to rent another apartment, if a financial check goes and there's a 25-figure judgment against you, that's a problem. So my goal has always been and continues to be rent relief that helps the landlords, that helps the tenant not carry a huge financial burden. Five million's not enough? I will stand by a motion that expands that to the utmost.
Yes.
We know that we've got an opportunity through ARPA up to 40 million. You know, we're clear, we've heard from county departments, that there is no true idea about the total gap in back rent. But going as far as we possibly can to provide true protection to tenants as well as mom-and-pop landlords is where I continue to stand.
And I do know that Supervisor Barker has a motion. You were going to read it in another time, but I feel like...
We can do it under A1. And so can we, like we did with the mental health, we'll combine this item with A1. Is that okay? So I'll go ahead and read it.
Good, because I think we want to hear it.
So on December 20th, this is a motion by myself and Supervisor Mitchell. On December 20th, 2022, Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors adopted an amendment to a motion directing the CEO and the Director of Consumer and Business Affairs to report back in 30 days on the development of a small, quote, "mom-and-pop landlord assistance program" to assist small property owners with non-mortgage-related costs and expenses and identify up to $5 million of funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and/or American Recovery Act, Program Act, funds to implement this program. The Los Angeles County CEO, in collaboration with the DCBA, has explored various funding opportunities for the launch of Mom-Pop Non-Mortgage Landlord Assistance Program, including the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Measure H, ARPA funds, and various state and federal funding sources. DCBA recommended establishing a program that would make direct investments into the hardest-hit rental communities by providing direct assistance to qualifying landlords with expenses directly attributed to the non-payment of rent for their current tenants. Therefore, the recommendation includes up to $30,000 to be paid directly to landlords to help cover any qualifying unpaid expense related to the preservation, maintenance, or upkeep of the property. This allocation would amount to a cap of just under 12 months of the average fiscal year 2023 fair market rent, as reported by HUD for Los Angeles County. A full allocation of $5 million in ARPA funds would only allow DCBA to disburse at minimum 166 grants to qualifying applicants. This, however, is simply not enough to meet the needs of our LA County property owners and tenants. Hundreds of individuals are in need of assistance and contact our board offices regularly seeking aid. By expanding the allocation to $45 million, we can explore dispersing at minimum 1,328 grants in the amount of $30,000 per unit. The CEO should report back on additional funding resources such as prioritizing the one-time ARPA funds intended for COVID-19 recovery, as well as Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Measure H, and various state and federal funding sources, as long as the recommendation does not impact ongoing and permanent county programs. The CEO can utilize the fiscal year 2022, 23 mid-year budget adjustment or the 2023, 24 budget process to transfer at least $45 million to DCBA, whichever is appropriate, based on the program launch timeline. We therefore move that the Board of Supervisors direct the CEO to identify and allocate at least $45 million to establish a new relief program for mom-and-pop property owners and report back in writing to the board in 30 days. This should include funding sources such as prioritizing ARPA funds, then looking at the Affordable, then looking at the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Measure H, and various state and federal funding sources. And the program should provide up to $30,000 per unit. I'm differentiating, I keep saying "per unit" because the current recommendation is a total. Per unit, directly to landlords that agree that the accepted funds, oh, I'll let you, where is that? Okay. Accepted funds, to landlords agree that accepted funds means the tenants cannot be evicted for non-payment of rent. And then Supervisor Mitchell, what did I miss?
Um, I...
Oh, 14 days instead of 30 days.
We've been moving fast and furious today, and I think, given the critical nature of this, that we ask that the report back come in 14 days, not 30 days. And that's what we're just distributing to people.
Yeah, so...
14 days.
14 days. But I wanted to, the $30,000 per unit, and then I, we incorporated the language, "cannot be evicted for non-payment of rent."
Madam Chair, just one question. On the, on the first page, at the bottom, the last paragraph, it says, "The CEO should report back on additional funding sources such as prioritizing one-time ARPA funds intended for COVID recovery, as well as Affordable Housing Trust, Measure H, various state, federal funding sources, as long as the recommendation does not impact ongoing and current and permanent county programs." I would, I would recommend that that language be, be also attached to where it says, "This should include funding sources such as blah, blah, blah." So you continue with what you already said on the first page.
Because typically, when you do a preamble, if it's not in the directive, but I think that's why we put it in the preamble, is to outline what our priority was. I mean, we've said it, but if you want to put it in the, I therefore move, but I guess then, then we need to get a clarification on how we all interpret what that means. And that's why I leave it to discretion of the CEO.
So it's your, it's your feeling, maker of the motion, that when you say, "direct the CEO to identify and allocate at least $45 million..."
Well, can we put it in the preamble in terms of pointing it out? I mean, I don't know. I'll leave...
Supervisor Solis, I'm not clear what you were asking.
I'm just saying, lift the sentence where you have at the end, on the, on the first page where it says...
As long as the recommendation does not impact ongoing and permanent.
She's saying, take that and put it in the "I therefore move" because in the preamble, it's just a sentence, but in the "I therefore move," it's an action.
So it's just the additional line that says, "state and federal funding sources, as long as the recommendation does not impact ongoing and permanent county programs."
I mean, I feel like if it's in the motion...
Yeah, but I'm just...
You want to...
Yeah, I would...
You want to highlight it.
I would feel comfortable with that.
That's, I, yeah. I mean, if we say it in the preamble, then we mean it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay.
That's okay. Thank you.
With that, let me just be clear because I think we've had some discussion. So, actually, I would prefer that it not, let's just get the report back based on the way it's worded this way. That would be my preference, Supervisor Solis and Supervisor Barker.
Okay. And for me, I mean, I, I don't know, if it's in the preamble, it's our intent. So I would, that's why I said, leave it to discretion of the CEO.
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine.
It's all coming back to us.
Yeah, it's all coming back to us.
It's going to come back to us to have to take the action anyway.
If we feel that it doesn't do what we need it to do, then we'll bring it back on that. Okay.
And then one more question about the 60-day till March 31st. There were some other things in your motion that went extended out much farther. Is the 60 days applying to everything in the motion? Because that would be my intention.
So I, so I'm clear. I'm looking at in Section 1B, changing June 30th, 2023 to March 31st, 2023.
Okay.
And, and including the section that I just read in accrued prior to, and we would change the date to March 31st, 2023. Are those the changes you're asking for?
I think everything that had a date on it, I would want to be March 31st.
So the, the first part, 1A...
I'm not looking, I need a copy.
I just want to make sure we changed the right things.
Right.
So 1A, prohibit landlords...
Yes.
The language we have currently says, "through January 31st, 2024." You're saying you no longer agree with that?
Right, this says 2025.
It might be.
Yeah, can we, let's get a clean, for everybody to get a clean copy. Yeah, I agree.
Because that first section, 1A, is the other place where there are dates, and that relates to the protections for unauthorized occupants and/or pets. So I want to make sure if you meant for that date to apply to that.
Yeah, this one says...
I thought we were in agreement on that section, but if we need to change that, I just want to make sure we do that too.
This one says through 2025.
For the pets.
Yeah, that was for the pets.
Okay.
Right? You were okay.
Okay.
I thought the pets part, the pets and occupants part, we were, we were agreed upon. It was the extension that we wanted to change the date to March 31st. Is that correct?
Should we take a, a quick break so we can at least look at this and see?
If that helps get everybody on the same page and clear about what we're voting on, I think it will be necessary.
Let me just see.
And she's, and she's good with the pets, right?
I just want to ask our county council again, if our local emergency goes away, these provisions will go away.
That is correct.
The pets, and...
That is correct. If we terminate our local emergency, yes.
So it's my feeling that if we extend all these provisions for 60 days, then we work on making them permanent outside of our COVID emergency because that is going to go away. And we, those could be in our, our permanent tenant protection. So I think if...
Are you focused on then the...
I'm focused on getting through the next 60 days.
But as it relates to COVID or as it relates to homelessness? Because that's really what the difference is.
As it relates, because these are all under COVID emergency, and that's going to go away. So let's get through 60 days and then work on tenant protections that we can make permanent in unincorporated county. That's my goal. Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. Just as it relates to your reference to permanent protections, on September 27th, in the strengthening the county's permanent protections for unincorporated LA in response to the lessons learned during COVID crisis motion, there were instructions for a report back to consider strengthening the permanent tenant protections. So I'm wondering if the CEO or someone from Department of Consumer Business Affairs can tell us the status of that report? Because we are, keep talking about wanting to get to permanent protections.
Yes.
We've been talking about that for months.
Thank you.
So if someone could tell us the status of the report based on our...
Here we go. Here's the someone.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board. Rafael Carroja, Director of the Department of Consumer and Business Affairs. Great question. That motion had six primary directives. Three of them had actually due process and policy recommendations. Of those three, we've implemented one, which is actually in the same protections that the City of LA used to implement their new extensions as of last week. Within 30 days, you should have a report back on the additional protections that were recommended in that motion.
Thank you. And I think Supervisor Mitchell is bringing, is, is, hasn't, didn't say it exactly, but the fact of the matter is, this is urgent for us now because we have been asking for a report back on putting in protections for tenants permanent. And now, if, if we are going to have a final off-ramp of 60 days, we need to know from you what the permanent protections that you recommend that we put into place. Because the COVID emergency, no matter what we say about it's still with us and there's still impacts, yes, that's true, but the legal definition of being under a COVID emergency is going to go away with it, all of these protections. So I would like to make sure we move forward quickly on making them permanent. So no wiggle room on that 30 days is what I'm saying.
We're on it with the help of our good friends at county council.
Okay. All right. So now I'm clear that this motion will do everything for 60 days.
May I seek clarification on the other part of the motion that was recently introduced? My understanding is that the $45 million that is directed in this language will only go to small landlords, and that will leave some tenants out. And so I want to make sure that, while I understand that our intention is to protect small landlords in this motion, is it your intention to leave... is it your intention to leave those tenants out or are we protecting them as well?
Oh, you're the maker of that motion.
I guess, well, that's, that is a good question, actually. And I think that for me, I'm focusing on the mom and pops, but clearly am open to casting that net wider. I mean, $45 million is a lot of money, but given how far we're in the rear is, and I'm glad that Supervisor Mitchell pointed out what the state's funding is going to go toward. Because there's still about a year, it's about a year and probably a year and a half gap in terms of those that have not paid their rent. But the focus was on mom and pop strictly.
And that would, your directive isn't in addition to what, what we're proposing?
In addition to what you're proposing.
Okay.
Correct? The, it was 40 plus the five, they've got the 5 million, we've got the 45.
So Madam Chair, so the bulk of the money that we're going to be supporting will go to, to mortgage relief for, for landlords. And so that's 40 million, 45 million for them and 5 million for, for tenants? I think that's what, is that what we're trying to clarify here?
No, I, I don't know what you're trying to clarify.
Supervisor Mitchell, you have your.
I think what has become confusing is we have a motion sort of on the floor and questions were asked about another upcoming motion. And so we've kind of gone back and forth. And so I think, I don't know how you manage that, Madam Chair. Because it is not Supervisor Barker and, or my intention to amend the motion on the floor. It is a separate motion.
Correct. And.
Falls under A1.
It falls under A1. She read it in while we were discussing this because it seemed appropriate for me particularly to hear that this, we do have a motion that is requesting more money for our landlords.
And actually, the directives that we have are different.
But your motion will not be voted on today.
No, I understand, but, but just to Supervisor Horvath, the motion that you all have is, is very prescriptive in terms of how that 5 million could be spent. And, and, and that's why I made a point in the motion that, that we, that I read for us, that it's 30,000 per unit. The motion that you all are bringing in is 30,000 in total. And it has to go to maintenance.
The first, the first directive says relief program for mom and pop property owners.
But is it for rent relief or is it?
He's asking about your motion.
Yeah.
Which?
Your motion.
I'm asking about yours and you're asking about mine. Is that what, is that what's happening here?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a clarification because we're talking about, I'm asking you about your 5 million. Because I'm talking about 45 million. I mean, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand in my own mind.
Yeah.
Yes, this, our motion allocates $5 million for COVID-19 emergency funding, $2 million to stay housed LA for rental relief, $3 million to the new non-mortgage small landlord, AKA mom and pop assistance program. And then additionally calls for the report back as outlined in items three and four.
Okay, so the motion that we have enhances, it, it takes it a step further and does not limit it to maintenance. It actually, and it's per unit versus 30,000 in total.
That's what I was asking. So your motion is in addition to this.
Supervisor.
It's, it's separate. It's separate. Yes.
Yes, and we're not voting on.
No, I know, but I, but I'm trying to respond, be responsive to Supervisor Horvath.
Our county council will probably say, we probably shouldn't even be talking about it.
No, we, we combined motions, we combined items.
Yes, Supervisor Mitchell.
I just wanted to clarify that the Barker-Mitchell motion is rent relief. It is not a mortgage program. It is rent relief on, on the, on the second motion.
Yes. Well, we, we haven't taken public comment on this yet. We've been waiting for our public comment. So Madam Executive Officer, please call those people who have signed up to speak on this item. And the item is 41A.
Will Deonis Sia Cipress, Maria Sales, Myrna Aguilar, Irma Fabian, Ogulde Toscano, Rosa Guerra, Alfonso Sanchez, Maria Lercht, Annabelle Mazariegos, Aziel Robleiro, Cassandra Aranda, Crystal Beard, Danielle Jimenez, and Dennis Low, please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderator, will we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Simon Gibbons. Please go ahead.
Supervisors, we own and manage just more rental business in Pasadena. We've been badly affected over the last three years, but we continue to pay our taxes, our mortgage, and our increasing maintenance and utility bills. But our tenants don't have to follow the same rules. Meanwhile, unemployment is at its lowest level since 1969. Prices actually fell in December, but other businesses are operating normally. This is no longer a general crisis. Any extension of the moratorium is just solving a problem that no longer exists. Please, Supervisors, our livelihood is at risk and our tenants' homes will also be at risk if we can't pay our mortgage. It's time to let us get back to business, just like other business sectors. Thank you for your time.
And our next participant is Bill Mayer. You may begin.
Thank you. I'm experiencing painful unintended consequences from these extended protections. I own a single residential townhouse unit in Woodland Hills inherited from my mother when she passed away. I make all mortgage payments, taxes, maintenance, and homeowners association fees. I've only been able to keep the property for my own retirement by renting the unit. Immediately following the declaration of the COVID emergency, my renter completely ceased paying any rent and I'm not legally allowed to verify actual need as it may be. I myself am a renter. I donate to homeless causes and volunteer on our 988 suicide prevention hotline and I hope to keep that funding coming. Thank you. My understanding is my renter has one year from the moratorium's, moratorium's end to pay back rent, but is safe and protected from eviction even if they cannot. When the moratorium ends, the law merely requires them to pay monthly rent going forward. Anything else is a civil matter, not cause for eviction. There's no good reason to continually, to, to extend these protections and it would be helpful if, if the city and county could pay our mortgage in the meanwhile, so we don't lose the house. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jonathan Hollab. You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Honorable Supervisors. My name is Jonathan Hollab, Rent Stabilization Manager in the Human Services and Rent Stabilization Department at the City of West Hollywood, expressing the city's support for the motion and extension of the tenant protection resolution. For nearly 40 years, the City of West Hollywood has been committed to tenant protection and the fundamental human right to housing security. Today's extension, if adopted, will ensure the furtherance of these important goals and give people breathing room during this transitional period. Thank you to Supervisors Horvath and Solis for this item and for the board's consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Victor Reyes. You may begin.
Hi, hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Victor Reyes and I'm calling on behalf of VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. We urge the board to oppose supplemental agenda item 41A and responsibly phase out the county's eviction moratorium and rent freeze. It is time housing providers throughout the county can resume normal operations to ensure thriving communities and investments in housing. In 2022, the county took drastic and necessary actions to slow the spread of COVID-19 virus. Fortunately, we are in a very different environment now. The improved public health environment, the availability of vaccines and lack of shelter in place orders, and the much improved economy are positive developments which warrant a full lifting and phase out of the eviction moratorium and rent freeze. Landlords do not cause a homelessness problem and they are not the solution to this problem. The emergency eviction moratorium that was put in place in 2022 must be lifted in its entirety and not extended any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Henry Kares. You may begin.
Hey, I just wanted to say, those that work in the service economy in Los Angeles can't afford rent anymore. The price of it doesn't correlate with the services landlord render or awareness of the populations that landlords are supposedly aiming to serve. Landlords want to gentrify Los Angeles by attracting white collar workers from globalized economy and sending long-term blue collar residents into a state of displacement, death, and homelessness. If you allow landowners to evict their tenants who cannot afford rent, you'll be committing a genocide. I hope that those that are displaced haunt your dreams and ultimately haunt you. If you did a land acknowledgement addressing indigenous people, think about who have created the social fabric of Los Angeles you are proud of in the 20th century. Consider them indigenous as well and protect them. I think there's a weird false equivalence to people not being able to retire, to people not being able to live anywhere. And I think that those that own multiple homes, I don't feel as much empathy for them as someone who could be put out on the street. And I think you should apply the same. I think showing loyalty to landlords at this time is, would be a flaw of character on the part of the council. And if you can take care of them while keeping people housed, that's great.
Thank you, thank you.
But the material reality is to keep people housed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jody Margolis. You may begin.
Hi, I'm Jody. I'm calling from the Vista Street Tenants Association in West Hollywood. My neighbors and I are being evicted by the Ellis Act. So we are 100% support this motion authored by our former mayor, Supervisor Horvath, and Supervisor Solis. Of course, we would prefer the June 30th date, but we will take what we can get from you guys. We are still dealing with fallout from COVID and need more time. Please help us stay in our homes longer. We need more affordable housing solutions immediately. Enough with the luxury buildings already. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Stacy Shakib. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Stacy Shakib. I am calling from a family business. We are a mom and pop owner in Los Angeles. And we actually do have a development project that's due for, to break ground. And we cannot do that because we cannot evict our tenants due to this eviction moratorium. This project has been put on hold for the past three years and has been costing us lots and lots of money in order for us to provide more housing for the people in Los Angeles. We cannot move forward with this project because of this eviction moratorium. We please urge you to not extend this moratorium.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Megan Marino. You may begin.
Hello, Supervisors. I am a small housing provider in the County of LA. I feel lied to. You guys many times now have said, you're providing an off-ramp. You're going to end the moratorium and there's always another extension. There's always another excuse. It's always kicking the can down the road. And then we're left to fight over a few dollars of relief? It seems that we didn't even get rent relief because our tenants wouldn't cooperate with us. So that rent is all the way back in 2020. Like, we're never going to be paid for that. And now we've got to fight over a few dollars and jump through hoops and see if we qualify? It's just, it's too little, too late. And this needs to end. You guys keep extending and extending excuses. There's just, people are losing faith. Like, a multi-year ever extending moratorium that forces the county's housing providers to foot this enormous bill is not legitimate or a workable solution to larger non-COVID-related housing issues. You are fooling yourself if you believe that landlords, a modic means can last three and a half years without receiving rent while still covering bills and maintaining properties.
Thank you. Thank you.
To me, it is shocking that.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Ashley Oliver. You may begin.
Thank you so much. As a new landlord, this has been quite difficult for me to kind of wrap my mind around. And very similar to the last individual who spoke, being told consistently that it's extended, it's extended, and doing the right thing, continuing with bills, continuing to make sure that things are paid. It's just not fair to us. You know, I don't think that it's the landlord's responsibility to clean this up, especially if we're doing the right thing and we have been doing the right thing this entire time. This discourages me to want to even rent again, given the fact that this is something that I, I feel like I have no control over. Even going to find relief, it says the application is closed. So it's a case where, what are we supposed to do now when we've been doing the right thing? And where is our mortgage relief? We're not getting any relief in that sense. So it's not fair to us to continue to try to fix the problem that we didn't have.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Janelle Martinez. You may begin.
Know this, my scenario is not the minority, but in fact, the majority, and I speak on behalf of all small landlords. My partner and I have two tenants who have physically not paid us rent for over a year and a half. They are on methamphetamine and heroin. They took apart the water heater for drugs, putting the children and other tenants at risk. They painted the inside of our 100-year-old building red, pink, and purple. Corroding smells lurk from the bathroom and the kitchen and resonated pills dust up the floors. They run the water extremely high, leaving us with a $2,300 water bill just this past month. You force my partner and I to drain our savings to pay the mortgage, the taxes, the insurance, the water, the trash, the city's safety inspection, yet you don't allow us to collect any rent. You don't even allow us to evict them. You know that six months and now this new proposed two months does not fix this problem. You are enabling the evolution of human responsibility, worsening the problem and causing extreme hardship to us landlords. We deserve some grace now. We have done more than our part. Please allow us to have evictions for non-payment February 1st, like you said you would. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Cheryl Taylor. You may begin.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Cheryl Taylor and I am a mom and pop landlord. I have one unit with three tenants and one of my tenants is not paying the rent, hasn't paid the rent since March of 2020. We are the only industry that is still operating under this emergency measure. All the other industries, including this board, is no longer operating under, under this emergency measure. In light, we thought we had light at the end of the tunnel with the 1/31 date. And once again, we are being forced to take care of tenants who are, who are able to pay rent, but because they don't have to, they don't pay rent. It's also amazing to me how you put forth a motion, but you haven't even spoken to the landlords about how they can help you with the motion. That is amazing to me. Also, you, you guys are talking to each other and I've been on, on this line for six and a half hours.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Sandra Christensen. You may begin.
Hi, thank you. I'm Sandra Christensen and I'm a, a small landlord. And one week, we've been waiting and waiting patiently doing everything we can to follow the rules. And then one week, you just kick it, you kick the, kick the can down, six more months extension? What was happening all this other time? We live with a tenant who hasn't paid us rent for almost two years. He uses our water, our heat, our gas, our electricity. And, and, and he's saved this money supposedly. I mean, we've, we've, this climate has created this fantasy world where people can live without paying rent or having to look for a job. You know, when the unemployment is very small, this, the person lives with us and lives a beautiful life. And we have to fix things, pay things, and, you know, and be careful we don't harass him. And we are civil, but I have been counting the months.
Thank you.
And then the weeks.
Thank you.
And then the minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate your, your calling in. Our next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Van Buie. You may begin.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is, hello, my name is Van Buie. I'm with Long Beach Residents Empowered. I really want to urge you all to vote yes on item 41A and extend the emergency tenant protection. Extending these protections would give more than a million tenants living in them to a chance to implement, or give a chance to, give a chance for cities to implement local protections of their own. I'm really concerned when the emergency protection is lifted in a week that a lot of residents in Long Beach will end up on the streets and be forced to leave their homes. With the City of Long Beach already declaring a state of emergency on homelessness, it's crucial that the Board of Supervisors move with urgency as well to keep families and our community members in their homes and off the streets. If the tenant's protections were to expire at the end of the month, the homelessness crisis would only continue. would only continue to get worse. I appreciate the steps that y'all have taken to implement permanent protections for tenants in unincorporated LA. Now I'm asking you to support the same opportunity for tenants in incorporated cities. There was a need for tent protections prior to the pandemic, and there is an even greater need now. Please vote yes on Item 41A. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Oh, we're going in person.
Our next participant.
Hello.
Me escucha? Muy buenas tardes, señores. Primero, mi nombre es Mirna Aguilar. Vengo del Distrito Número Uno. Represento a la comunidad de Sage.
Good afternoon. My name is Mirna Aguilar. I come from District One. I belong to District One. I'm here to, I represent the Sage.
Primero quiero pedirles que me escuchen con el corazón.
First, I would like to ask if you can listen to me from the heart.
Esta es la primera vez que ustedes miran a nuestra comunidad pidiendo por extensiones. ¿Verdad que nunca lo habíamos hecho?
This is the first time that you have requested for an extension. Do you remember that we have never done this before?
Esto tiene nombre y apellido y se llama COVID-19.
This has a name and a last name, and it's called COVID-19.
La diferencia entre nosotros y los dueños de renta?
The difference between us and landlords?
Es que esos cuartos a los que ellos medio arreglan, en los que nosotros vivimos, y los rentan al doble del precio, para ellos son cuartos, para nosotros son nuestros hogares donde hemos criado nuestros hijos.
The difference between those rooms that the landlords fixed up for us to rent, for them, is just a room. For us, it's our home, where we raise our children.
Quiero decirles que nosotros no estamos pidiendo limosna.
I'm here to tell you that we are not beggars.
Y tampoco que nos perdonen la renta.
And we're not asking for them to forgive the rent.
Porque nunca nos han perdonado ni un solo centavo.
Because they have never forgiven us a penny.
Solo pedimos el tiempo necesario para poder pagar porque somos trabajadores, tenemos dignidad, y estamos aquí para seguir luchando por nuestra comunidad. Muchísimas gracias.
We are here to ask for your assistance. We need more time. We just need the time for us to move on.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Crystal Beard, and I'm here on behalf of landlords being forced to bear the burden. No one can deny that the pandemic was devastating. Thankfully, businesses reopened, and now hiring signs were in every window, and still no rents paid. We even watched you guys embrace each other today. I saw schools and daycares reopen and still no rents. I registered new Porsches to our garage onto accounts that I haven't seen payment on in nearly three years. I see more than just a few residents with a balance of over $100,000 leave to purchase houses, post on social media about lavish vacations, and able to do so by using the magic word COVID. I was told by my resident that withholding rent was an interest-free loan and heard others mock the city for making it so easy to secure a check. Just say COVID, and your landlord's hands are tied, no proof required, no questions asked, backed by a city who pretends to be blind to the flaws in the policy. Billions of dollars have been made available to households and individuals affected, but now it is over. We are one of the very last jurisdictions in the nation to still have these pandemic protections in place, and it is not okay that it continues. We are not banks. We are not private welfare. What's devastating now is this mess that has been created and that there is actual consideration to prolong it even further. It is enough. It must stop. We need to put it in date two.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Irma Fabián, y soy inquilina.
My name is Irma Fabián, and I'm a, what did I call it, inquilina?
Inquilina.
Okay. I rent a house.
Vengo a pedir apoyo total para mantener las protecciones.
I'm here to ask for your support.
Las protecciones por causa justa.
I'm here for you to ask for protection for injustice.
Y estemos seguros en nuestro hogar.
We would like to be safe in our homes.
Me gustaría que nuestros jóvenes y niños se enfocan en sus estudios sin temor a un futuro de desalojo.
I would like for our children to focus on their studies instead of being afraid of being evicted.
Ya que existen situaciones fuera de nuestras circunstancias que nos afectan y no logramos cubrir la renta.
Since there's many situations that are affecting us, and we are not able to afford our rent, it's out of our control.
Situaciones que los dueños no comprenden y no saben lo que afecta a toda la comunidad.
Situations that the landlords do not understand, and it is affecting the whole community.
Quiero pedirles a todos ustedes, Supervisors, que voten sí a este artículo 41A.
I am here to ask all the Supervisors to vote yes on 41.
Con este voto nos ayudan a mantenernos seguros sin vivir en la calle.
With this vote, it'll help us to live safe without going and live on the streets.
Y nuestro derecho a un hogar.
And the right to a home.
Apreciamos que hayan tomado pasos para implementar estas protecciones.
We appreciate the steps that you have taken for these situations.
Ya que nos ayudaría a impedir desalojos y tener acceso a viviendas. Gracias.
That would really help us to have a home. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Dennis Lowe. I manage a building in Glendale. This is on behalf of my family. It's a family business. We've provided housing in the community for decades. That's our business, not evictions. We worked with many of our tenants. Much of them had lived at the building for over a decade. We worked with them through the crisis, helped them apply for assistance, and got them the help they needed. But the biggest issue is the people that were dealing with us in bad faith. They've taken advantage of the system, and the county has tied our hands with getting rid of these people. The self-certification violates our due process. We can't ask for any proof or evidence that there's ongoing COVID hardship or that they have the income requirement to be eligible for assistance. And furthermore, the timing of payments is just as important as the quantity. Some payments were delayed by months, others never came. What I would suggest is at a minimum, oppose this extension. If not that, we need timely and full reimbursement for the services the county is asking us to provide. And if that's not available, at least let us take it off our property taxes and then require proof of income and COVID hardship. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Maria Letigut. Gisborne, my English. I come to support 41A because I'm on board to lose my house. I've been living there for 20 years, and the landlord told me that she was going to sell. I live, we live, my husband and I, on $900 a month because since COVID, he hasn't been able to work. And it's so hard. I don't pay much rent right now, but if they sell and they throw me out of my house, what am I going to do with $900 with that rent over $1,000? You know? And we need this protection in order for us to survive. Because I know some people that are losing their house where they live, you know, and it's so hard for them.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
It's so hard for me to hear from them.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Supervisors. My name is Cassandra Aranda. I'm actually a citizen of District Two. I'm Supervisor Mitchell. I'm one of your constituents. I'm going to have to be honest with you. It was very triggering to sit here and listen to you guys speak on Item 41 as if this were a collaborative approach because it shows a clear bias for landlords. It's a little bit hard to hear you guys compare tenants and mom-and-pop landlords when this is one of the highest cost-of-living cities in the nation, when these landlords have to have a minimum of a six-figure income to have that kind of access to loan financing. These landlords are going to lose passive income, and these tenants are going to lose everything, their homes. We have people who are homeless in LA County. The homeless population's, like, risk of homicide goes up 21 times more than people who are housed here. You are literally going to be sponsoring homicide by not pushing forth Item 41A. Please, I'm begging you. This is life and death. Item 41A, we're all in favor of it. You will save lives.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, and good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Daniel Jimenez, and I'm the Director of Community Organization within the City Struggle, and I'm a member of the Keep LA House Coalition. I've served families in the East Side for the past five years and through the COVID-19 pandemic. I am here to support Item 41A to expand emergency tenant protection until stronger tenant protections are in place and until local cities have the opportunity to pass their own tenant protections. Without protections, community members are at great risk of displacement and being left on the streets. During the pandemic, the city and the county of LA enacted emergency protections that kept thousands of people from getting evicted. In February 2022, the homeless count estimated 69,144 people were experiencing homelessness in LA County at the time, and there was only a rise of 4.1%. What does this mean? This means that tenant protections work. We need to ensure that tenants are protected. We need to ensure that people are housed. And most importantly, I want to point out something before my time ends, is that a lot of the landlords that are calling in today, they're saying they're mom-and-pop. We need to demystify, and we need to really debunk the meat of mom-and-pop landlords. The reason why we're hearing this crisis is because--
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
--a big corporation landlords because they have put us here--
Thank you very much. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Annabella Masariegos, and I live in District One in the city of Boulder Heights. I belong to the Los Angeles Tenant Union and different organizations that were supporting tenants' rights. The lack of empathy, there are many reasons why we haven't fallen behind. And it's ridiculous what is happening because we are the minority. We're Latinos and Afro-Americans and a few other races, and you guys don't pay attention to us. But if it comes to other races, you cater to them. And we do pay taxes, too. There are different reasons why people are behind of the rents. We need help. You're talking about mom-and-pop, but what about the gentrifiers? They are not in business in real estate because, oh, they are so nice, they want to give us a home to stay because we can afford to pay their rents. No, they're in business because they're greedy. Is that exploiting the mother nature? That's what it is. They don't care for us. They care for the money only. And what about the people who live with gentrifiers? Are you going to help us? The tenants who are behind?
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your time has expired. We'll now go to our telephonic callers. Moderator.
Our next participant is David Hunter. You may begin.
Oh, hello. I wanted to thank everybody for putting this on the agenda and for considering the needs of tenants, continuing the needs of tenants at this time. I also wanted to say I agree with the fund that you're establishing for small landlords and covering their expenses. I did just want to point out that not only the landlords who have called in have expressed any gratitude for that $45 million worth of money that you're giving them if they need it. And I sort of, to me, that suggests that a lot of these people don't qualify for assistance and maybe don't really need your help, but simply want to get their leverage back. But I, well, I just, I want to say thanks. I'm definitely going to be evicted under the Ellis Act as soon as your moratorium is lifted. So I'm glad that it might be, I would ask you to consider extending. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jerome Eisenberg. You may begin.
Thank you, Supervisors. I'm a small landlord in San Fernando Valley, and I do understand that housing has evolved to be a right, but so is our right to be private property owners. We've borne the burden of this eviction moratorium for almost three years. How are we supposed to trust you when many times, over and over again, you said 1/31 was the dead date? Everything was ending 1/31, and now a week before, surreptitiously, you decide to try to extend it for another six months? The actions of the Board are poisoning the relationship between tenants and landlords. Evictions take six months or a year to handle. No one will be on the street tomorrow. If people, we don't want to evict people. We want to work with them, but it makes it impossible. Rents are high because of eviction moratorium. There is no velocity of people moving because they don't have to. Housing, if you want housing to be a right, you need to pay for those that write.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Landowners should not have to bear the burden.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Sandra Cohen. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Sandra Cohen, and I'm calling to request that the Board oppose Item 41A. As a small sole proprietor apartment owner in Los Angeles County, I am keenly aware of the unfairness of the county's eviction moratorium policy over these past few years. Housing providers provide a valuable service to renters within the county and do so while trying to make mortgage payments, property taxes, insurance, utilities, and upkeep of their buildings. Many, myself included, also rely on the rent to supplement Social Security and retirement. It is so unfair to expect one segment of the population to bear responsibility for the whole county. The benefit programs help, but many do not qualify. Today, COVID no longer deserves the draconian measures which were the--
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Marguerite Adams. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Marguerite Adams here. I'm a retired widow, widow thanks to COVID. My only source of income is the rent that I collect from my small rentals. During COVID restrictions, I've exhausted all my savings to provide free housing and services to gainfully-employed, non-rant-paying tenants who simply stopped paying as they had no reason to. There was no repercussions. Those that could apply for relief under the federal did not. Why should they? They couldn't be evicted anyway. I'm on the verge of losing my only source of income for which I've worked, saved, and sacrificed for 40 years. We've endured increased costs for all products and services, no rental income, and a 57% increase in the systematic code enforcement fees that the city charges starting January 2021 with a 181% late fee. That was a threat. No other business has, and no other city has incurred such punishing and hardship on the only small business concern. Thirty-five percent no rent.
Thank you. Do we have other speakers on the phone?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair.
Okay. I just want to let everybody know that we do have a lot of speakers that are still signed up to speak, but just in the essence of time, it would be probably more helpful if maybe you just, even if you're here with several groups, like if there is a lot of landlords or a lot of tenants, like maybe identify one person that might speak for you. That would be helpful. Or instead of repeating everything that maybe some other speakers have said, maybe you just really touch on maybe one thing, because I think we're, maybe could lose some supervisors to the time. So I'm just trying to be respectful of everybody who wants to address the Board. Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Cheryl Tarek L. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm a member of the Apartment Association, California Southern Cities, and I implore you to oppose Item 41A and end the moratorium as communicated and planned for. For months, county communications and official Board action have been told, have told residents that emergency housing measures would end at the beginning of 2023. Extending the moratorium is wrong and bad governance. These moratoriums were specifically intended as temporary measures in response to the onset of the pandemic. Three years later, the circumstances are completely different, but these ordinances still are in place. End the moratorium, lift it now, as originally directed by the Board. I help house in Los Angeles County, and desperately need your help. And just on a last note, I know several landlords that could rent to people, but because of these moratoriums, they have held off. So as long as these moratoriums are in place, I think that's going to hinder--
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
--helping people find housing.
Thank you so much. Okay, next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next participant is Terrence Rutledge. You may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi. Landlords say it's not fair to them, but what's really not fair is that society prioritizes landlords earning profits over people's human right to housing. Landlords are not housing providers. They're the reason we have so many homeless in LA. We know statistically, the majority of homeless in LA are people from LA who were evicted by landlords. Why are we allowing landlords to continue evicting human beings onto the streets, suffer mental illness, and premature death? Other countries eliminated homelessness completely by making it illegal for people to be landlords. If other countries could end homelessness by abolishing eviction and charging of rent for the human right to housing, why can't we do the same thing here in LA and America? Everyone needs housing, but society does not need landlords. We must evolve as a society to value each human's right to have a home. Please extend the eviction moratorium. Protect people's right to housing. It is the humane and right thing to do. That is all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Hema Hattie. You may begin.
My name is Hema Hattie. I'm a mom and pop homeowner. I work very hard in my young age and work two, three jobs, and I'm 75. My husband 85. We're an old age couple, and we are really suffering with tenants not paying rent. And we thought it's going to, the moratorium is going to end January 31st, but it's not. I don't know how we can trust Board of Supervisors. We keep on doing the same thing, extending, extending, extending. When is going to stop? Please stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jason Wagner. You may begin.
Board of Supervisors, I think you guys are conflating the issue of the tenant protections and the COVID measures that were put into place specifically for that. And nobody is saying that the landlords here are going to be evicting people as long as they pay rent. What we've had an issue with is we've had people that haven't been paying any rent. For the last two years, I have a tenant that has a new car, a 70-inch screen TV in their house, and hasn't paid any rent. It's not right to have this hardship be imposed on landlords. We're still paying taxes. We're still paying board, I mean, department fees. We're paying everything that we're supposed to. We're paying our mortgages. This has to end, and I can't believe that there was even an opportunity to open this up to an extension within three days of getting this over with. It's just too long.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Gary Raymond. You may begin.
Hello, did you get my name wrong?
Uh.
If it's for me, please vote
Who, what is your name?
Hello?
Yes, what is your name?
Gary Freeman. Gary Freeman.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Please vote no on item 41A. The motion places an onerous burden on the marginalized group of rental property owners who depend on rental income. Extending the moratorium will cause many renters and landlords to go deeper into debt to delay a much, much smaller number of persons from facing homelessness. I am 70 years old, rely entirely on rental income. I'm owed $150,000 in back rent from single-person tenants in luxury two-bedroom townhouses that haven't paid rent in three years, and they were not qualified for further assistance. Even if I accepted $30,000 per renter, the funding proposed would only fund 30 property owners like myself. Hundreds of millions would be needed, and the $45 million is not guaranteed. The motion has no new information and would promote more confusion and uncertainty by precedent of adopting last-minute extensions. Renters will just wait until June 24th before making arrangements for necessary alternative housing. Waves of evictions could be staggered by not extending
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next participant is Bernard Neal. You may begin.
Go ahead.
Bernard Neal, you may begin.
Okay, listen.
Our next participant is Megan Tom. You may begin.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'm urging you council members to please vote in favor of 41A. The issue of housing is literally between, like, people going out on the streets. And the fact that you guys are taking precedence of the opinions of landlords when the term "mom and pop landlord" is a misnomer because the barrier to entry to become a landlord for one property, let alone four, is huge, and most renters in LA will never be able to reach that. So while you guys work to put in more permanent tenant protections in place, please extend the moratorium. Until June 30th would be preferable, but if you guys are going through March 31st, that would be okay too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Zeke Sandoville. Please, you may begin.
Good afternoon. This is Zeke Sandoville on behalf of PATH, people assisting the homeless in support of item 41A. It's simple. Tenant protection is homelessness prevention. This board has moved mountains over the last three years to protect tenants during the pandemic and protected thousands of individuals and families from falling into homelessness. However, as one of the largest nonprofit homeless service providers in the region, PATH has seen a worrying number of cases where unpaid rent has accumulated to the tens of thousands. That is unsustainable for both tenant and property owner. Setting aside American Rescue Plan funds to cover those unique instances and extending the deadline to give everyone more time to access those funds protects tenants from eviction and small landlords from foreclosure. So we encourage swift approval and robust public education strategy, and we'll do all we can to make the most of these resources.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Dave Hurtado. You may begin.
Yes, hi. So in looking at what everyone's been saying here, you know, I see that many of the tenants, many of the research behind homelessness, mental health, I agree that it's true, but why take from the landlords? You know, I'm not sure if you're aware of what the definition of theft is, but it's basically taking something away from someone. And it's basically what I'm seeing here. Like, when my tenants don't pay, they steal from my kids and my family. I've already lost my rentals. I have tenants that I had a fight, yeah, in physical fights. They pulled guns on me. They sold drugs. LAPD looked at me like I was a criminal. It's just not fair. And, you know, if there's people that want to get into rental, it's not that hard. There's an FHA program, 3.5%, you can buy two, three, four units. Talk to any Realtor. You know, that's my time. I say, please vote no.
Thank you. Next, are we in person now? Or is there still somebody on the phone?
Madam Chair, yes, we'll be back in person, but can we call more names before we go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, please.
Well, Erica Owens, Erica Elias, Estuardo Mazaegos, Eva Garcia, Fazah Malik, Fariba Solani, Feranda Jimenez, Fred Sutton, Gloria Castaneda, Greg Bonnet, Gregory Esri, and Hassan Zuniga. Please come forward and staff assist you.
Okay, hi, go ahead.
Okay, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Rosa Chávez.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Rosa Chávez.
Estoy aquí para dar mi apoyo total a la moción 41A.
I am here to give my fully support on 41A.
Es imperante que nuestras familias tengan protecciones.
It's very important that our families have protection.
Estamos hablando de las comunidades menos favorecidas.
We are talking about the most needed communities.
No estamos hablando de artículos de lujo. Estamos hablando de un derecho humano, la vivienda.
We are not talking about luxury. We are talking about something humanity, living space.
Hasta este punto, yo me pregunto.
At this point, I ask myself.
Esta reflexión es para usted, Supervisor Han y Supervisor Mitchell.
This is a reflection for Supervisor Mitchell and Supervisor Han.
Tenemos gente que ya está planeando llevar habitantes a otro planeta.
We have people at this moment planning to take humans to another planet.
A un costo de billones de dólares.
To a billion, which will cost billions of dollars.
Y todavía tenemos gente peleando aquí en este planeta por tener un lugar digno donde crecer su familia.
And we do have people here on Earth fighting to have a space to raise a family.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I just want to mention that interpretation is really bad, and these are very key stories that I would like you all to understand. So I just want to name that. So hi, everyone. I'm Edna Monroe, part of Sage and Keep LA House. We've been here since 8:00 AM, actually, some people since 7:30. It has been almost more than eight hours. I also want to acknowledge that because we lost quite a few tenants whose stories are very important. It's also very upsetting that we are talking about the homeless counts or the unhoused people counts, and we still don't have strong permanent tenant protections. We are still dealing with massive evictions, and we are still dealing with very much landlord greed. I want to also mention that the eviction moratorium is not increasing rent. What is increasing rent is landlord's greed. I want to ensure that we remember that the only solution to really keep LA housed, all of tenants housed, is to decommodify housing.
Thank you.
And not see it as a business, but a human right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Extend protections, yes, on 41A.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Eddie, working for the property management. And you guys keeping, dragging that date from 2019 to now, this is make the tenant take advantage. I see a lot of tenant, they work cash, they pay, they don't pay money, and they want to take advantage of the city. And they buy new cars, they buy everything, and never pay anything. And the landlord paying the mortgage, salary, electric, and they don't pay nothing. They don't even want to pay the electricity or anything. That's why a landlord is suffering for paying all this money, and he might lose the business, and all the employees will be in the street. They're not going to find any place to work. And that's why the city helped him to do this, okay? Every time dragging the date from 19, from 2019 to now, they don't pay any.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Isabel Robledo.
Good afternoon. My name is Isabel Robledo.
Yo vengo a favor de la 41A.
I am here in favor of 41A.
A veces los landlords usan pretextos para desalojarnos.
Many times landlords use excuses to evict us.
A veces no es por falta de pago, sino buscan ellos excusas para tratar de sacarnos.
Many times it's not because we don't pay rent. It's they just looking for excuses to ask for the property.
En especial cuando ya tenemos muchos años viviendo en el mismo apartamento.
Especially we do have many years living there at the same apartment.
Para mí es algo estresante tener un hijo con deshabilidad.
For me, it's very stressful because I do have a child with special needs.
Acabar como homeless.
To end up as a homeless.
Por eso estoy aquí para que extiendan las protecciones.
This is the reason why I'm here, so you can extend the protections.
Gracias.
Thank you very much.
Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Heidi Gonzalez. After my landlord left me and my one-year-old daughter without water, gas, and electricity for weeks, my mental health was affected. I was so scared to end up on the streets. That's why I got here at 7:00 AM to urge you to vote yes on 41A. My landlord refused to accept the rent relief program because he want me out to raise my my rent from $1,200 to $3,200. So they're just looking for, a lot of them, not all of them, but a lot of them are just looking for an excuse to kick us out on the streets. You haven't heard a landlord asking you for a program to help them. We should be working together, landlords. We need each other. Please.
I'm going to stop here and ask Rafael, is there help for a tenant who says their landlord has shut off their water and their electricity? Is there help?
Yes, there is. And actually, members of my team are on their way over here to help tree out some of these issues.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to talk to you. Okay.
Demand to help me. There's no help.
We're going to, we're going to try and help right now. Thank you. Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Demetria Scott. I'm a tenant. I'm a member of Sage and a member of the LA Tenants Union. My landlord hasn't done repairs in over three years, and he's gotten rental assistance and mortgage assistance. So I urge you guys to vote in favor of 41A and to enforce repairs and to also, to enforce whether the landlords are actually mom and pop landlords or not. And I've been in mediation for over six months with DCBA. I still have no repairs. I have hazardous habitability, environmental issues. I have mold in my home. I am an employee of LAUSD. We have kids at school have suffered with the pandemic that are now in school. They can't spell their name, and they're in school. They don't know their birthday. So there is effects of the pandemic still going on, and our kids, our students in the schools are silent stakeholders. And you guys really need to do some research and check with LAUSD and a lot of the barriers that the students and the families are having. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there help for this? Okay. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Erica Owens. I'm a HR director for a family-owned private property management company. And I just want us to get back to the fact that this is for COVID protection. It's not for us to solve homelessness and the housing issue. It's for COVID protection, and it is very difficult for landlords to just bear the grunt of this because the rent's pay for the expenses on the properties, taxes are increasing because inflation, labor, it's twice as much. Everyone wants a million dollars to do a job, and it's difficult for us to hire. It's difficult for us to pay our vendors, many of which are small business owners, sole proprietors. And we're not getting rents to pay these expenses. It's not okay that this continues on. Two months, six months. It needs to end. COVID is over. We have low unemployment. COVID is over.
Uh, thank you.
And you should have to prove if you're affected by COVID.
Thank you.
It's enough, people.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Listen, we're giving respect to everyone who speaks. We want to hear everybody's story because everybody has a story. So we would appreciate it if you would give respect to who's ever at the podium. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, my name is Sagi Alkobi. I work for a family-owned operator of a property management company in the county of LA. And it really is time to end the COVID-19 protections. For close to three years now, we have been working with residents, trying to get them on payment plans, deferring their rent payments, working out any kind of payments just to get something out of them. Rent relief programs have been really slow. The well has dried up. Applications are closed. We've dealt with fraudulently cashed rent payments. We've dealt with residents receiving the rental payments and then never giving it to the landlords, over $30,000 to $100,000 over a spread of a few residents, while also bearing the burden of increased operating expenses. SCAP inspections are still ongoing, and we are required to uphold our end of a lease agreement, and we expect the tenant to continue to do the same as of February 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Alexander Hardin with the Keep LA House Coalition. Firstly, we must do better on the Brown Act and public comment in the future. I highly recommend allowing people to comment before you engage in negotiations about their well-being. I applaud Supervisors Solis and Horvath, and I encourage the entire board to stand as strong for struggling tenants. Last time this was discussed, a majority of you expressed support for a June extension but raised concerns around small landlords. Before you today was that extension plus a thoughtful proposal tailored to the exact concerns you raised. Help for small landlords for property maintenance and related needs. This is a no-brainer. Help landlords, help tenants, and give your efforts to educate cities a chance at success. I agree about accountability and transparency, and it's absurd to blame cities that lack tenant protections when the policy summit you voted for to help them pass those protections hasn't happened yet. State law gives you broad authority State law gives you broad authority to declare and extend a local emergency based on local conditions, where the epicenter of homelessness and those conditions exist. Without an extension, just cause protections for countless residents will vanish. Pets like Boomi and their owners will face eviction. Caretakers and those they care for will face eviction.
Thank you.
Voucher holders who should be protected will face eviction.
Thank you.
We need your eye vote.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hola, muy buenas tardes.
Hello, good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Eva Garcia. Vengo del distrito de la señora Gilda Solís.
My name is Eva Garcia, and I am from the district of Gilda Solís.
Le agradezco el apoyo que nos ha dado, pero creo que los dos meses hasta marzo no es suficiente.
I appreciate the efforts, especially your support, but I do believe that two months until March is not enough time.
Más bien están dando herramientas a los dueños que quieren desalojar a inquilinos, que tienen tiempo viviendo ahí, y se les hace poco la renta que pagan.
Instead, that would be a tool for landlords who want to evict their tenants.
No creo que no hay buenos dueños, pero sé que el 90% de dueños quieren mercantilizar la vivienda y dejar a nuestros inquilinos en la calle.
I don't believe that there are absolutely no bad landlords. However, a majority of them want to, you know, they see a profit when what we want is to decommodify housing.
Es muy triste saber que se preocupan.
Because 90% of landlords want to displace.
Es muy triste saber que se preocupan por ellos cuando ellos están llenos de dinero. Y no hablo de los pequeños dueños. Hablo de los dueños corporativos que día con día vienen a gentrificar nuestra comunidad y lo único que quieren sacarnos de ahí.
And I'm not talking about small mom-and-pop landlords. I'm talking about big landlords who every day want to come and gentrify our communities and kick our families out.
Ahora llega una orden de corte que se vence hoy. La mandan el viernes. ¿Ustedes creen que es justo eso? Eso está pasando durante personas que llegan a nuestras manos o nosotros las estamos ayudando. Pero qué pasa con las personas que no son escuchadas o que no saben sus derechos?
And then comes that eviction notice, right, that we have days just to respond to. She said a lot of powerful things, and I'm sorry right now. Eva, you're going to have to repeat that.
Ellos aprovechan de eso para dejar a nuestros inquilinos en la calle.
And they, landlords, take advantage of those five days, right, that notice to kick our tenants out, and then they end up in the streets.
Thank you. Thank you. Gracias. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ruby Rivera, and I'm a lifelong Linwood resident, a tenant, and I am also here as a member of the Keep L.A. Housed Coalition. I want to urge you all to vote in support of 41A. Without these protections, many tenants living in incorporated cities like mine will be left vulnerable to evictions since we do not have tenant protections beyond those granted by this board through the emergency. I appreciate the steps that the board has taken to implement permanent protections for tenants and unincorporated, but I'm asking you to support the same opportunity for tenants in communities like mine to be able to enact similar steps. Chairwoman Han, you now represent Linwood and many of my cella neighbors that live in incorporated cities without these protections, for whom two months is not enough to continue the work that we're already doing to try to implement tenant protections. Cities like Cudahay, cities like Linwood, who have new representatives that have been working to make that happen. I'm also here to remind you all of the summit that you all, that was promised for incorporated cities so that we have the tools we need to implement permanent protections of our own. As a daughter of mom-and-pop landlords, I understand the need to protect generational wealth of Black and Brown communities and also protect our communities from house slippers.
Thank you.
Vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Bonet. I'm a staff attorney with Public Council, and I'm urging the board to support this item. The county's emergency protections have been critical. They have protected the county's 5 million renters. They've prevented homelessness. They have saved lives. We should extend them as far as, as long as possible. I wanted to briefly address one of the proposed amendments Supervisor Han raised regarding the protections for pets and occupants. During the beginning of COVID, schools were closed, people could not work, household compositions changed dramatically. Family members had to move in to help take care of kids and to help pay the rent. Sometimes those family members brought pets. A lot of those folks have been living there now for over two years. And if the protections for pets and occupants ends at the end of March, they could be evicted with as little as three-day notice. It could be, you've been here for two years, but you have three days to either move out or the whole household could face eviction. That's true countywide in incorporated and unincorporated. So we need those protections for pets and occupants to give folks time to make new arrangements with their landlords, whether they live in unincorporated areas or in cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes. Soy Erica Elias y vengo del Distrito 1 de Gilda Solís.
My name is, good afternoon. My name is Erica Elias, and I come from Supervisor Solis's District 1.
Quiero pedir más tiempo para estas protecciones porque yo llevo viviendo en un limbo ahorita.
I want to ask for more time for these protections because I've been living in a limbo up until today.
Tengo cuatro meses, no tengo luz, no tengo gas, y mis niños sufren en las mañanas cuando vamos a ir a la escuela por el frío. Estoy como en una hielera.
I have four months without light, electricity, gas, and in the mornings, as my children are getting ready for school, they suffer with the cold.
No, no, no sé qué hacer porque la dueña no quiere arreglar.
I don't know what to do because the property owner female does not want to fix these things.
Ella lo que quiere es que yo me salga. ¿A dónde voy a ir con cuatro niños?
She, all she wants is for me and my family to move, and where will I go with four children?
Y no es por falta de que no le he pagado la renta, no más que se incendió, y de ahí es donde ella me quiere desalojar.
And it is not because I haven't paid my rent. It's because there was a fire, and that's where this whole situation is coming of her trying to evict me.
¿Qué les puedo decir a mis niños? Que estamos sufriendo. No tengo hielera. No tengo donde cocinarles.
What do I tell my children? I have no refrigerator. I have nowhere to cook for them.
No tenemos agua caliente.
We don't have hot water.
Tenemos que buscar a dónde irnos a dar un baño cada dos o tres días.
We have to look for a place to shower every two or three days.
Entonces, por eso, les pido que nos ayuden. Yo estoy sufriendo. A veces me quiero deprimir.
And this is why I'm asking for your help. I am suffering. Sometimes I get depressed.
Sé que hay más gente así sufriendo. Por eso, apoyenlos, por favor.
There are more families and people like me, so please support.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Chair, could someone state for the record, those are public health violations. Where people go for help when their lights and water have been turned out, please? If we could put that on the record. Right, which is, part, part, yes. And Rafael, would you want to speak to that too?
We could assist with that. We could help navigate the system and connect them to the right folks at Public Health. And we continue to work with them to try to address these issues. We're actually working on a motion now to try to strengthen those responses and some of the work that's going on there.
Right.
But these are clear examples of why that work is needed.
Right, right. Did you want to, can you give a phone number of where they can call?
They could reach out to DCBA at DCBA.DonaldaleCounty.gov or our 800 number, 593-8222.
Say that again slowly.
800-593-8222.
One more time.
593-8222. 593-8222.
Thank you. Because you're right, Superintendent Mitchell, these are not issues that have anything to do with what we are voting on today, but they're serious violations, and people are clearly suffering, yes. But it's not, doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing today. But we hear you, and we want you to know that there's help in the county for your situation. Yes.
Also want to point out that if those actions were taken in violation of the tenant protections as retaliatory, then there are some protections in there as well.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if anyone translated that for the last witness, so I really want to make sure that she has handed the phone number so she knows where to call.
We will connect with her.
Thank you.
I think his team is out there right now connecting with her. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Fred Sutton with the California Apartment Association. Our members help house Los Angeles County. It's been almost three years since temporary and emergency housing measures were put in place. Starting in September of last year, this board-directed county communications go out to alert all residents of their ending. For months, everyone in the county has known these measures were going to end. The goalposts keep moving. As a society, we have shifted away from emergency conditions towards managing and living with the presence of the virus. Extending the moratorium is not a solution. The amounts of money identified is woefully inadequate for the accumulation of debt, which would take place if this moratorium is further extended. Not only would this cause more confusion, but it would continue to handcuff owners who are facing serious nuisance issues on their property. Housing providers are not in the eviction business. There are payback periods that kick in upon expiration. The county should focus on creating a source of funds for those still in need to pay back as the payback period approaches. Measure H, Harpa funds, those should be fully opened if this is a priority for the county to be used immediately.
Thank you. Next, we're now going back to the phone. Next speaker on the phone, please.
Our next participant is Elizabeth Alcantar. You may begin.
Hello, thank you Supervisors for the opportunity to speak. My name is Elizabeth Alcantar, and I serve on the Cudahay City Council. I was one of those that signed on to the letter with the cities of Maywood, Belgrade, and St. Louis in Cudahay, asking for the support of this moratorium on eviction. We asked for more time because we're in the process of passing our own quality protections. Contrary to some of the comments made earlier, we have indeed passed protections already, and have been working on further support in the last few months. We alone have passed eviction data collection, eviction protection ordinances, temporary rent increase freezes, rent control ad hoc committees, et cetera. And even now, the processes that exist have not been able to help many tenants whose landlords refuse to sign the paperwork needed to get help in order to avoid reporting rent as income. We need expanded tenant protections for at all levels, and for that, we need the time for our small cities, with only a small percentage of staff compared to that of the counties, can join you. Help us help our communities, and I look forward to participating in the timely summit so there's a healthy overlap between the information we'll learn and the policies that we can pass in our local cities. Thank you all.
Thank you, Liz, and let me know how I can help you and your city put in place some tenant protections. Thank you for calling in. Next speaker on the phone, please.
Our next participant is Angelique Reynoso. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair and honorable Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Angelique Reynoso, and I'm speaking on behalf of the American Society for the Prevention of Coagulated Animals, North America's most longstanding animal welfare organization, in support of Agenda Item 41A to extend eviction protections for L.A.'s tenants with unauthorized pets. Countless Angelinas have turned to pets for companionship and comfort throughout the difficult times brought on by the pandemic. Renters in Los Angeles County continue to face financial hardship and may not be able to find, let alone afford, alternative housing options that allow pets. The reversal of these protections will force many residents to make the impossible choice of either relinquishing their beloved pet or maintaining their home, inevitably resulting in a significant increase in animal surrender at a time when our local shelters are struggling with overcrowding and severe capacity issues. The City of Los Angeles has recognized the challenges that ending these protections would bring and have moved to extend eviction protections for tenants with pets through January 31st of 2024. In order to avoid confusion amongst L.A. residents and ensure the best outcomes for pets and the families that love them, we ask that you please extend eviction protections for renters with unauthorized pets.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Ricardo Pimienta. You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ricardo Pimienta. I'm a member of the East LA Chamber of Commerce, and I oppose 41A because it's affecting our livelihood, our communities, our cities. End, to end this moratorium, except for, in other words, right here in the unincorporated area, we're like the stepchildren of all the cities. We get the short end of the stick. We work just as hard as everybody else in every other city. Constantly, we're neglected, ignored, abused by the people in charge. We're, it's been three years trying, trying to work with, with the tenants and still having a lot of expensive insurances. We're just enabling these tenants from paying the rent, and it's going to cost us
Thank you.
to be on
Thank you.
on the system as well because we're going to end up losing our stuff.
Thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jaime Rodriguez. You may begin.
Hi. The current imposed extension and approach do nothing but attack small mom-and-pops more. After three years of being asked to shoulder the burden of a worldwide pandemic, there is bad faith in legislation where goalposts are moved again. Trust has eroded with the leadership, and many providers, including myself, just want to exit or sell, but cannot because the shackles are still on us. When is the county going to allow mom-and-pops to make decisions for themselves? An ability to plan our own lives? Power is a hell of a drug. This is state-mandated slavery, a redistribution of somebody else's hard work in the name of COVID and the flu and the county's failed policies. This is a guise to impose private welfare. Please order Supervisor Horvath to recuse herself from voting on housing policies because she directly benefits from this. As a single housing provider, all we ask for is equal representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Lydia Ponce. You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm calling from Venice, California, and I paid my rent every month because I could. However, I'm here to speak in favor of 41A because the lease could be six months, and if, in order for it to pass, then yes, we'll take three months. My friends and family.
Just a minute, just a minute. Hold on, hold on. I feel like there's a lot of background noise, and we're having a very hard time hearing you.
I think I can go outside.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The probability of eviction is definitely on the sunset of today, the last day of the season. The spread more tolling of extermination on the 31st of January, February, you gotta put it to March if you have to. The reason why I'm saying that is because you need to get together with Governor Lou, Lou Trump. He knows where there's $1.4 billion that he had proposed to use for pesticide and desalination. Originally, a bulk of that, 90% of that money was supposed to go to affordable housing. He's been bamboozling and not being honest with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Grossman. You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Eric Grossman, and I represent Equity Residential. We're a nationwide apartment owner and operator who's provided housing in Los Angeles and throughout the county for many years. Item 41A should be opposed. For months, the county's communications and official board action has explicitly broadcast to residents that the emergency housing measures would end at the beginning of 2023. Extending the moratorium with one week before expiration and without any warning is wrong, and it is bad governance. The order at hand fails to properly recognize that the housing providers have suffered through a series of emergency measures, changing orders, and slow relief, or in many cases, none at all. The net result is that many of us are carrying substantial amounts of delinquent accounts for residents that are no longer at risk due to COVID-related circumstances. I should note that the unemployment rate in the county as of December 2022 stood at 4.4% compared to 4.0% in December of 2019. These were always temporary measures that were intended to protect those who were affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, but where is the economic support for any further continuance of the production? The county should recognize that the economy is rebounded and people have gone back to work.
Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Scott Peverich. You may begin.
Hi, I'm a landlord, and I did apply to the California Relief Fund. My tenants did not apply, so my request is if there's a relief fund being offered, is that to either waive the tenant participation requirement or require them to participate or be subject to eviction. My second point is I pay all the utilities to my tenants, and allowing them to have unauthorized occupants increase my utility costs. So the request is to either reimburse for the additional utility cost for the unauthorized occupants or allow me to charge my tenants for maybe subbilling for those unauthorized occupants that they invited in. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Our next participant is Diane Robertson. You may begin.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Diane Robertson, and I am one of the founding members of the Coalition of Small Rental Property Owners. I implore you today to please oppose Item 41A and end the moratorium as communicated and planned for. It's unconscionable that, I'm sorry, it's unconscionable to continue this moratorium or propose to extend the moratorium just one week before everyone planned for it. or propose to extend the moratorium just one week before everyone planned for it to end. Mom and pop landlords have been shouldering a global pandemic for the past three years and we can no longer sustain this. We did not cause the homelessness and affordable housing crisis and the solution is not to force us to house our tenants for free.
Thank you.
If that is the case.
Thank you for calling in. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Ricardo Ortiz. You may begin.
Okay. Hello, Board of Supervisors. I oppose the moratorium extensions. I have a duplex in Long Beach and have applied for landlords' relief about two years ago and unfortunately, so far, I haven't seen a dime. This moratorium has placed a heavy burden on me and my family and I suggest if the Board of Supervisors would like to help out tenants, by all means, please do so, but don't shift the burden onto small business owners like myself. I guess a lot of landlords get, get the bad reputation as far as being rich fat cats like with the monocodes on the board game, but I'll tell you myself, I drive a Honda Accord that's about 13 years old. We're not big and wealthy like they make us out to be. I'm just trying to pay the bills and get my kids to the school, so
Thank you.
I urge the Board of Supervisors to
Thank you.
Oppose. Thank you.
Okay, there's, we have about 47 more speakers and we're about to possibly lose quorum. We also haven't gotten to general public comment yet, so I already made one request that maybe you, you know, not speak if someone's already said what you've said, but now there is a request from my colleagues that we limit it to 30 seconds so that we get as many of you as possible who have been here all day to get to say something to the Board. So we're going to limit it to 30 seconds, so you might have to rework your statement that you were going to read. If you think a minute goes fast, 30 seconds really goes fast. So think about what you're going to say, you know, say one thing that, that hasn't been said. All right, let's try this, 30 seconds, but we want to get as many of you as possible to address the Board before I start losing quorum up here. Okay, let's go. Next speaker, please.
Next participant is Brittany Hub. You may begin.
Hi, how everybody doing? I just want to thank you guys for the rent and lease program. I just would like to say, please pay the managers. They deserve all, you know, their funding that they have requested for. And another thing, support for low income. We need faster process of Section A. We need more from the homelessness at DPSF, DV services, more support for housing, extended hotel vouchers, rooms.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Robert Collins. You may begin.
Hello, how you doing? I'm, I'm calling, my name is Robert Collins, of course, I live in Los Angeles and I've been here for a while. I'm calling with Community Coalition and in solidarity with Keep L.A. House Coalition, I want to urge you to vote yes on item 41A to extend the countywide emergency tenant protection through June 30th, 2023. We don't need more people on the streets being homeless. We have Medicare and that trying to clean up the homeless and what is
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Oh.
Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Sarah Gonzalez. You may begin.
Hello?
Go ahead.
This motion is a continuous attack on housing providers and exclusion of other industries. I have not heard you guys passing laws attacking food providers despite food being essential for survival. At this point, people who have lost their job due to COVID and were willing to find a job have had all the tools and time at their disposal, including lowest unemployment rate in 50 years to make that happen. Those who haven't will magically fight in in the next few months. You are not trying to do the right thing economically because you're very much know that what you're doing will just reduce housing providers and developers to create more housing, which will result with further increase in cost of housing. Instead, you keep on wasting taxpayer money to seem pathetic to tenants and get more votes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
To the Board, the same human beings you're trying to protect will magically
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Oh, in person. Hello, go ahead.
I manage a 52-unit apartment building. Seven of them haven't paid rent for like two years, so 15% of the rent is not paid. And when I ask them to pay, they send me a link to a new news that moratorium has been, you know, expanded. So one of the tenants said, when I sell my script, then that's when I'm going to pay you and until then, I don't have to pay. So this is the kind of, they, they get money, they have money, but they don't want to pay because of this, these laws that are really unjust for the apartments, buildings.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jaclyn Munoz. I'm here today to represent both tenants and landlords. I truly believe in helping our brothers and sisters in need, especially time of, of crisis such as COVID. I too got caught with COVID in January 2022, which I couldn't work for six months. So I understand what you want to do or continue to do. Now I speak as a representative for landlords as a Realtor with Steve Caston Realty in Lincoln Heights. Supervisors, Harvath and Solis, what are your plans to approve and instruct the Chair to sign a resolution for landlords? Are there any tax concessions for them?
Thank you. If you'd like to turn that in and we'll read the rest of your comments. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Suzanne Santos and I manage an apartment building here in downtown Los Angeles. I empathize with the protections that were in place during the pandemic and agree that they were appropriate for that time. However, I oppose extending these protections going forward without providing sufficient financial support to tenants who were impacted, such as the Housing is Key Program. And as a business manager, I can testify that the increasing unresolved debt from back rent has hindered our business's ability to fill vacant positions, expand our business, and afford increasing operational expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Red Chief Hunt, let's not wreck the train. 90 days, let's, let's meet halfway. 90 days extension, come up with a solid plan and let's not wreck the train. 3,000 evictions in the month of February, what's the name, all the way up to, what's the name, 6,000 or six months, 18,000 more homeless people. Let's not wreck the train.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, I miss.
Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Estela Nebarres.
Good afternoon. My name is Estela Nebarres.
Regresamos a lo de Alpine, señora Holly Metro.
We're here back regarding Alpine Village.
Estamos aquí desde las 9 de la mañana y hasta ahorita nos dieron un solo minuto para hablar.
We have been here since 9:00 AM and they're now giving us only one minute to speak.
El condado prove muchas, muchas protecciones a terrenos acaso han pensado cómo esto beneficia a los dueños.
The county provides
Protecciones a los terrenos acaso.
Protection to the owners. Have you thought about how they're going to protect us?
No estamos en contra de la, de la 41, tampoco a favor.
We are not against 41A. Neither are we in favor.
Por ejemplo, Alpine Village recibió protecciones y miren lo que pasó.
Like, for example, Alpine Village received protection and look what happened.
El precio subió y ahora lo están vendiendo.
The price went up and now it's for sale.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And I, you know, and again, we apologize for all of you who have been here all day. We've been here all day too. We understand that. We just want to try to get as many of you to be able to address the Board, so that's why we're shortening the time, but we, we apologize for that. Next speaker, please.
La supervisora le pide disculpas, señora, por todo el tiempo que ha estado aquí. Ellas también están aquí desde la mañana.
Buenas tardes. También estamos aquí, como dijo usted, desde la mañana.
Good afternoon. Yes, I am also here since this morning.
Y también estamos por lo que sigue pasando con lo del Alpine Village.
We are here because of what's still going on with the Alpine Village.
Le pedimos a la supervisora, Mitch, que se fije también en lo que han hecho como convertirlo en histórico y eso subió de precio el valor.
We would like for Supervisor Mitchell to see that this building has been named as historical and that's the reason why the price went so high.
You know, I, I hear you, but this is not the Alpine Village time to speak. I think that would be during general public comment, but that's even later today and I, so I feel badly if you've been here all day, but we're not speaking on Alpine Village right now. We're speaking on the tenant protection item.
No está hablando de eso, por favor. Hable del 41A. Es que va a hablar de eso.
Sí, estamos hablando de eso y también de la 41.
Yes.
Porque aquí hay gente que ha venido a pedir ayuda y nosotros estamos pidiendo la ayuda para no venir a pedir ayuda, que nos paguen renta, que nos den vivienda o que nos pongan en alguna home loan. Estamos trabajando y pedimos trabajo.
We are also here to ask for assistance, just like everyone else. We're here earlier and yes, we are also talking about the 41A. So we need assistance so we don't have to come back and get, and ask again and again.
Okay, thank you.
No, no es fácil.
Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Para la 41A.
I'm here also for 41A.
Las personas están dos años, no sé si pagan o no pagan renta.
People are, I'm not sure if people don't pay or do pay rent for over two years.
Nosotros pagamos rentas.
We do pay rent.
Nos están desalojando.
They are evicting us.
Queremos ayuda.
We need help.
Para que también nos den protección.
So they can, so you guys can also protect us.
¿Nos van a ayudar a pagar nuestra renta, ustedes a nosotros, a 300 familias si nos quedamos sin trabajo?
Are you going to help us, more than 300 families, to pay the rent? Are you?
Esa es mi pregunta, ¿nos van a ayudar?
Is that the chair, if I may?
That is my question. Are you going to help us?
Yes, hold on. Supervisor Mitchell.
We have met with the leaders for the last three weeks.
Ya se han reunido con los líderes por tres semanas.
The fact that the county decades ago declared it a historical landmark has nothing to do with the property owner's right to sell.
El hecho de que el condado lo declaró histórico no tiene nada que ver con el condado.
We have been successful in getting an extension and my staff is working in partnership with the leaders from the vendors group.
Ella ha estado hablando con los dueños y han tenido un gran éxito en darles una extensión.
And helping to look for a new location for the vendors.
Están tratando de buscar una nueva localidad para los vendedores.
My staff will come down now and bring you copies of the letters we've written to both the seller and the buyer.
Alguien va a venir y le va a enseñar copias de una de las cartas que han estado negociando con los dueños y con los compradores.
The tenant COVID eviction protection policy that we're talking about unfortunately does not extend to a business environment.
Lo que está hablando de la 41A desgraciadamente no aplica a este negocio.
So my staff is
¿Quién nos ayuda a nosotros?
So I would like to know
Como pequeños negocios, ¿quién nos puede ayudar?
As a small business, who is going to help us?
Nadie quiere ayudarnos.
Nobody wants to help us.
That's not true. We're working on it now. My staff will come down and tell you what we've done so far. We got an extension.
Eso no es verdad.
That was an important first step.
Ellos han estado trabajando y alguien va a venir y a explicarle algo a usted. Nos acaban de dar una notificación el sábado de un mes definitivo.
Would it be appropriate, Supervisor Mitchell, if there's anyone else that's been waiting all day to talk about, it's a vendor, maybe that your staff could meet with all of them right down front? Yeah. Anyone who's here as a, as a vendor within, at Alpine Village, why don't you come down here front and Supervisor Mitchell's staff, who have been working on this issue, will continue to let you know what, what is available.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Mitchell. Okay, next speaker, please.
Good evening, I guess at this point. My name is Max Sherman. I'm with the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. The Board is again considering extending the moratoriums with date, within days of the established expiration date of January 31st and modifying individual eviction prohibitions. How can county rental housing providers and renters be expected to know, let alone understand the county's ever-changing provisions and timelines? It's time for the county to join Los Angeles and the state in end these measures allowing rental housing providers to return to normal operations as all other industries have been able to do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Matthew Buck with the California Apartment Association. I serve members in the Eastern County area. I'll be real blunt here. Permanent funding for both landlords and tenants who are at risk needs to be assigned via Measure H, ARPA, and other housing funds. Our members are hurting right now and you made a promise, they were going to be ending this in 2023 early. Didn't happen. We're looking for help. We need it desperately.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, we're going, going to the telephonic?
Yes, let's go back on the phone.
We go to the line of Jennifer Laswell. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Supervisors. I've been a landlord in LA County for two decades and my goal has always been to form good relationships with our residents. This has made it very hard to do so. I have residents that are abusing the system, buying cars, but are also hindering the lifestyles of my other residents by being violent with them and I can't do anything about it, so please end the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we go to the line of Ryan Bell. Please go ahead.
Hello, thank you. My name is Ryan Bell. I'm a tenant in Pasadena, District 5, calling to urge you to vote yes on item 41A. The decision before you today is between whether to protect landlords' profits versus human beings becoming homeless and very possibly dying. My landlord already owns their house, 40 or 50 other homes, and drives up to our apartment in a custom BMW 7 Series. On top of that, billions have been received by landlords, billions of dollars in rent relief, public money given to shore up their private investments. In spite of all this, landlords here are complaining that their investment hasn't performed as they hoped. My meager retirement savings has gone down around 35% in the past year due to market performance.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to the line of Kimberly Alvarado. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kimberly and I live in Monterey Park, 91754, a friendly city that is predominantly people of color, from Asian communities and Latinx, but also renters. I live by Atlantic from Floral to El Ropero and all those streets about half a mile be right before Garvey. We're all apartments. We are all renters there. And for us, these are the only protections that we have. And so on top of everything that's going on, we don't need these protections stripped away, so I urge you to vote yes on item 41A.
Thank you.
And put, and extend countywide emergency protection.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to the line of Roy. Please go ahead.
Okay, just briefly, the fruits of the subversion of the public comment to the Board is burying its ugly head today. Here's eight hours, how many people, as others have stated, can deal with this type of subversion? And then earlier, you voted down to truth and transparency in the Brown Act. You're shameful. Your people are just shameful at the very best.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to the line of Karen Greenberg. Please go ahead.
Hello, I'm 70 years old. I have income, property, along with social security. My tenants have been paying their rent. I had tenants who went on hard times during COVID. They applied for the assistance program and we got the money for assistance. They are now paying their rent again, but I get, all the time, I get calls from major corporations trying to buy my property, thinking that I'm distressed. If I were to sell my property to these major corporations, my tenants would be in tremendous problems. It would cause a tremendous problem for my tenants because I'm fair to them. Please don't take, let the properties be taken away from the mom and pop.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to the line of Candy Downton. Please go ahead.
Hi, Supervisors. In the supplemental agenda for today, under the link for motion by Supervisors Horvath and Solis on page 14, under tenant certifications, it says that the extended protection period is for household incomes at 80% area median income or below. So this is not open-ended for everyone, as in the original protection. It is for the most distressed and need. There are further requirements for the tenants to certify their income for 80% median or below. These are the safeguards that address the need for the most desperate tenants in need, as well as funding for the most desperate mom and pop in need. So when the supported motion by Supervisor Han and the feasibility.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to the line of King Chung. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is King Chung. And we're Chinatown Community for Equitable Development. We are advocate for the tenants and we urged the supervisors to extend the six-month moratorium. It's very necessary because the landlords are raising huge amount of rent in Chinatown and ready to evict the tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments.
There are no other speakers in the queue to address the board.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments, colleagues, item 41A as amended is before us, and I believe we all have a clean copy of the amendments that were made, moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by Supervisor Solis. To approve this item as amended, Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 41A is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell.
Abstain.
Supervisor Mitchell abstains. Supervisor Horvath.
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker.
No.
Supervisor Barker, no. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries four to one with one abstention.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Three to one with one abstention.
Right. Okay, thank you. So that item passes.
Correct.
And now we're going to move to item A1. Is that correct? A1, which was held by Supervisor Barker. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 and 0 now to comment on A1. Are there any Supervisors that want to make remarks?
No, I just would move the item. I think we've talked about it in combination with. Oh, go ahead, Supervisor Mitchell.
Yes, Supervisor Mitchell.
If I may, I know time is tight, but I just feel compelled, Madam Chair, just as we listen to this group of last witnesses, people talked about gentrification and what caused homelessness. You know, it's important that I too bring a reflection. I represent the Second District. Baldwin Village has maybe 200 apartment buildings, many of which are 20 units or fewer. And they are owned not by landlords who earn six figures, as someone suggested. They are owned primarily by former public employees who bought these buildings in the 60s and 70s. And so they're old properties. And in the Second District, that's the most affordable community. So when we talk about gentrification, if those landlords lose those properties, quite frankly, my peer group, their grandkids, aren't in the position to buy them. That's when gentrification happens because those small buildings that are the most affordable housing units in my district go to corporations. So as we talk about individual stories and the, we heard horrific stories today. We absolutely did. And what troubles me is I feel like landlords and tenants are on opposite ends of the spectrum and we're not hearing ways in which the two can support one another in a meaningful way. Gentrification is real. People losing property is real, just like my district was hit by the housing boom when people lost property 10, 15 years ago. So I join with you, Supervisor Barker, to make sure that mom and pop in the Second District, those people who own the buildings that are the last bastion of affordable housing units, can still own them, have the resources to repair roofs, the calls, the hundreds of calls we got from distressed mom and pop landlords who through this last rain, who want to be good landlords and provide healthy, appropriate places for their fellow Angelinos to live. So I'm proud to join with you in this motion to direct resources to help people stay housed, which is to provide rent relief so tenants also don't carry heavy, heavy debts into the coming years. I'll be supporting the motion.
Well said.
Thank you. Are there members of the public that have signed up to speak on this?
I show no members of the public on telephonic.
Okay.
And in person.
Okay. Hearing no other comments, item A1 is before us, moved by Supervisor Barker, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell to approve this item. Executive Officer, go.
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry. Supervisor Barker, we agreed. Supervisor Horvath asked that we make that one-word change in the language.
And you've got the language.
To prioritize.
Prioritize mom and pops.
Just to read for the record, we were adding one word.
Man, we had a clean getaway.
I'm sorry. It was to direct, the motion reads direct CEO to identify and allocate at least $45 million to establish new rent relief programs that prioritize mom and pop priority, property owners.
And I have, I accept that.
Okay.
And you accepted.
I did as well.
Okay, so with that one-sentence amendment, two words, not even a sentence, two-word, both author and co-author have accepted that. So that item now is before us as amended, moved by Supervisor Barker, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell to approve this item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
A1 as amended, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath.
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Now we are to public comment?
We are on specials.
We're on specials. I think I've lost, oh, here we go. This time it'd be appropriate to hear from Supervisors on items not posted on the agenda to be presented or referred to staff or placed on future agenda. We have matters of urgency for the board's consideration that Supervisor Solis would like to read in.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And with that, I believe we can vote on these two motions, as we have cleared with County Council. So the first motion is really dealing with the topic that we started out this morning on with the shooting, mass shooting in Monterey Park. So I'll kind of skip what my narrative is because of the time, and I will just go straight to what the asks are. We therefore move that the Board of Supervisors make a finding pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B2, that there is a need to take immediate action and the need to take this action came to the attention of the Board of Supervisors subsequent to the posting of the agenda for today's meeting, and declare gun violence a public health crisis. Direct the Office of Violence Prevention in collaboration with county and community partners to finalize and publicly release the platform to address gun violence. Direct the Chief Executive Office in collaboration with the Department of Mental Health, the Department of Public Health, and the Department of Aging and Disabilities and relevant departments to do the following. Work with county, state, federal partners to coordinate necessary resources and funding to support the survivors, the victims, and their families of the Monterey Park mass shooting. Coordinate targeted outreach to AAPI older adults to provide appropriate resources and trauma services, including those provided by community-based providers that are linguistically and culturally appropriate. And direct the Chief Executive Office of the Department of Mental Health, the Department of Public Health, and relevant departments to work in collaboration with county partners and external subject matter experts in assessing and updating protocols and procedures for the county, in particular, the Office of Emergency Management, on providing a seamless response to incidents of mass violence in LA County, and report back in writing. The report back should include the development of protocols and procedures for the Office of Emergency Management and relevant departments to deploy in the event of a mass shooting or similar violent event. The creation of a resource bank, including culturally and linguistically appropriate materials from all relevant county departments to deploy for a mass shooting or similar violent event. The development of a countywide community outreach and engagement and public information plan to communicate with multilingual, ethnic, and hyper-local media. Review of existing training for county staff and contractors to ensure a coordinated response to mass shootings or similar violent events. A plan to work in coordination with local, state, and federal partners in identifying resources and support to assist victims. And a plan to identify community-based and faith-based providers, victim advocacy groups with resources and support for victims, survivors, and their families. Direct the Chief Executive Office to work with the Department of Public Health, the Department of Health Services, and County Council to identify the necessary ongoing funding to support the above directives, including utilizing available unallocated Measure B funding, American Rescue Plan Act funding, and the Department of Public Health's Office of Violence Prevention and/or other departmental resources for gun violence prevention. Direct all departments to report back on the above directives in 60 days with the updates every 60 days thereafter for the duration of 2023. Thank you. And now I recognize my co-author, Madam Chair, Han, for your remarks.
What she said. Of course, I'm happy to be your co-author on that. It's exactly right. You know, when I was in Congress, we always attempted to make gun violence a public health matter. I don't know how we can discuss public health without including gun violence, but thank you for that. And colleagues, we are going to vote to put this as an urgency motion on today's agenda. So the vote we're going to take right now is to acknowledge that it's urgent, then we're going to vote on it later after we've heard from the public. So it is moved by Supervisor Solis. I'm happy to be her co-author on this. Executive Officer, please call the roll on the need to place this on today's agenda.
This is item 42A. Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath.
I want to clarify, this vote is for urgency.
Just the urgency.
Thank you. Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Yes.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Han.
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, now Supervisor, please, I believe you have another motion to read in.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for also co-authoring and joining me on this motion.
Yes.
Some of us may have been made aware by news media, but I'm very disturbed, and I think some of us rightly so, on the heels of a mass shooting in my district, we learned that the probation department is selling their surplus handguns online. This is a reckless behavior. These guns should not be sold. They should be destroyed. And as a county, this practice must be halted immediately. But that's why I'm bringing this read in motion before the board today. We're averaging more than one mass shooting every single day in the United States, with Monterey Park mass shooting being the 36th mass shooting this year alone. The board is taking many actions to prevent gun violence, including the investment of millions of dollars to the Office of Violence Prevention and the county's anti-hate initiative. We also work closely to close loopholes involving gun possession and all necessary steps to strengthen our ordinances regarding our firearms, all to keep our residents safe from harm. That's why such an auction directly compromises the board's effort to address the gun violence epidemic. It is antithetical to the county's values, and it is dangerous and highly insensitive in the wake of a recent large-scale tragedy in our community. Although the probation department has halted this auction, simply put, the county should not be in the business of putting more guns on the street. To that end, I will read in the following directives. We therefore move that the Board of Supervisors make, making a finding pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B2, that there is a need to take immediate action and the need to take this action came to the attention of the Board of Supervisors subsequent to the posting of the agenda for today's meeting. And direct the Chief Executive Office and all county departments, working with the Internal Services Department, to review if other firearm and ammunition sales are being auctioned and immediately rescind and halt the auction of any firearms and/or ammunition owned by the county departments, including the probation department. Direct the Probation Oversight Commission and the County Council in collaboration with the probation department to investigate the auction of the probation department's firearms and ammunition. Direct Internal Services Department to develop a policy to ban the sale of firearms and ammunition, coupled with the plan to destroy any firearms and ammunition, including the firearms and ammunition that the probation department recently auctioned. Direct the Chief Executive Office to coordinate the above directives and report back in writing in 30 days. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis. I think you and I received this notification about the same time, and I actually said to my staff, we need to do a motion. You beat me to it. It is unbelievable that our probation department was about to auction off hundreds of guns to gun dealers to then be sold to the general public. I was shocked. I was disgusted. This board has been working so hard to prevent gun violence in LA County. I mean, our mission is to get guns off the streets. I have been hosting gun buyback programs every couple of months in my district so that people can, in return for a gift card, can get their guns off the streets, then our Sheriff's Department destroys those guns. So the fact, and I'm going to do one in Wilmington on March 4th with LAPD. So the fact that our probation department would be simultaneously putting guns back onto the street is absurd. We all need to be united in our fight against gun violence. Every gun out there has the potential of being used for violence or being stolen from someone's home and then also used in the committing of a crime. So I want to get guns off the street. I don't want to put them back on, back into the street. I've reached out to the Sheriff's Department to ask if they'd be willing to work with the probation department to destroy these guns the same way that they destroy the ones from our gun buyback. And they said absolutely. So we're going to work to get these specific guns destroyed, but it's also important to make sure that this doesn't happen again, which is why we need this motion, and we needed it obviously urgently. So thank you so much. Supervisor Mitchell, did you want to?
If I may, Madam Chair. In terms of content, you know, I absolutely support it. I just am needing to understand the circumstances in which we have a read-in that allows us to take this kind of immediate action. I think since I've been here, I may be wrong, we've had read-ins that we could vote on that day because they were report backs. This appears to me in my very quick perusal, as Supervisor Solis was reading it, that it, we take action. And so again, I too don't want guns in the street, but I'm wondering if we had more time and were able to deliberate, there may be other departments, there may be more that we need to take action on. I appreciate there was an article that came out. I don't understand, you know, for example, why, based on the article, why a call to the chief to say, halt until the board creates a policy. So if someone could just explain the process.
Right. And I'll have our County Council, which is why we take a vote. And if you're in, if you disagree that it is urgent and we have to do it now, then you would vote no. So the first vote we take is one that says we agree that it can be voted on today. If you don't agree with that, you have the right to vote no, that you think it needs more vetting. I think, I'll let County Council talk about it, but the fact that they were going to do this, they were ready to auction these guns, I think.
Tell him to stop.
We felt it was an urgency.
But it didn't take a board action for them to make that decision.
Yeah.
So that's, I think, to Supervisor Mitchell's point is, it's the director or the chief can stop that. And I think her question was more on process.
It is.
I know.
And because I don't want a no vote on the urgency to be misinterpreted as I don't support the policy.
Got it.
That's what I don't want. But I do think it's a fair question to say, how does one issue become urgent? I appreciate the timeliness of your first one, based on the tragedy we experienced. That was outside of our control. This is the county department with the county department head that reports to us. So why a motion that we're just getting versus something else? That would be helpful to me.
Let's let County Council answer that.
Thank you, Supervisors. And Supervisor Han, you did explain it correctly in terms of the first vote being the urgency if someone disagrees that it is urgent and that instead the board should direct its appointee to do, take another action that under, you could do that. I think the issue here is it's been posted, the sale on a particular website, it's up now, so that people could be bidding on it now. So I think the urgency was, we want to get that, your board would want to get that posting down now in order to, you know, stop the sale immediately. I think that was the reason for bringing the urgency, but again, you are correct. This is a department head that reports to your board. And so if someone disagrees with it being urgent and being needed to take action today, then it doesn't have to go this way, but it could also go this way, and there's nothing incorrect or improper about it being brought the way that it was brought.
I appreciate that. I'll be supporting the motion. I think my question is still on the floor in terms of our process and how we decide. A directive to a direct report versus a motion, that's my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I would just say, I mean, I wholeheartedly support this. But with all due respect, Don, we didn't vote to do the auction. The chief did.
Agreed.
And so that is what her point is. It is administrative. We should, we should stop it. And I have to be honest that if, for some reason, it doesn't get the urgency motion and it continues to go through, someone's tone deaf.
Well, agreed.
Yep.
I've just been told that it has been pulled down now. So it's no longer active, is what I understand.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also think we, you know, again, was that just one call from the chair to the chief? Again, we're trying to also take votes on things that we think are important enough that we also, I think, want to send a message collectively as a board. I also believe that's part of the urgency. All right, so this item is before us. Do we need to hear from members of, oh no, we haven't taken a vote on the urgency. Right. Okay. Colleagues, on this motion two regarding the auction of handguns by the probation department, the urgency to vote on it later on whether or not we think it's urgent is before us now. So that item is before us, moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by me. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
The urgency motion is before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, these urgency motions will be voted on after hearing from members of the public. And when will this item be before us so that the public can weigh in on it?
When we do the consent calendar items, I will separate them out to vote separately.
Okay, so now it's appropriate to hear from members of the public wishing to address our board on all remaining items not held by Supervisors and general public comment. For members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to comment on these items. You must indicate the agenda item numbers that you wish to address, including general public comment, in order for us to allocate the appropriate time. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on the remaining items and general public comment. Due to the time and the possibility that we could lose a quorum, can we shorten the amount of time that we're giving the public at this point?
Yes, we'll allocate one minute for general public comment and an additional minute for the remaining items.
Okay, call those members of the public who've signed up.
Will, Erin Contreras, Chad Bojo, Christine Austria, Donald Harland, Jayon Baiz, Manny Solis, Mike Greenspan, Red Chief Hunt, and Robert Lovelace. Please come forward, and staff will assist you.
Yes, go ahead. First speaker.
Moderator, we have the first speaker. Please.
First participant is Brittany Hub. Please go ahead. Brittany Hub, your line is open.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, how you doing? I have been fighting tirelessly for my children for seven years. I filed a WIC 388 petition based on ineffective assistance of counsel, denial of due process by CLC and LADL that were denied. I reported to the commissioner and the judicial misconduct to the presiding judge that was denied. I reported CLC and LADL lawyers to the state bar for ineffective assistance of counsel and due process and received no response for four months. The Capitol appeal refused to file an appeal based on IAC and denial of due process by CLC and LADL. The entire court system is ripped apart. I and thousands of parents support cancellation of contracts starting with CLC and LADL. The proposed legislative and the audit as the means to immediately restore the rule of law and due process to the dependency court and to return children around the world. Stop this mass separation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to line of Yadi Yumi. Please go ahead.
Yes, hi. Yadi on number 34 and general comment. Robert Williams, Najer Park, Julie Hudson, and more are people misidentified by the use of facial recognition and wrongly arrested in jail. You know how devastating it can be for someone to have a record, losing their job, difficulty getting employment, or housing, breaking up families through stigma and trauma. I urge you to stop the use of the digital mugshot system, aka LA Photo Manager, and definitely don't expand it. The use of facial recognition should be banned. It's an ineffective tool that tramples on people's civil liberties. The use of lackless DMS and mass surveillance, where photos and biometrics of general population are added to criminal databases. Aside from getting a court order, the public has essentially no recourse from being removed from this database, even those who are never convicted of a crime. Please stop criminalizing everyday people and stop normalizing surveillance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to line of Angela Aberig. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm speaking on general public comment. Please release the report that the Director of Animal Care and Control was instructed to create and present to the board back in December following the euthanasia of a puppy in Baldwin Park. This report, most importantly, should include a plan to reduce euthanasia incidences. Please make this an agenda item for the next meeting, and please share these findings with the public. As a reminder, that Director is also due to deliver a five-year plan to decrease the number and percentage of animals who are euthanized, and that plan is due in March. Please, we're hoping for accountability and follow through here, and we need your help with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to line of Trent Rosenleib. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I'm speaking on Agenda Item Number 37. My name is Trent Rosenleib, representing California Independent Petroleum Association. The county has failed to consider the significant and unmitigated environmental impacts of the ordinance in violation of the California Environmental Quality Act. The county has failed to consider the importation of foreign crude that will result in increased greenhouse gas emissions from the tanker ships carrying crude oil to California to replace in-state produced oil. California produces only a fraction of oil that's consumed in the state, requiring over 70% to be imported. Over the past four decades, oil production has decreased, while demand for oil has significantly increased. The second item on this ordinance is the amortization component as an effort to allow oil operators to recoup some value of their investment. The capital investments required over the entire life of the oil field.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And it is oil property, our not subject to straight line.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to line of Yolanda Duarte. Please go ahead.
Yes, hi. Good evening. My name is Yolanda Duarte. I'm speaking on behalf of Item 25. I'm Board Chair for Alma Family Services, longtime advocate and activist for Incorporated East Deli and a member of the Health Innovation Community Partnership. At Alma, we work for the health and well-being of our vulnerable families, families that all spoke earlier about homelessness and mental illness and food insecurity and dealing with children with special needs. We help them make their solid connections with the community. Thank you, Supervisor Solis, for this motion. This will bring new life and restoration to the Historic General Hospital. This project is the largest capital improvement project the county has ever undertaken. It will address community priorities, expand stakeholder investment, and create ongoing civic engagement for health and well-being of the entire community. The Historic General Hospital was a beacon of hope in our community for generations, and once again will bring hope, housing, jobs, economic synergy, and clean energy to the East Side. We need the full support of the board on this motion. Thank you once again. Thank you, Supervisor Solis, for your leadership.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to line of Evren Arat. Please go ahead.
Hello, I'm speaking on Item 25. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm with Hovens Inc., and we are a member of the Health Innovation Community Partnership. And we've been a stakeholder in Boyle Heights for over three decades. We urge the board to support the motion because it makes possible a request for a proposal to rehab the old General Hospital. This is a regionally significant site. Many community needs are met here, including homelessness, affordable housing, and job creation, to name a few. And we work with youth who are experiencing homelessness, and we work alongside the HICP to maximize housing for our individuals that we're trying to help. These are deeply low-income communities that we're serving, and the workers and families still priced out of the East Side neighborhoods. So we look forward to assisting in this process in any way we can, and thank you, Supervisor Solis, for your leadership on this, and we need your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to line of Roy. Please go ahead.
Okay, so Supervisor, Item 18 listed immigration and sustainability. What is the situation? Where did it go that, hey, immigration is not, is a federal issue and we have nothing to do with that? And by the way, all of you should be reading Losing Control by Jerry Kramer, and also that your counsel probably know that you are prosecutable under the Cobra statute. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we go to line of Anthony Arenas. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anthony Arenas from Supervisory District 3, and I wanted to speak on Agenda Items 14, 32, and 33. 14, I strongly urge the board to pass this motion. It'll get people out of jail and connected with treatment immediately. This is an urgent need. Every day that folks are forced to spend incarcerated is a day where they could be receiving treatment, improving their mental health, and reintegrating into their communities. $50 million is enough funding to radically change the lives of the missed population currently stuck in jail. And for Agenda Item 32, I am totally opposed. Rather than hiring more probation officers, the county needs to genuinely invest in youth safety and well-being. This will not happen by hiring more law enforcement to surveil and abuse young people. Youth are not being rehabilitated in juvenile halls. They are being irreparably harmed and having their lives surveilled even further. And for Agenda Item 33, I am also opposed.
Thank you.
Since 2013, LEFC has contracted with Keith Group.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we're going to go to in-person. Welcome.
I'm speaking on Item Number 25. My name is Chad Bojo, Los Angeles County Representative of the Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm here today speaking in support of the General Hospital reuse project. Once completed, the project will provide desperately needed housing, including affordable housing for the citizens of Los Angeles County. Repurposing and remodeling the iconic LA County property under a PLA will ensure Los Angeles County Building and Construction Trades workers earn area standard wages and benefits, and that local residents, cities of the county, citizens of the county, have priority in working on the project. Scores of new apprentices will embark on their careers, not temporary jobs, but careers in the unionized construction field as a result of your leadership today. And for that, I want to thank all of you on behalf of our affiliated local unions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Christine Austria Lozoya. I'm a union member, electrical union member for IBW Local 11. What he said. I'm going to follow Janice Han. But I'm here for the women's, to advocate for our women in the union trades. And I know in the past you have supported a lot of our PLAs, and I just would hope that you would support Item 25 for the General Hospital PLA. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Donald Harland. I'd like to speak on Agenda Items 19, 20, 41, 29, 2D, and general comment.
Okay.
First, I'd like to reject the presentation at the beginning of the supervisor meeting where Supervisor Han claimed that the Indians had all this property sold from them and that they're the owners of these lands. They need to stop people from misrepresenting that. I didn't steal that land from the Indians. I was never in the cowboy days, and they shouldn't be building casinos on any of those properties. Speaking of which, Hollywood Park is a good example. Hollywood Park never owned that property over by the stadiums. All that real estate development in there that's in Hollywood Park is illegal. Agenda Items Number 19 and 20, these are leases for properties. This is, they're paying the insurance company the lease money for these properties. The insurance company gave them a title. That's not the same as a deed for the property. The property owner needs to be paid for the properties, not the insurance company. You don't pay lease money to the insurance company. Alpine Village, when was Alpine Village given a historical designation? That's totally false, since it was built mostly in the 1970s and 80s. You know, this is, you put some fancy molding on the building, and some kid sees it and thinks it's a monument, you know? That's so wrong. There's no historical designation for Alpine Village. Track map for North Whittier. I'm the original owner from 1986. There's fake county accessory reports. This is vacant, there was vacant land. It's been held vacant land.
Thank you. Your time is up.
I purchased that land from the President of the United States.
Next speaker. Red Chief Hunt.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, for doing an excellent job. 13 and general public comment. I want to talk about wrecking the train. Let's not wreck the train. We have a lot to lose here with 3,000 evictions a month. You know, 18,000 homeless people on top of 70,000. Doesn't make any sense. So let's not wreck the train. Problem, solution. I heard we got a new rocket scientist at Lhasa, so let's see what she's going to do and things like that. But the FMR rates are below market. You know, they need to come up to 2,450 so people can get one-bedroom apartments. That's where we're going to run into our biggest problem at right now, is the FMR rates are not sustainable to the market and stuff like that. $1,800, don't get a one-bedroom no place in city or the county of Los Angeles. Let's be mindful of what we're doing, and let's get rid of the 70,000 people first. And we have a lot to do with the homeless people, and everybody counts. We need outreach on the train services and things like that, so let's be mindful and get everybody off the street. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good luck, Katie Butler, and thanks for doing a great job, Chair.
Thank you. Shout out to Katie Butler. Okay, next speaker, please.
Yes, my issue is about housing. We need to get rid of the Costa Haggins Act and the Ellis Act because it's displacing people, and it's not fair because the greedy gentrifiers are taking all the properties, and it's not fair. We don't need more construction. We have too many buildings that are vacant that they must be put to the service of the homeless instead of using the hotels to house the homeless. That's ridiculous how much money they're spending. And before we enter into more, building more housing is crazy. I heard the mayor gesture saying, "We're going to build here, here, and there, and everywhere." What is she thinking of it? We need to rebuild the infrastructure. Our infrastructure in Los Angeles is more than 150 years old or 200 years. We need to build that then we can build, but not now because, and also water is life. We all need life. We need water. And they're using our water, our drinking water, to build high density. High density is a trap.
Thank you. Thank you.
I cannot live there. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, this is for Item 37. Good afternoon. My name is Ernest Guardiana, and I'm an attorney representing Bridgeland Resources. Bridgeland operates a number of oil wells within unincorporated areas of the county, including the Rosecrans Oil Field located in the 2nd District and the Sawtelle Field located on the Department of Veteran Affairs property within the 3rd District. Bridgeland joins in the opposition submitted by the California Independent Petroleum Association and the Western States Petroleum Association. Additionally, Bridgeland opposes the proposed ordinance on the grounds that not only does the proposed ordinance infringe on the rights of private parties, but also illegally infringes on the federal government's rights to produce federally-owned minerals and lease those minerals out to operators such as- such as Bridgeland when those minerals are located within the county. Moreover, the proposed ordinance will detrimentally impact the Veteran Affairs Department, which obtained significant payments from Bridgeland's Sawtelle Field. For these reasons, Bridgeland respectfully requests that the Board deny the adoption of the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Carlos Soriano. I'm speaking on general public comment. I am here on behalf of A H F to speak about the rise of STIs. Over the past two years, the Hollywood, Wilshire area has had the highest number of new gonorrhea and HIV cases. A large proportion of those cases are among Black and Latino male residents. Despite the current STI programs and resources in the area, STI transmission persists, and the number of new cases remains high. The LA County Board of Supervisors acknowledges the rising STI rates in LA County require immediate attention, but have not taken any steps to address this issue, aside from instructing the Department of Public Health to write a report back. This report detailing the Department of Public Health's strategic plan for reducing STIs in LA County is already months late.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Hillary Clifford. I'm here for public comment. I'm here on behalf of the AIDS Healthcare Foundation to speak about the rise of STIs. In LA County, early syphilis rates have risen 800% for females and 130% for males over the last year. Downtown LA in particular consistently has the highest rate of STIs, including syphilis, and affects many vulnerable populations of color with limited access to healthcare and resources. The systems we have in place clearly are not working. We ask the Board of Supervisors to instruct the Department of Public Health to invest in accessible STI testing and treatment for those vulnerable populations. By developing strong partnerships with these communities, the Department of Public Health could best serve these groups at risk. Recommending that we wait for state or federal funding is a cursory solution. We must act now. LA County needs new innovative, actionable, comprehensive, and sustainable solutions today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Natoli, and I'm also here to speak on the behalf of A H F and to speak about the rise of STIs for general public comment. Congenital syphilis rates are higher than ever across LA County, having increased more than 2,000% in the past decade. Antelope Valley in District 5 is the highest number of new congenital syphilis cases in the past year. The majority of these women who pass syphilis to their babies do not have access to proper prenatal care, and also often suffer from substance abuse disorders, housing instability, or complications related to a history of incarceration. The Board of Supervisors have recently shifted considerable resources toward housing, mental illness, and youth diversion and reentry, but little has been done to specifically address STIs. In fact, resources intended to help CBOs combat this STI crisis are being removed. Two weeks ago, LA C D P H announced during the 2023 STD Provider Meeting that they will no longer directly cover STD laboratory specimen costs. We ask you to direct the CEO and Department of Public Health to expand STI testing and treatment in LA County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Yes, it's good. Go ahead. Oh, just kidding.
Hi, my name is Anthony.
Go ahead. Yeah, that's, now it's working.
Okay. And I'm here on behalf of A H F to speak about the rise of STIs in LA County. As an increasing number of individuals diagnosed with STIs report co-occurring conditions like substance abuse or mental health conditions, it is important for the Department of Public Health to encourage providers to incorporate practices or programs that address intersecting healthcare needs. For example, according to LA County Department of Public Health, an estimated 20% or more of women and heterosexual men diagnosed with early syphilis reported meth use in 2019. Additionally, 68% of mothers diagnosed with congenital syphilis had a substance abuse disorder, and 49% reported meth use. This highlights the need for routine STI testing, prenatal care, and substance abuse treatment in healthcare settings, especially those frequented by underinsured and low-income individuals like emergency rooms or community clinics. We ask the Board of Supervisors to direct the Department of Public Health to create a detailed plan that expands STI testing and treatment in multiple intersecting program areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that's the last speaker. Is that correct?
That is, that's correct Supervisor.
Okay. Executive Officer, please indicate the agenda item numbers on which we will be voting.
The following items are before you. One, as revised, 3 through 6, 8, 10, and 11, 13, 15 through 17, 19 through 26, 29 and 30, 33 through 40, 41B, 41C as revised, 41E through 41J, 45 and, 44 and 45, 1D and 2D. You're also voting on CS1, County Council Request that this item be continued one week to January 31, 2023. And CS3, the Chief Executive Officer requests that this item be, also be continued to January 31, 2023. Supervisor Solis, those are before you.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries 4 to 0. Now we'll be taking the vote on 42A, the motion by Supervisor Solis and Supervisor Han on coordination of Los Angeles County response to incident of mass violence. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries 4 to 0. Now we'll be taking the vote on 42B, ending Los Angeles County practice of firearms and ammunition action. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries 4 to 0.
Okay, at this time, it would be appropriate to hear adjournments. We will begin with Supervisor Horath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd first like to adjourn in memory of Keenan Anderson, whose life was ended on January 3. Keenan Anderson went into cardiac arrest after being tased six times in the span of 42 seconds by an LAPD law enforcement official. He was 31 years old, the father of a six-year-old, and had been a teacher for more than eight years, including the past six months at Digital Pioneers Academy in Washington, DC. Anderson had been in the Los Angeles area visiting family during the holidays. He is survived by his son, sisters Dominique and Maisha, cousin Patrice, and a large extended family.
Madam Supervisor, may I join you on that?
Absolutely. District 2 will join in that.
I'd like to be, I'd like to join that too, as well.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to adjourn in memory of, adjourn in memory of Rick Macaiisa, who died in late December. Rick was born in the Philippines, attended business school, and received his bachelor's degree in Manila, Philippines. He worked in the banking sector, working his way up the corporate ladder from being a rank-and-file employee to becoming a management trainee, which was a pathway to becoming a bank executive at management level until he migrated to the U.S. Once in the U.S., he was able to get a temporary position working for the County of Los Angeles, a chance he knew was very hard to get. This was an opportunity that he loved most, and this paved the way for his long years of productive tenure with the county. He loved working for the county so much, even in his very sick condition, he was thinking of his work while he was in the hospital, as it was still the fiscal year-end closing of books during that time in July last year. He is survived by his sister, Myrna. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Lisa Marie Presley, who died on January 12. Lisa Marie Presley, the only child of Elvis Presley and Priscilla Presley, was born in Memphis, Tennessee. Presley was an American singer and songwriter. She developed a career in the music business and issued three albums in 2003, 2005, and 2012. Lisa Marie was also a dedicated humanitarian and philanthropist, as she long oversaw the Elvis Presley Charitable Foundation, which benefits homeless families and offers rent-free housing, daycare for children, and other services to families in need. She also worked with Oprah Winfrey's Angel Network to provide relief to those affected by Hurricane Katrina, as well as the Dream Factory to benefit children with life-threatening illnesses or disabilities. She is survived by daughters Riley, Harper, and Finley, and her mother, Priscilla. Thank you.
Thank you. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Nancy Sutlovich, who was a resident of San Pedro. She was 76 when she passed away. Nancy was an Army brat who moved around the world with her family until finally settling at San Pedro's Fort MacArthur. She graduated from San Pedro High School and attended Harbor College, where she met her husband Dennis. She worked at Dick's Hallmark in San Pedro, where everyone enjoyed coming in and talking to her, and she donated her time to the Ave Maria Society and San Pedro Hospital's bookworms. She was preceded in death by her son, her infant son Andrew, and her parents. She survived by her husband Dennis, her children Matthew and Michelle, and five grandchildren, and her siblings Wendy, Janice, Bruce, and Jay. I went to high school with Wendy and Janice, so they were my best friends in high school. So I always knew Nancy as their older sister. So we offer condolences to the family. I also move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Mary Elizabeth Timborovic, who was a lifelong resident of San Pedro. She attended Cabrillo Elementary, Dana Junior High, and San Pedro High School. She worked for Pacific Bell in downtown LA after attending Compton College. She married Noel, her beloved husband of 38 years, on Valentine's Day in 1953. Mary will be remembered for her warm smile, her quick wit. She's survived by daughters Noelle and Vivian, four grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. I also move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Benjamin Jose Garcia Martinez, who was 92 when he passed away. He was an immigrant from Mexico and a resident of Huntington Park for over 45 years before retiring in Woodland, California. He was a proud member for the Teamsters Local 986, and enjoyed his family and playing dominoes. Benjamin is survived by his wife of 60 years, Maria Elena Martinez, whom he also became an American citizen with in June of 1996. His sister Dolores, and six children, including his son Eddie, who was the mayor of Huntington Park, seven grandchildren, and 18 great-grandchildren. Those are mine. We'll go to, oh, 5 is not here. Okay, so I've got ones, two. Supervisor Solis had to leave. So I will be doing Supervisor Solis's. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Maynan, Lilian Lee, Shouhuan, Muay Ung, Hong Jian, Diana Tom, Yu Kao, Cha Ya, Valentino Alvera, Wen Yu, and Ming Ma, all of whom were victims of the Monterey Park massacre on the eve of the Lunar New Year at the Star Ballroom Dance Studio. What should have been an evening of celebration and joy turned into horrific tragedy, leaving 11 families mourning the loss of their loved ones, several others injured, and a community filled with pain and trauma. I want to express my deep sympathies to the families who lost loved ones. The County of Los Angeles mourns with you, and is committed to supporting you and the entire Monterey Park community through this difficult time. Yes, that's, that would be appropriate, all members. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Walter Uloa, a Mexican-American pioneer of U.S. Spanish-language media, died unexpectedly of a heart attack on New Year's Eve. He was 74, a native of Brawley, California, and a graduate, a graduate of USC and Loyola Law School. Uloa got his start in media in 1976, working for K M E X TV, Univision's Los Angeles flagship station. Uloa was dedicated entirely to his heritage, believing the Latino community was undervalued and underserved. In 1996, he co-founded Entrovision Communications. In the decades since its founding, Entrovision has expanded to more than 100 television and radio stations across the country, many of them broadcasting Spanish and located in communities across the American Southwest. Entrovision is the largest independent operator of Univision affiliates. Impressive, given that Univision itself has never been owned by Latinos. Uloa was also a patron of the art and assembled one of the best Chicano art collections in the world. He bought from unknown Chicano artists to support them so they could continue their work. He was appointed by then-President Barack Obama to serve on the Board of Trustees of the John F. Kennedy Center for Performing Arts in Washington, DC. Uloa also was a member of the Los Angeles Music Center's Board of Directors. Uloa is survived by his wife Alexandra Cerros and his son Bruno. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in the memory of Noelia Chapa, who was born in Kingsville, Texas on July 19, 1955. She was brought to California at a very young age. She's the eldest daughter of four children to Jose and Eduvina Chapa. Raised in Pomona, Noelia went on to Cal Poly Pomona for her bachelor's, and University of Southern California for her master's in political science. In her college years, she met Fernando Benitez and married in 1988. She worked as a city manager for various cities, including La Habra Heights, Coachella, and Pomona. Aside from her career, she enjoyed shopping and traveling around the world. She enjoyed being involved in her community and many organizations. She is survived by her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Those are Supervisor Solis's adjournments. Okay, Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of the Honorable Sandra Jacobs. Ms. Jacobs, lovelily known as Sandy, was born on January 20, 1942, and passed away this past January at the age of 80. Ms. Jacobs became the first woman president of El Segundo Chamber of Commerce in 1989, and made further history in 1996 by becoming the first woman to serve as El Segundo's mayor. She served as the city's elected leader until 1998, and then continued as mayor pro temp until 2004. During her tenure, she played a pivotal role in the city's downtown revitalization project, and in shaping the city into the thriving community that it is today. She proudly graduated from El Segundo High School in 1960, and earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of the Pacific. Her first job was teaching children with autism. She also helped run her family's business, South Bay Welder Supply Inc. She served on more than a dozen civic and charitable organizations, including the El Segundo Rotary Club and the El Segundo Economic Development Committee. She was also a founding member of Downtown El Segundo Inc., and the first president of the Library Board of Trustees. In 1999, she was named South Bay Woman of the Year, and in 2013, she earned the title of El Segundo Citizen of the Year. She was a lifelong crafter who loved to sew, knit, crochet, and quilt. She loved to read and dedicated her time by giving back to the community. She will be remembered as a devoted wife, mother, grandmother. She will also be remembered as a trailblazer and fearless leader who left an incredible impact and legacy on her beloved city of El Segundo. She's survived by her husband Carl, daughter Jennifer, grandson Jacob, brother Elwin, and a host of extended families and friends who will miss her dearly.
Supervisor Mitchell, I'd like to join you on that. I knew, of course, Sandy and Carl.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Last item, I just wanted to take this opportunity, Chair privilege, to give a shout-out. She just left. Katie Butler on my staff, many of you knew her. She was my health deputy. She has been appointed Deputy Director of the Hazardous Waste Management Program at the California Department of Toxic Substances the California Department of Toxic Substances Control. So under the governor's office is where Katie is going, so we wish her well. I was going to say it while she was still here, but she's already left. But in case you wonder where Katie has gone.
Madam Chair, can we take the motions on the adjournments?
Yes, we will take all the motions as seconded, and if there's no objection to unanimous vote, that will be the action. And Executive Officer, please read the report of action.
The following is a report of action taken earlier in closed session on January 24, 2023. Item CS2, no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. With that, our meeting is adjourned. Is that right?
That is correct, Supervisor, and we are still going to be playing...
Oh, you are going to...I didn't think...okay, so Supervisor Barker has a presentation recognizing Dr. Vivian Ekchian and a presentation recognizing Lunar New Year. Okay, thank you. With that, the meeting is adjourned.
Great schools need the support of exceptional leaders. Our communities are made better by visionaries who are committed to making classrooms incredible places for children to learn and grow. No one has a more crucial role in the future of a school district than its superintendent. And in Los Angeles County, we have some of the very best. The Superintendent of the Year Award was created by the Los Angeles County Office of Education to honor the dedication of leaders in education. This year, I am incredibly proud that the honorary comes from the 5th district. I'm excited to recognize Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Vivian Ekchian, from Glendale Unified School District. She approaches every aspect of students' experience with thoughtfulness from kindergarten until high school graduation. As Glendale Unified's first female and first Armenian superintendent, she is a strong representative for the families she serves every day. She is committed to equity, especially through her focus, to bridge the digital divide, equipping all students with the tools they need to succeed. Vivian is dedicated to students' overall well-being, opening health and wellness centers at every middle and high school in her district, and expanding needed childcare programs. With her forward-thinking approach, students are prepared to succeed into the future through access to dual college enrollment and internship opportunities. And as students, families, and teachers recover from impacts from the pandemic, Vivian has led the way to a safe return to the classroom. Because of her, Glendale Unified School District has become a role model for others across the region. I am so thankful to you, Dr. Ekchian, for your passion, engagement, and your leadership. Our families in Glendale Unified are fortunate to have you at the helm. As a token of my appreciation and your inspirational work, and to celebrate this extraordinary achievement, I'd like to present you with this proclamation on behalf of Los Angeles County. Thank you for everything you do each and every day.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Barker. We're blessed to have you as our supervisor, and we do this for our kids together. This is a very special moment for my school district, and I accept it on behalf of everyone in my community.
Gong Xi Fa Chi. Happy Lunar New Year. This week, we celebrate the start of the Year of the Rabbit. The water rabbit is said to symbolize past hardships, but endurance and success to come. As we rejuvenate our communities after the pandemic, I think this is a perfect symbol. May we strive to help one another experience hope, prosperity, peace, and encouragement in this new year. With that, I'd like to present this scroll to the Buddhist Sushi Foundation as a sign of appreciation for all the incredible work that they do in our communities. I'd like to invite Stephen Deng and Curtis Singh to share a few words.
So Tsuji Foundation has been...have multiple missions, and we do charity, we do medical, we do education and humanistic culture. And I thank you so much for having us here.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Curtis?
Besides that, actually, Tsuji Foundation, we have over 10 million members, donors, volunteers around the world. In Taiwan, we have over many, many volunteers, they pick it up the bottle, the plastic bottle, which is the...we throw away for five cents, and can make this beautiful blanket. In LA County, we help with the Red Cross, okay, and County Supervisor, and the Sheriff Department, and lots, lots of the shelter, and we provide this for free. Thank you for the invitation.
To celebrate Lunar New Year, we now enjoy a performance of the spirit of great love in sign language.